Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. So, welcome to the first hearing of the inquiry into the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Culture is Identity Bill 2022. Before I commence, I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Orang nation, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we're meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and the waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. The Parliament has asked this committee to do an inquiry into a private members' bill called the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Culture is Identity Bill 2022. This bill is separate from the cultural heritage reforms that the government has been working on over a period of time. I acknowledge the short amount of time the committee has to examine the bill and to get the community's views on it. I acknowledge that this is not desirable. The Parliament has told the committee it must publish its report by the 8th of November this year. The reason for this deadline is the New South Wales Parliament will meet for its last time in mid-November before the state election next year in 2023. Today, we will be hearing from a range of stakeholders, including Aboriginal peak organisations such as the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council and the New South Wales Coalition of Aboriginal Regional Alliances, as well as the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Advisory Committee and the Native Title Service Provider for New South Wales. We will also hear from a number of other stakeholders. The committee is very grateful to all the individuals and organisations who have made themselves available to appear at today's hearing on such short notice. We thank everybody for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. And while we have many witnesses with us in person, some will be appearing via video conference today, I ask for everyone's patience through any technical difficulties that we may encounter today. If participants lose their internet connection and are disconnected from the hearing, please rejoin the hearing by using the same link as provided by the committee secretariat. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcasted live by the Parliament's website. The proceedings are also being recorded, and a transcript will be placed on the committee's website once it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you make to the media or to others after you've completed your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have the right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by this House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, you can take a question on notice. Due to the short timeframe for this inquiry, we ask that written answers to questions taken on notice are provided within seven days. Finally, for those participating in today's hearing via video conference, can I please ask everyone to state their name when they begin speaking, to speak directly into the microphone, and to mute their microphones when they are not speaking? In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to please speak into the microphone. And finally, if everyone could please turn their mobile phones to silent or the duration of the hearing. I now welcome our first witnesses. Could each witness, starting from my left, please state their name and position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation? And it's, yeah, there should be a card to assist you. Thank you.
Firstly, I'd like to pay my respect to Gadigal country and recognise the people that care and look after this country as they have since the start of time. My name is Warbur Kujica Thompson. I'm one of the directors of the Barkangie PBC and I'm also the chairperson of Luinji Land Council and one of the Aboriginal owners vested for Mudawinji under state legislation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Hello, my name is Tara Mercy. I'm the business manager for Banshein Aboriginal Corporation. Before I commence, I'd like to pay my respects to the Gadigal people, this land, sorry, this country we meet on today. I'm a traditional owner and I'm the granddaughter of Lawrence Wilson, who started the native title application on behalf of the Banshein people many years ago. My grandfather is no longer with us. He has taken his place with our ancestors, like many elders who started the native title process. They were determined and resilient in their right to have our rights recognised as the traditional owners of our country. And I pay my, sorry, I pay my respects to them. Yeah, sorry, yeah, and I'm just doing an affirmation. So, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Chapman, Neef Ferguson. I'm a proud Jaagal woman, and I'd like to acknowledge that I meet here on Gadigal country and respect elders past, present and emerging. And I'm the manager of Jaagal Traditional Owners Association, registered native title body corporate. I've been endorsed by the board of directors of the corporation to speak with you today. And I speak on behalf of all Jaagal people. And I am very honoured to be sitting here. I feel privileged. And I look at who came before me, my ancestors, and what they did in relation to us having our native title rights on our country, which is huge for me. Thank you. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Good morning. Also, I would like to acknowledge and pay my respects to the Gadigal people, the traditional owners of the country on which we appear today. I'm Michael Bell. I'm a Ngunnawal Gomaroy man. I'm the Chair of NTS Corp, the service provider for the ACT in New South Wales for native title services. I also solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge and pay my respects to the Gadigal people, the traditional owners of the country on which we appear today. I also acknowledge the Chair and committee members of the Planning and Environment Committee. My name is Natalie Roddama. I'm a Mingable Bundjalung woman from up on the north coast, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer of NTS Corp Limited. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Hi, good morning. I'm Charles Robinson. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge Gadigal country, pay my respects to the elders past and present. Yes, sorry about that. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. And I'm from the far north coast of New South Wales, up in the Bundjalung country. I live in a little small place called Mullabugoma, out in Milunawer. But, yeah, thank you.
My name's Mishka Holt. I'm the Principal Solicitor of NTS Corp, and I acknowledge Gadigal people, the country on which we are today, and all of the witnesses here today in the various communities that I've had the privilege to work with. I'm taking the affirmation. I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Hello and thank you. I'd first like to also acknowledge the Gadigal people and the lands that we sit on today. Acknowledge the elders, past, present and emerging. My name's Yvonne Kay Stewart. Stewart is my married name, and I'm an Arakal Bumblum Bundjalung woman from Byron Bay, formerly known as Cavanbar. I think I will take the affirmation and I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
So, would you like to start by making a short statement? Happy to start, whoever would like to. Yeah, I think, Mr. Bell?
Yeah, as a Chair, I'll open proceedings. We have an established order.
Wonderful, I assume so, thank you.
We've already acknowledged country, so I won't repeat that again, although we just got a little land. I acknowledge the Chair and committee members of the Planning Environment Committee. I also acknowledge the Board of NTS Corp Limited and our CEO Natalie and PLO Mishka Holt, Natalie Roddama, and all of the delegates who join us today from our respective prescribed body corporates around the state, from Broken Hill to Broome's Head to Bayougal. I appear today on behalf of NTS Corp Limited. NTS Corp is a company comprised of Aboriginal members from throughout New South Wales and the ACT. NTS Corp is the native title service provider for New South Wales and the ACT. We are funded to represent the interests of Aboriginal traditional owners who hold or may hold native title rights and interests in lands, waters, sea and sea country, and specifically to assist traditional owners to exercise their rights under the Native Title Act 1993, the Commonwealth Act. NTS Corp welcomes the opportunity to appear before the committee today and discuss the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Culture is Identity Bill of 2022 and our principles for Aboriginal cultural heritage legislation in New South Wales. From NTS Corp's perspective, it is of central importance that the cultural heritage legislation be enacted, which will see Aboriginal people's sites protected for future generations and which honours the elders and ancestors who have gone before us and their struggle to protect country. Native title has been a long, hard battle in New South Wales. Traditional owners have had to jump through every hoop to demonstrate their traditional connection to country and their rights and interests that they have always had. Sometimes that battle has taken more than 20 years in litigation. There have now been 16 determinations of that native title exists in New South Wales, and there are more to come, including the current native title claims by Niempa, Niempa, Ongapon, Waelwin, the Waelwin people, the Gomaroy people, the South Coast people and Wijibul Wiable people. Those rights and interests that have been recognised by the federal court under the Commonwealth legislation include the right to maintain and protect from physical harm sites and places of importance under traditional law and custom. That's an interesting point. If I could stop and highlight the transcriber, that's a big point. In NTS Corp's view, any cultural and heritage legislation enacted must have culture at its core and respect our traditional systems of operation for millennia. A system in which traditional owners speak for their country and make decisions about what occurs there. NTS Corp considers that any cultural heritage legislation enacted in New South Wales must reflect those traditional laws, beliefs and cultures. NTS Corp supports standalone cultural heritage legislation in New South Wales, Aboriginal ownership of Aboriginal cultural heritage, greater Aboriginal heritage management and oversight, compliance and enforcement and opportunities for self-determination, capacity building and employment, including the right to veto. Broader recognition and definitions of Aboriginal cultural heritage, including intangible heritage, and a broader recognition of the landscape which includes seas and waters. The inclusion of state significant infrastructure and major developments in the protection regime. A system that is properly funded and set up for success. Establishment of an Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council, which is independent of government. Localised management of Aboriginal cultural heritage through local Aboriginal cultural heritage services, which will have cultural legitimacy, including where native title is, sorry, including that where native title is determined. The native title prescribed body corporates should be the local Aboriginal cultural heritage service for the whole of the determination area that have exclusive decision-making rights, sorry, and have exclusive decision-making rights. Where there is no native title determined, that the local Aboriginal cultural heritage service should compromise traditional owners, being the right people for country, the right people to speak for culture, for cultural heritage, and those who had hold knowledge and carry their responsibility for sites. That should include registered native title claimants. The legislation should contain a transition provision to provide for native title holders to assume those functions once determined to be native title holders. NTS Corp can't support the enactment of any cultural heritage legislation which would operate to diminish native title holders' current or prospective legal rights. Aboriginal people in their voice must be the central focus of any reform, and NTS Corp consider that. Any cultural heritage legislation enacted must be consistent with Australia's international obligations, best practice standards and cultural heritage management of the National Agreement on Closing the Gap, by promoting and not in any way diminishing the cultures of Aboriginal people in New South Wales, and by building and strengthening Aboriginal structures and decision-making. Any cultural heritage legislation enacted must have cultural legitimacy. It must recognise the Aboriginal people who have their cultural responsibilities to care for sites and country, and those who suffer the spiritual consequences for harm to sites, objects and places. The Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council established under the legislation must be Aboriginal-controlled and include appropriate representation of traditional owners. I'd also like to note and put a point in that National Reconciliation Week starts on the 27th of May with the anniversary of the referendum vote and finishes on the 3rd of March, which is Mabo, the Mabo decision. It's a very important date for Aboriginal people and non-Arrogant people in this country, and moving forward, it changed the legislation in Australia. Native title is here, native title needs to be recognised in cultural heritage, and our traditional owners need that recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a short opening statement? Thank you.
Firstly, NTS Corp would like to acknowledge the importance of standalone Aboriginal cultural heritage legislation being introduced into Parliament. It has been long advocated for by Aboriginal people in New South Wales and is a key aspiration of native title holders and traditional owners in New South Wales. Importantly, the inclusion of state significance infrastructure and development with the statutory regime contemplated in the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Culture is Identity Bill 2022, the bill, is a significant and welcomed improvement, as are the increased decision-making rights for Aboriginal people and the reduced ministerial direction and control. In many respects, the bill is a significant improvement upon the current Aboriginal cultural heritage regime in New South Wales, particularly given its similarities to the Western Australia and Victorian Aboriginal cultural heritage legislation. The incorporation of tangible and intangible cultural heritage, the cultural landscape and FPIC is consistent with the recommendations of the Duke and George Report and the Vision Statement, which I'm not going to do any justice to, Arawa Makala. Standards and the incorporation of the Underit principles adds additional strength to the regime. It is unfortunate that NTS Corp cannot support the bill in its current form for the reasons outlined at length in previous parts of this submission. NTS Corp cannot support the enactment of any cultural heritage legislation which would operate to diminish native title holders' current or prospective legal rights. NTS Corp cannot support the enactment of any cultural heritage legislation which fails to recognise the very Aboriginal people who have the cultural authority and responsibility to care for sites nor respect the legal rights they have as native title holders in relation to the management and protection of cultural heritage. We look forward to discussing with the committee the amendments which NTS Corp considers could be made to the bill which would enable us to support its enactment. Thank you.
Any further opening statements?
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, of course.
In relation to native title and where I am and where all the others come from, it's actual bloodline, a bloodline. You know, we've got a lot of Aboriginal people who visit home, but at the end of the day, we don't believe that they have the right to make decisions on our behalf because that's our country. They have their own country, and we are basically, from day dot, never severed our bloodlines. And that's why we ended up with our determinations, because we could validate that. I just wanted to say that, from a Jaagal people perspective.
I feel like I've been doing this for a long time, and we've been talking about it for a long, long time. I had the opportunity, our native title started around when Eddie Mabo, the Eddie Mabo case started. You know, we had to register, we registered a native corporation in 1994. And I've just spent the last 20-plus years, 25 years, walking with my elders every step of the day. I don't think the Parliament understand that, you know, for our elders that walk, they didn't work three, four days a week, they worked seven days a week. They never slept, they never ate. It was a long, arduous process for them, and we lost them in that process. And, sorry. Now to the Four Sisters that started this claim. First, I just want to acknowledge my Bundjalung people, the Bundjalung of Byron Bay Aboriginal Corporation, who have brought me here today as their representative. I spent 25 years, I practically walked away from my responsibilities due to the stress, the loss, and now the hurt. We have gone through every legislative process. We don't sit and we don't just talk to one lot of people. We have layers and layers of government, legislation, acts, everything that have pulled our people apart to prove our existence within our country and on our country. And it wasn't until the 30th, from 1994 to the 30th of April 2019, it took to get to a determination. Three Indigenous land use agreements and a native title determination. And you can imagine the layers of legislation that applies to all of it in every step we take. We can pass through four, five different government agencies to get to the beach and then get told we can't take our resources off the beach. You know, our elders went through that, and I'm very disheartened, and our people are very disheartened that this legislation doesn't include us properly and acknowledge us as the traditional owners. We have proven to the core that we are the people here before colonisation. That is the rule of native title. That is an act. And I'm just disheartened also that the Commonwealth, this Commonwealth Act is put into the states, but the states don't want to acknowledge it, they want to ignore it. This legislation's been talked around for about 12 years, and I think you may have heard about only a week or so ago, the cultural fishing rights legislation that was sitting around and still sitting around to be enacted and endorsed and respected. For us traditional owners, we are a little bit different, we are. And we didn't mean to be like that, but what we're seeing here, and I'm sorry if I'm speaking too frank, but, you know, the government has put a bone there and made native title services and state land council argue out among ourselves, cause more division among ourselves, you know? We can work together, we've been doing that, and we do that on a daily basis since we've been determined. We work with our land councils, we work with our people. But this legislation will be very, very divisive, and it's already, well, it has been divisive. The Bundjalung of Byron Bay Aboriginal Corporation, on behalf of them, do not support the bill in its current form, and would like to see more massaging and respect given to the traditional owners on the ground.
Thank you. Yeah, please.
So, with our PBC determination area, it's a blanket claim, and it covers about nine different dialects. And from one end to the other is about 600 kilometres, and it's about 400 kilometres across. And so, for us, it's the local autonomy needs to be recognised so that people that are Bundjigali aren't talking on behalf of people from Marora country. So, it's one of those things that needs to be worked out, recognising that local autonomy for us and the interconnectedness of the broader tribal group as well. And the other thing that I don't want to see lost is, I'm not sure if you've got anybody speaking for foray, but I'll switch between those two hats. We've got a piece of state legislation that talks about Aboriginal owners, and they're the same group as what traditional owners are, it's just that it's state legislation, so they've got two different names, and those two acts, the federal act and the state act, don't speak to each other. So, some of those things need to be worked out so that for us in Mudawinji, the traditional owners of Mudawinji country, we still call ourselves traditional owners of Mudawinji, even though that's a federal term, it's not a state. So, in our lease agreement, it talks about Aboriginal owners. Within our lease, we've resumed ownership of the cultural heritage in our park. It's vested in the land council to hold on behalf of Aboriginal owners, but we exert full care, control and management, whereas outside the foray parks, it's still the property of the crown. So, there's this unique piece of, or this unique condition within each of the foray parks leases, and I don't want to see those rights lost to sit with a broader blanket group. So, and I'm sure the other local autonomous groups don't want to lose control of their cultural heritage when they're down in Marora country, and someone from Bundjigali country comes down and does site work there, you know? It shouldn't happen like that. But these are cultural rights, these are cultural rights. What we're talking about is our rights to culture, and we've all gone through that process of proving our connectedness to that country over a long, long, long period of time. And it shouldn't sit with an organisation that looks after the social rights of all human beings within a community. They need to sit with a cultural group of people, which is PVCs and the foray locally identified groups.
Thank you. So, we're just, is there anyone else that wants to make an opening statement? I don't want to miss anyone. And, thanks.
So, I welcome Reverend the Honourable Fred Nile, MLC's private bill, Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Culture is Identity Bill 2022. The protection of our Aboriginal cultural heritage as standalone legislation is long overdue. However, it does require amendments. Prescribed body corporates should have priority over determining who should be on the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council and who should provide Aboriginal Cultural Heritage services. This is because a determination of native title is a legal process, not a political process. It is a complex assessment of claimant evidence, an inquiry into the L O R A law, customs and traditions and culture of the applicants and the country to which the applicants have a continuous connection. This is not the case for Aboriginal land rights. Land rights does not require a legal process, as I mentioned previously. An Aboriginal land council can be established with ministerial approval. Memberships for Aboriginal land councils are not limited to people who might be rewarded as traditional owners. It is open to all adult Aboriginal persons who live within the boundary of the Aboriginal land council. The method of becoming a member of an Aboriginal land council has the potential to allow Aboriginal people living within the boundary of an Aboriginal land council, if their membership is approved, to speak for our country, which is not their birthright or cultural association. The New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council's core business is land rights. Native title traditional owners are recognised as the rightful custodians who are responsible for maintaining culture and country and all that entails. In the case of country where there is yet to be a determination of native title, there must be a discussion about who has cultural authority to speak for that country. It cannot be the default position that it simply goes to a local Aboriginal land council for the reasons I raised earlier. Another important issue that needs to be addressed is ministerial involvement. Aboriginal cultural heritage protection needs to be Aboriginal designed and Aboriginal-led, not subject to political whim or priorities. Ministerial appointments can be controversial, as we have seen in the past. In closing, I urge the ministers to listen to our aspirations for the protection of Aboriginal cultural heritage. Don't do what previous governments have done. Don't decide what is in our best interest. We know what is best for ourselves, as described in the UN Charter of Rights of Indigenous Peoples, the right to self-determine and self-manage. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. So now what we do is if I have some questions for you and perhaps some directed and then some open to whoever you would most like to answer those questions. Okay, I'll start if that's okay. So the bill in its current form, and I think it's unanimous amongst you all, that it's clearly, from your perspective, in need of some amendment. At the moment, the bill sets up a proposed regime of having an Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council, which sort of sets the framework. From what I can hear, it's currently perhaps in its draft problematic about how that council is constituted, how that's constituted. And I'm just wondering if anyone would like to provide a view on how you think best. Firstly, if it is, a council is the appropriate overarching body? And if so, what, how that ought to be, what the constitution of that council really should be to be able to then administer the operations of cultural heritage protection and obviously decisions that are not favourable towards cultural heritage if that position arises? So really going to, what do you think, if there is an Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council, what that should look like? Is there anybody who's given some thought to that that would like to contribute?
We did have a discussion about this last night and I'm not sure if you'd like me to talk through some of what that discussion was.
Thank you.
In Schedule One, I guess it's a trickle-down is the first thing to note, is that the composition of the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council then gets to decide who the local services are. Its composition is critical. And one of the discussions we had last night was, it was noted by the representatives here that to be nominated to that panel, it only allows the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council to make a nomination or native title holders themselves. So there's a potential, for example, that traditional owners around the state who might not be known to native title holders, who are located in Barkangi country or who are located on the North Coast, people who maybe are located in the Riverina or the Central West might not be known to them and they don't then have the opportunity to be nominated. So that, I think, is a shortfall and one of the suggestions that was made was that NTS Corp could be included as one of the bodies who could make a nomination. And that gives us at least the opportunity to raise traditional owners from across the state who might, you know, be people who are interested in fulfilling that role and have the requisite skills and expertise to do that. The other discussion we had, just notably that 11 members, I think it says up to 11 members, wouldn't provide for the equal representation in section, I think it's section four. It says there will be equal representatives of three parties, but you'd need a number. So we had suggested that perhaps that was better to be between eight and 12 to allow for that to occur. The other suggestion was that there should be the inclusion of a D in the parties to be included on the council to include registered native title claimants. So you've heard from quite a few of the representatives today that some of them have spent over 20 years in litigation, so not just in an active, an aspiration for native title law, in collecting stories, but actually in court for 20 years, are litigating with the state to establish that they're the right people. And that means that there are a lot of people in New South Wales who haven't had the opportunity to put on a native title claim yet because of the limited resources available to fund and support those claims when you're, you know, in court for 20 years. But nonetheless, have an aspiration to be native title holders. It also means that people like Nyimba Nyimpa Waiwan Wongapon or South Coast or Wijjua Waiwal, who have had claims on foot for a long time, wouldn't have the opportunity to be nominated because they're not yet a native title holder. So that was the suggestion, was to have four categories and between eight and 12 members with equal representation. And that might provide a good balance between Aboriginal owners and land council representatives and native title claimants and holders.
Thank you. Just on that point, if I could ask, when you referred to there may be traditional owners, traditional custodians who aren't known to native title services at this point?
Sorry, I meant native title holders, so that the category for appointments is either the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council or native title holders?
Yes, yes. But I think, did I hear correctly though, earlier, you said there may be traditional custodians that are not yet known to...
No, I just meant, for example, if I can use your example. You know, Yvonne's from Byron Bay. She might not necessarily know someone from Griffith who is a traditional owner there. She doesn't necessarily have that reach in that community to nominate.
Yes, I see, thank you.
The suggestion was just that NTS Corp might have those connections across the state to be able to nominate people, although Yvonne's reach is far and wide. It just means it's limited to the knowledge of a native title holder.
I understand, sorry, I misunderstood and now I clearly understand. Thank you. It did throw me a bit, I thought, no, I think you guys know everybody at the moment.
Not fully articulated.
No, no, that was great, thank you.
And probably just to add to what Mish is saying, if you have Aboriginal owners as a category, I don't think it'd be well represented by the state land council to put forward that Aboriginal owner as a nomination. It's probably better left out of the custodians group which meet annually. That is a representation across those foray parks as well as other jointly managed and co-managed national parks from across the state that have a traditional connection to those national parks.
So are you, sorry, are you suggesting that the traditional owners is a more representative category than Aboriginal owners?
No, I'm saying that both, so, we were talking about a piece of the state legislation. Traditional owners have Commonwealth rights. What I'm saying is Aboriginal owner is a local autonomous group that would fit the Commonwealth definition of traditional owner, but they're just called two different things because one's state legislation, one's federal legislation. So if you said who are the traditional owners of Muruwinji, the same group that call themselves Aboriginal owners under the federal legislation would put their hands up. But the two bodies may not necessarily speak to each other. So because they have state rights under leases with the state government and ownership and care, control and management of their cultural heritage on those national parks, there needs to be some sort of mechanism to allow those co-managed or joint managed representatives to elect their nomination rather than relying on the land council system which also covers part of the Aboriginal owners' legislation to nominate themselves.
Well, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're raising a similar issue to what was raised about NTS Corp is if Newslok and native title holders are the only two people who can nominate people to the council, Opa's saying, well, should Newslok be nominating Aboriginal owners or shouldn't that come from the Aboriginal owners?
It should come from, that's exactly right. It's adding to what Mish is saying.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
You're asking the same things that I would ask.
Always conscious, sitting in the chair role and hogging the...
Or I'll jump in.
All right, thank you.
Just don't leave it.
Okay, all right, so please interject, otherwise I'll just keep going. Can I just also ask you to, so with state significant development and state significant infrastructure, I'm not trying to lead here, but would, am I correct to suggest that that is where some of the greatest harm takes place to cultural heritage and perhaps where some of, where we feel that we have the least say? Is that in the current system?
Yeah.
Miss Rodmer, you look like you're ready to pout.
I can give examples if you want.
Yes, please.
So, I'll keep using Muruwinji because as an Aboriginal-owned piece of land, we can enact native title rights on it under 47(c) of the Commonwealth Act. And we've just purchased the property and added it to the park and it has mineral interests in it, pre-existing mineral interests. So we weren't able to gazette it as a national park, it got gazetted as state conservation area. There's a sacred place that no one's seen in, so, one of the last people to see it had passed away just before we bought the place, so no one alive has seen it. And one of our elders had, who knows that story, went back out and searched Nantaranji until he found it. Because it's got high gold interest in it, they can come and destroy the site, so there's a chance to have a Jukun Gorge in New South Wales. And I've seen it play out in, when I was working for, I'm an archaeologist as well, I've seen it play out when I was working for Forestry Corporation where the freeway up the coast went through a sacred mountain to the objection of a local traditional owner. And because it's state significant infrastructure, he had no right of being to them. But there's some pretty old records about how significant that site was, as a healing place with lots of sacred objects still intact in the place, but they kind of just got ignored. Yeah, there's probably countless examples, there's a land council signing off in Western New South Wales, extraction of white sand out of a source water in June, which is where all our burials are in Western New South Wales. So it was a non-traditional owner, Aboriginal representative that also worked as a truck driver for that company, went and signed off on giving site clearance. And that was reported through the state system and nothing ever came of it because it's an Aboriginal person acting out of the local land council, although they're not a traditional owner. They kind of just got swept under the rug. And I know it got reported because some of them got reported.
Thank you. So in terms of, you know, we've mentioned the right to veto, that's something that, you know, the development world is always very, very concerned about. It's not something that's contained in the Western Australian or the Victorian legislation, but it's something that's been contemplated here ultimately. Do you see that, you know, the operation of a system that, central to it is the protection of cultural heritage, how do you see the right of veto playing out? Is it something that would happen very early? Is that how you anticipate if that was a desirable feature of legislation, which clearly it is in this context? Knowing how state significant development and state significant infrastructure works, how do we think the right of, do you have any views on how you think the right of veto could play out?
It would be all right for us to negotiate with the traditional owners and work out a manageable, suitable alternative. At the moment, it's just what the developer wants they get. Under current consent to destruct, it's about 99% acceptance.
Yes.
I don't know whether, I can't remember what the...
We haven't been able to find one.
I think it's higher than 99%, it's so bad.
450 sites have been destroyed over the last 10 years. And every single one of them was passed, be destroyed. One got knocked back for preservation. And, you know, it's a bit, sorry to jump in there, Michael, you know, and it's quite a, and it's, you know, it's in there and it's pretty clear that, you know, that part of legislation is going to stay there. I mean, why do we have a consent to destroy Aboriginal, the oldest cultural artefacts and, you know, special places to us? Why is that act there? Why can't it be taken out? Why can't that be talked about to be eliminated? We don't walk around and go, oh, can we go and destroy your, well, in Byron Bay, a 1901 lighthouse? Even the shipwreck, the piece of steel in the ground over there, it's got more protection than the site, a 1500, 1700-year-old mid-site that boats run over and economical development is giving back to the white community, nothing is given back to us. You know, there's a real struggle that this consent to destroy just continues to happen and we're pushed, it's pushed on us to accept it. And the thing is, is that traditional owners won't, through our processes now, won't agree to it. There's other services that are going to continue to do it. The thing that has stopped, that has helped is that once you become a PBC, you have been given the rights to all your cultural heritage and the say. Before that, we didn't, we had to have 200 opponents to go up against. And then still we have that. Nothing is very much done, there's no funding for preservation or restoration of our sites that have been damaged. And sometimes we can't help that because we do live in a cyclonic area and natural disasters happen. But look, just come back to, yeah, the consent to destroy, which is very, very difficult for our people to swallow, because we don't run around destroying white heritage and we're not allowed to. And it actually has bigger fines than Aboriginal heritage. And I know a bit of bone or a bit of stone or a bit of landscape doesn't mean much to non-Arbanian people, but it means a lot to us. Destroying our pathways is destroying our songlines, you know, cutting ourselves from areas that we can't go to. Telling us how many kangaroo or, you know, for me, pipis, worms, whatever. And, you know, it's the double layers. Anyway, and the consent to destroy really needs to come back to the table and it really needs to be debated why this government still allows the consent to destroy on our country when we don't run around, we are not allowed to touch a doornail on a heritage, you know? Sorry, I'll stop there for a minute.
No, no, be sorry.
That's what's versus here. And it means a lot to us. And it means a lot to us on the ground because we live it on the ground, you know? And we, yeah.
Just to add to what Yvonne's saying, so the part of the title of it is culture is heritage. So mostly we're dealing with the heritage as if it's a dead culture. So those living bits of collecting pipis or scarring a tree, they're living parts of culture that people still practise. So it'd be great if it dealt with how to protect or having protection mechanisms in place so that we can still live the bits that we know. Yeah, it's a really good point that probably should be missed by the committee. Those things need to be picked up.
And that's why I can't even look at this bill. Can't look at this bill in that respect because it still just wants to do major infrastructure and destroy Aboriginal cultural sites. There's ways that you can sit with the people on the ground and talk about ways how, you know, the highway allowed to go bend a little bit more that way or go that way or whatever. But no, it's not. It's relocate or destroy.
Okay, if I could make just a very brief comment on that. In the first instance, I might just say, I think everybody in the room knows how completely ludicrous it is that the largest projects, the largest developments, the largest mining is allowed to be exempted from the very minimal cultural heritage protections that exist in New South Wales. We've got bare minimum in the whole country. And state significant infrastructure and development doesn't have to even comply with that. So that's the first thing. The second thing is just an observation. So NTS Corp, we're doing a lot of cultural and heritage agreements as part of mining agreements and exploration agreements and other things with our clients. And by an observation, I would say that where parties have a more equal negotiating power. So for example, if a native title group has had their native title determined, they're no longer trying to reach that point or having to reach agreements that are required to get to that point. All of a sudden, you see people have a more level playing field. And a lot of those big companies involved in infrastructure and development have the means and the capacity, specifically the expertise with engineers and a range of other people necessary to look at creative solutions. And my experience has been that Aboriginal people are always willing to sit down and have the conversation and to look at options and sometimes perhaps go beyond a place where they feel comfortable in a means to try and accommodate people in their local community and people who create employment. And I think I go above and beyond sometimes to engage with those people in good faith. But those solutions are there and it may be that it costs a little bit more. I don't think it's a time constraint. I don't think it would take a long time if there were proper surveys done, proper engagement, an upfront sharing of information and equality of information to allow people to properly participate from the beginning.
So can I just confirm, Miss Halt, what you're suggesting there is that really rather than looking at a right of veto, so to speak, that what we're actually talking about is early, thorough, respectful, equal engagement so that harmful projects can be designed with proper participations so that cultural heritage is protected?
And that alternatives can be explored. Aboriginal people have a right to make a decision about that, but a well-informed decision that's looked at what the options are and companies that are required to look for creative solutions.
The cheapest alternative is not always the best. Or the most expedient solution is not always the best. Aboriginal cultural heritage protected properly is a footpath to reconciliation. Knowledge and understanding and awareness of our culture, our sites, our people will enhance this community. It's as simple as that. But the more we bulldoze it, the more we're not going to have it to respect and pass on to the next generation. We're talking about sixty-odd thousand years of ongoing connection and country and culture and language, songline and story. We have to protect that. It's more than stones and bones. It's the intangible. It's about the connection. It's about our wellness. It all comes back to balancing our country and protecting country, right people for right country. And that's what this legislation currently in this form doesn't do. I don't want a Nungar person coming in here and telling me about my cultural heritage. Or Yongaloo man coming down here just because he's Aboriginal and living in my area. That's what this current bill will do now. We need to have the cultural authority and the right people at the right, from the right country, at the right table. That's what we need. We've already identified sixteen groups in New South Wales that have passed those hoops. And every time you put up a hurdle, they jump them. Don't put up another hurdle. Work with us. That's all we're asking for. Work with us. We can make the best, not better, the best. Don't worry about what, I don't care what Western Australia haven't got, and I don't care what Victoria haven't got. I want to worry about what we can have. It's aspiration to be better and the best.
And I think the respect that the Native Title Act is there and it's in New South Wales and we want it to, we want to be respected, just like the Land Rights Act. There are two big bodies in New South Wales. And sorry, I do probably need to declare my, some interest here, but I'm not here for that. I'm deputy chair in Native Title Services and I'm here in the capacity of my people who sent me here today. And that's one thing. And that's all I, and this is what we're seeing. And it's causing division and we just want the Native Title Act to be respected in New South Wales. Take it on. Every other state has. We're not that bad. We're the same people. I'm a land council member. I go, you know, I'll go to a land council meeting. I've even worked for the land council. But I'm still a native title. I'm PBC. You know, I don't work for my PBC anymore, but because, you know, the funding opportunities there aren't that good and prospects. And plus the stress of it all. But, you know, I think that's all we're asking is that we want to be respected as traditional owners of our country. We've proved, we were here before you, we were here before any legislation was put on the table in this country. And we're being put on the back burner and disrespected for something that we're just following our traditional lines. Our old people stood there. And, you know, they've been fighting long before the Land Rights Act and the Native Title Act. But we just want to be respected as native title holders here. And we believe that we've got more rights than anybody, even the government. And, you know, that needs to soften. The government needs to soften. Like I said, there's that much legislation that needs to be reviewed and this one just makes...
It comes as a little bit of a shock, I think, to native title holders in New South Wales that when you dig deep in this bill, that at each turn, native title holders are either relegated to the bottom of a list of interested parties. I mean, in one case, it actually says, I think, a broad community approach before you get to native title parties. And it's disrespectful, but it's also a really big shock after you go through twenty years of litigation. Which is, you know, affidavits from claim group members, evidence from claim group members, the loss of elders along that way. And every group here experienced that. Didn't have their applicants there to see native title determined on the day after they'd led that charge, you know, for fifteen and twenty years. They had anthropological reports done, historical reports done, put beyond question that they're the right people. And they've convinced the state government and in some cases the Commonwealth as well. But still get relegated to the back seat in cultural heritage legislation in this state. And it's hard to understand when, in fact, in other jurisdictions, native title holders are preferred, they're prioritised. And one of the key difficulties that have been, in a lot of the reports that have come out, has said, one of the key problems is trying to identify traditional owners in an area. And they say, that's the benefit of native title. That's the benefit of having prescribed body corporate. You come to these cultural heritage processes with a clear identification of who native title holders are and for what area. And if they have a corporate arm to engage with and still they don't have that respectful seat at the table, it's hard to fathom.
Lastly, say something.
Yes.
I'll read it from this. Yagor people have a deep and abiding connection to the lands, waters and seas of our traditional country. And that's under L O R E. Okay, so L O R E, we live and breathe L O R E. In relation to legislation, my whole life has been in legislation. From, you know, a fringe dweller to a camp environment to being protected under the Aboriginal Protection Act all my life. Being floor and fauna for nine years of my life under legislation. So, you know, at the end of the day, the bill directly affects sites and significance of Yagor people. And in its current form, does not adequately protect or empower our Yagor people to develop our cultural heritage and traditional knowledge. I know I'm quite, and I know my people, my bloodline, my Yagor people can go out there and they can talk to people because they have and have been handed down L O R E, knowledge. You know, and we are clever in that knowledge. But when we have other people come to our country, talk about our significant dreamtime stories, that's very disrespectful under L O R E. And back in the old days, you got speared, simple as that. So I think from a legislative perspective to a cultural perspective, we've now got our voice. You know, we've been determined. We've been validated. We've got our i's, we crossed our t's. And then we look at the legislation and we think, well, hang on, we don't support it in its form right now. But if you listen to our, you know, we're here, we're speaking, we're, you know, we're opening our binangs, that's how we hear, and we're talking Jalan through our mouth. We're saying, okay, yes, listen, listen to us. You know, it's not, we're not, whatever we do in the PBC, we do it for the conduit. Everybody, every bloodline from our elders who got us here in the first place and now, you know, that a lot of them have passed away, right down to my kids, their kids, their kids, their kids, their kids. And it's, it's bloodline throughout everybody. Whatever we do, we don't do for one person. We do for everyone. And whatever we say, we have a cultural obligation to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to keep adding. So we've got a determination area, but positively determined is only about one percent. So it's ninety-nine percent extinguished in our country. It doesn't, to us, we haven't lost that country. That, they were just, whether or not a piece of paper was signed correctly or something was worked out, right? So we've still jumped through those hoops to show our continual connection to those pieces of country. New South Wales has got some of the most stringent tests, especially on crown leases. And most of our country is governed by Western lands leases. There is country out there that's been ploughed to make rows of soil to help catch water and to revegetate the place. And none of it gets cultural heritage clearance. So it's happening on a mass scale as we speak. And it's crown land. There's been this slow process and it's been a political process of converting those Western lands leases. So taking something that's a public asset and divesting it into property owners that have been on those things for a hundred years, we've been on it for sixty thousand. And Lake Mungo in our country proves our long continual connection to our country. And yet we're not even afforded the right to protect the heritage on those Western lands leases. There are more creative ways through ecological means to protect the habitat of a bird. And that habitat just so happens to coincide with significant cultural heritage sites or songlines. So we're trying to use those other mechanisms. It's like we're hiding to try and find these creative ways to protect something that's been housed for a long time and we've proven that connection. Legislation needs to make those things, especially around the sacred stuff. Conversation rather than farmers or developers hiding from us what they're doing to our country. Yeah, there's some big rights that we're slowly losing in Western New South Wales.
Walpa's just described perfectly the value of, and you'll see it in the submissions, the section sixty ten modified consultation agreements. So as Walpa said, could have been determined as native title holders for the entire area of country. But for the fact there were Western lands leases that extinguished that native title around nineteen twenty-one and thereafter. But those sixty ten agreements that a lot of native title holders have entered means that you can have exclusive consultation rights over the whole of that determination area, not just the area where native title exists. It's premised on the fact that you've established you're the right people for that area. But those agreements in this current bill are not reflected in any way. And they won't have any status at the introduction of it. And that's one of the biggest issues that native title holders have been raising is that their rights aren't diminished in this bill. For all of the positives that it has, native title holders actually go backwards from the current arrangements that they have under the National Parks and Wildlife Act and regulations.
And do you read that because somehow Newswalk has kind of been elevated into a different position? Is that how you read that or it's just...
Well firstly, this act doesn't have section sixty ten arrangements. So that's probably the first part. But certainly it's given an equal status within aspects of this bill. And native title holders are saying, well, if we're determined to be the right people, why wouldn't we be the ones making decisions about cultural heritage?
Thank you. This is the right monograph. First one, this other one. I never get it right. Okay, that's okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming in today. And I want to acknowledge that this has been a conversation that you've been involved in for a very long time. And I recognise the frustration that you must have, having to deal with a range of, you know, different processes. And I want to ask you actually about that. I understand that the New South Wales Government has been through a number of consultations about trying to get standalone cultural heritage protection for the last twelve years. And I had thought, although it was never resolved, that in two thousand and eighteen that there was a proposal that actually had what I understand to be reasonable support about going forward. And I just wanted to ask you, I'm sure that you were involved in this, I'm sure you continue to be involved in this. Where do you see that is up to? And is there, in looking at how, I mean, this bill is from an individual member of parliament, it's not a government process. Opposition hasn't been involved in it either. We're trying to work our way through it. Is there some guidance you can give from where you're at with the government, particularly around the two thousand and eighteen process, that would be helpful for us when we're looking at this bill?
This current bill derailed all of those conversations.
Yep, okay.
Our focus has been to now look at this and put all of the things that should have been put in in the first place. But it was poorly drafted and poorly considered. And it has just simply derailed the process we were moving forward with under previous ministers. And the ministers also changed. And when we changed our premier, that was also a large disruption. And this was going through COVID as well. So I, we've always been ready to sit at the table. We're not going to compromise our position, but we just want somebody to come and work on better legislation and protections. And this has been nothing but a disruption. And as Yvonne pointed out, it's divide and conquer. This has been proposed with the support of Newswalk and you can see how far down the tree native title holders are in this bill. If we're not the last on the list, we're only just considered as, or and also, where it shouldn't be. We've got sixteen determined areas in New South Wales with identified groups and large PVCs. They already have the approval at state and federal level on how to speak and who to speak to for country. That's not recognised in this bill. This has been nothing but a distraction and has derailed a slowly progressing previous discussion with former minister Harwin and now Benjamin Franklin.
Yes.
Mr Franklin, we haven't had a chance to meet with him properly because he'd be concentrating on raising our objections and trying to clear up this... on raising our objections and trying to clear up this abomination.
If I can say, it's like, you know, asking someone to pick between their children. We engaged in good faith in that negotiation process, or what we had contemplated to be a negotiation process, which turned out to be more of a consultation process. We were consulted. I can't say that a large part of our views were taken on board, but we certainly did meet and we engaged in that process in good faith. The position that we're in is neither in the government's process, were they willing to recognise the rights of native title holders to speak exclusively on their culture and heritage. This current bill, it provides the inclusion of state significant infrastructure and development. It includes a wider definition of culture and heritage, including intangible culture and heritage. It provides increased Aboriginal say, although we take the exception that it's not native title holders, but there's more Aboriginal decision-making, and there's reduced ministerial oversight. Now, Michael explained at the beginning our key principles for Aboriginal cultural heritage reform, and they are all on the list. So if there were amendments made to this bill that have been suggested in the various submissions that have been made, this could be a bill that N T S Corp could support, and it would more align with the overall interests of native title holders around the country, because that's about better protection of Aboriginal culture and heritage. That's everyone's biggest aim. But it does need to be respectful, you can't have a culture and heritage bill without the culture that underpins it. And in all of the other states and territories, they've had that moment where they've said, okay, you know, the Native Title Act was introduced in 1993, we're going to have to adjust how we do things. You know, it's in, Northern Territory always had a traditional owner-based land rights system, but the W legislation's moved, the Victorian legislation's moved, the Queensland legislation's moved. And it's possible here, but it's going to take the will of people to say. I think some people might assume if you avoid the dispute, it's not happening, but on the ground, it's happening. You know, people are talking about who should be speaking for country, and people are talking about the disrespect. And bearing in mind that the tenet of what's being said is, it's the people who know those stories, who have that knowledge, are the ones who can speak on culture and heritage. You can't have people who don't know those things, who haven't grown up in those systems and been told those stories and shared that knowledge, making those decisions. It makes for bad culture and heritage decisions. So I think there has to be that, you know, that real examination of saying, this is not about creating dispute, this is about creating the best management regime for culture and heritage. And once that's done, everybody will settle back, you know, into a position. And that happened in 2010, a very courageous Chief Executive Officer of Heritage made the decision that native title holders should have exclusive rights on the areas where native title was determined. And the whole system didn't fall apart, and people's relationships didn't fall apart. Might have been tense for a little while. And that would happen if the legislation, you know, people were courageous enough to pass legislation that enshrines that respect.
And with respect to the bigger governing body, I think part of the reason why the previous bill was met with so much hostility in the community is because we're centralising focus. So it's assuming that all of us are a homogenous group, rather than made up of 70 individual clan groups from across New South Wales. So if you go to any 12 people, you're going to miss the representation. There's probably more, and one of the submissions that was made from Western New South Wales was about the regional connection that people have. So if people meet at a statewide conference, they'll sit with their regional group and then branch out there because they know each other's country and connections, but they also recognise where each other's from and who has the right to speak within that area. And any statewide body will struggle as soon as you create one, because it can't fairly represent the people that it's meant to represent. So there's no way in the world I'd pretend to speak for anything outside of my country. And what we're, like, we're going to create a body that's going to have 12 people persecuted, regardless of whether they're making good decisions or bad decisions, but at least if it's a regional body that's making those decisions and they have a connection to each other, it's harder for them to make the wrong decision if they've got to go back and answer to their community. But also, they'll have that collective support from out of their own region while they're making those decisions. So it's not 12 representatives and, well, that's the South Coast, so you've got to deal with that, and leaving that person totally isolated and alone, and then they go back to their community. It's a regional basis to support each other while we make these difficult decisions.
Thank you. So our time has concluded. Thank you all. I don't think there were any questions actually taken on notice, but if there were, then they will be asked to be returned within seven days. The secretariat will contact anybody if I've missed anything there. Thank you all so much for participating. If I can also just say that, particularly to your point, Mr Bell, the minister, the current minister, Minister Franklin, did say when this bill was being referred to this inquiry, that the government will be looking, the government will listen, and the government will take on board. So please know that all of your efforts today and all of your evidence goes, feeds in to what we are all working towards and hoping for soon, and that is effective standalone cultural heritage laws that protect culture and heritage on country. Thank you all so much. Thank you. I now welcome our next witnesses. And if I can ask, and I note we have witnesses attending via the wear bags, so could I please have each witness state their name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation? We might start with you, Mr Moyle.
So Brendan Moyle, Chief Executive Officer of Darkinjung Local Aboriginal Land Council on the Central Coast. I solemnly, sincerely, and truthfully declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
My name's Dallas Donnelly, I'm with the New South Wales Council, elected in as councillor for the North Coast Region of New South Wales. And I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Mr Moran.
Hi, Nathan Moore, I'm the City of Yalit Metropolitan Police Secretary, my main councillor. I too would take an affirmation and affirm that all evidence that I provide will be the truth and is the truth, and I affirm to speak to that commitment.
Thank you. And Ms Hampton.
Thank you very much. My name is Liam Hampton, I'm the Boratria councillor for New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. And would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Absolutely. I'd firstly like to pay my respects to Aboriginal ancestors in the land on which we meet today, the Gadigal people. I also pay my respects to the Aboriginal people who have relocated to Gadigal country and now the custodians of our ancient cultural connections in partnership with those with bloodlines. I also pay my respect to our Aboriginal ancestors and nations from across New South Wales, our elders who fought for land rights and the recognition of our humanity and culture. Current cultural heritage regimes do not offer the level of protection required to ensure that Aboriginal cultural heritage is being protected and preserved. Current regimes, as you've just heard, see more weight and emphasis given to the protection of contemporary Australian heritage than is given ancient Aboriginal sites that are thousands and thousands of years old. We also know that culture isn't static. We talk about sites and the things that we actually recognise within the bill, and I know because Nathan and I do not represent Newswalk, we're here independently on behalf of our members. We actually made sure that the tangible and intangible is drafted into that as a staple hold. We as Aboriginal people under the current regimes can only advise, which means that we can be ignored. We as Aboriginal people and legitimate Aboriginal organisations with cultural authority do not control the protection or promotion of Aboriginal cultural heritage. This undermines the statutory functions of us as local Aboriginal land councils under the Aboriginal Land Rights Act. Further, the current approaches operate in a way that contradicts government's commitments under the national agreement in closing the gap. This includes an understanding and acknowledgement of all signatories, including the New South Wales Government, that the strength of Aboriginal people in sustaining the world's oldest living culture, and that our cultures have prevailed and endured despite entrenched disadvantage, intergenerational trauma, political exclusion, and institutional racism. It also undermines and doesn't operate consistently with priority reforms, particularly priority reform one, which focuses on shared decision-making, on working in genuine partnership with Aboriginal people. And priority reform three, transforming government organisations, including looking at how we embed and practise meaningful cultural safety. Meaningful cultural safety goes beyond just doing a cultural appreciation course, spending a half a day and feeling good. It actually goes to the systems of government, which are underpinned by legislation, policies, and processes. The Independent Members' Bill, the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Bill, Culture is Life, embodies these principles. And I know because people like Nathan and I, from a grassroots community perspective, helped at the Reverend's office and the Reverend himself actually start with some of the drafting on it. Absolutely, there's a lot of work needs to be done, but it ensures that Aboriginal people have ownership and legitimate control over the protection and preservation of Aboriginal cultural heritage. It ensures that local Aboriginal organisations with legitimate cultural authority are responsible for the management of cultural heritage at a local level. I heard the evidence that was given by N T S Corp, some of my family were sitting here at this table. I don't disagree with them. Native title has an important role to play, but so does land rights. There's been 16 determinations across New South Wales. That doesn't cover most of New South Wales, and for many of us as Aboriginal people, we are unable to prove native title because of historic policies around dispossession and forced assimilation and removal. That poses a significant challenge, so you can't have one solution, you need to have a tiered solution. We need to respect where we can prove that there are traditional connections and traditional linkages. And as Di actually said, L O R E is what we need to embody, and this is what the list legislation can actually do and provides a foundation for. It also enables the ability for Aboriginal organisations, local Aboriginal organisations with legitimate cultural authority to generate revenue from the identification, protection, and management of cultural heritage. Current approaches do not, current approaches to undertake cultural heritage assessments under the National Parks Act that basically apply an open market approach. Many of the issues that you've heard here from N T S Corp, we share the same concerns with. We're seeing Aboriginal people and entities with no cultural authority undertake cultural heritage and site inspections on country they have no connection to. We're also seeing people who do not meet the legal definition as being an Aboriginal person. They allegedly find a long lost ancestor, and suddenly they commoditise and they get in on the market. On the Central Coast, we have people who are making 40,000 a month doing cultural heritage work, where if you believe their claims, they have not been Aboriginal, they have not identified or participated as Aboriginal for seven generations. Imagine a French person being authorised to undertake cultural heritage site work in Russia, how loud would the uproar be? And imagine, and imagine, I do apologise, there is no disrespect intended with this, people with German ancestry self-identifying as Jewish people, and then undertaking cultural heritage assessments on significant cultural aspects for the Jewish population. Again, I mean no offence by these examples, but it highlights from a European perspective the outrage that would happen, but we as Aboriginal people have had to sit and endure. Darkinjung Local Aboriginal Land Councils see many of these issues arise at a local and state levels. Many of these issues have caused and continue to cause the destruction of ancient cultural heritage sites across the Central Coast of New South Wales. And it's not just the sites, it's the creation and dreaming stories, it's the intangible that goes back over 65,000 years. Darkinjung Local Aboriginal Land Councils watched our sites be desecrated, and we have been powerless to do anything about it. On Darkinjung country, we don't have native title holders, we don't have registered Aboriginal owners. But we have a commitment as a land council that if someone can prove native title, we will work with them, because under L O R E, they retain the power. It is our obligation from a cultural perspective to actually deliver for our members, for the Aboriginal community, and to respect those cultural connections. As you would have seen by our submission, we've also seen sites desecrated by vandals. And again, we're powerless to do anything about it. Because of this, Darkinjung Local Aboriginal Land Council supports the bill.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a brief opening statement before we head to questions?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a brief statement, Nathan, did you want to go first? Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. As stated, my name is Liam Hampton, and I'm a councillor for the Boratrie region. I'm a proud Aboriginal woman and have spent many years working towards Aboriginal cultural heritage protection in New South Wales. I worked for 30 years as a leader of a local Aboriginal land council, so I understand and respect the needs and the wishes of the people at the grassroots level, and I understand that the bill will actually help these people achieve their goals. I firstly would like to acknowledge and pay my respects to the Gadigal people of the Eurovision on whose land this committee is meeting today. And I'd also like to reiterate the words of my brother that's just spoken prior to me. Absolutely 100% agree with a lot of what Brendan has stated, and I really thank you for putting forward your case, and Nathan, I'm sure that your words will be touching on what we're all speaking about today. The New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council supports the bill and urges all parliament to support this passage to the New South Wales Parliament in this term. The bill represents significant improvement on the current outdated law and offensive law that primarily contained, sorry, that primarily contained the National Parks and Wildlife Act of 1974. The bill meets Newswalk's long-term, sorry, the bill meets Newswalk's long-term key reform principles, aligned with the key principles outlined in the hundred, and developed following engagements with the Aboriginal community. New South Wales is the last jurisdiction in Australia without modernised Aboriginal cultural heritage laws. The bill represents a significant opportunity for this parliament to finally deliver long overdue meaningful laws in the making for 40 years, which have been repeatedly promised over and over again. Now is the time to begin to uphold that promise. We also note that the bill provides a community consultation on various policies and procedures. This is a positive element and will assist in facilitating self-determination by allowing the A C A to counsel to make decisions, rather than overly prescriptive legislations set largely by non-Arabian people on matters that are for Aboriginal communities to determine. We support increased penalties, increased compliance and enforcement, and increased inspection powers. These are significant improvements and should be commended. We note that both the government and the opposition made bipartisan commitments to reform in New South Wales Parliament in 2010. I don't think I need to remind anyone that this is more than a decade ago. We urge the government and the opposition to make full on their commitment by supporting this bill. Now is the time to act. We note that this bill has been supported by cross-party members. We thank relevant members for their work and bringing much needed parliamentarian attention to this important matter. We also acknowledge the significant contribution of the many Aboriginal communities across New South Wales who continue to fight for the protection of our living culture and heritage, for all of us now and for the future generation. We have the oldest living culture in the world, isn't this something we should all be proud of as Australians? Shouldn't, isn't this something that is worth protecting? We welcome the opportunity to discuss any points of clarification or concerns about the bill. We stand ready to work in partnership with all parliamentarians to support parliament to leave a positive legacy for the protection of Aboriginal culture in New South Wales. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Moran? I think you were going to go next.
As a state, my name is Nathan, I'm representing the Metropolitan Local Products Marine Council today. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge that I am gathering on Galloway Country Street, just like the parliamentary inquiry, the Metropolitan Land Council, established under the Land Rights Act of 1983, is the body preserving and protecting Aboriginal culture and heritage. Indeed, I'll start by acknowledging that in our land council, we have a unique acronym, we are one of the first local land councils. But as of 2022, as I sit here today, 23rd September 2022, I affirm we have no registered, verified native title holders, no... no Aboriginal owners, registered or verified within the boundaries of Metropolitan Land Council. And in the absence of having in those cultural people, the Metropolitan Land Council has certainly since nineteen eighty-three and four, and formally funded by the Land Rights Act, been preserving and protecting all cultural heritage. The background I want to start with is to acknowledge all the beautiful Currys, Burries, Murray's, Murdys who have spoken here this morning and participated in this process. Much deep love to all the first peoples, all Aboriginal people who came to New South Wales. I acknowledge a dear lady who spoke earlier, certainly one of my responsibilities, is to acknowledge in the gay to die, die is always will be connected to me through family, culture, kinship and community, so much love to the gay with community. I am a Fungani, I am one of the first Australians, first native title holders. My people received native title in November to nineteen ninety-six, presently hence being the first determination of native title in Australia. My background is that I've worked as a C E O, used to be called a coordinator back in the Dark Ages of the dinosaur period of nineteen ninety. I started as a coordinator at Burnquay Land Council in nineteen ninety-eight. I have, over time, worked for over thirteen years as a local land council coordinator in the Australian Gavva. I've been at Metropolitan Land Council since June two thousand and fourteen as the C E O of Metropolitan. My first premises is to call forth the established law and identify Aboriginal cultural heritage bills. To thank the Reverend Noah, the Christian Democrats and all those who have openly supported the propalement to have an Aboriginal cultural heritage built in New South Wales. Local Land Council, Metro Local Aboriginal Land Council believes that it's a requirement that Aboriginal people should be in charge of Aboriginal culture, identity. We feel that the current existing arrangements of having a subcommittee within the existing National Parks and Wildlife Act is not significant. It's not actually doing anything to benefit Aboriginal cultural heritage that are the Aboriginal culture, the Aboriginal community, the people, the place, the environment. For Metro Local Aboriginal Land Council, we deem to support this proposed bill. We acknowledge upfront, this is an attempt to establish a culturally appropriate framework whereby culturally appropriate knowledge holders, native title holders, Aboriginal owners are the first preeminent thing. And in the absence of those, the local land council serve as the local community's representative bodies to perform the preservation and protection of Aboriginal cultural heritage as per the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Rights Act. I acknowledge that there is sometimes and yet to be a great synergy between native title and land rights. I believe that's a systematic fundamental of Commonwealth's Law of Statehood, fly rather than polluting or collaborating. For someone who holds native title, who's worked through land rights, I would acknowledge that it's about making both of those systems work for the best possible outcome. I certainly, as a C E O of the Land Council, acknowledge local land councils are required to work with Aboriginal owners and native title holders. I'm not aware of a local land council who is ignorantly or deliberately ignoring a registered native title holder or a registered Aboriginal owner. I can attest myself, we would never do that at Metro. But as a bureaucrat, Fungani, as a native title owner, as a Funganer, as an Aboriginal owner who verifies heritage, I acknowledge that the various systems in play are all there to preserve and protect our cultural heritage. But in some cases like Metro Land Council, where you don't have native title, where you don't have Aboriginal owners, we must have a role for local land council to serve as a body to preserve and protect, as a safeguard, as a safety net. That is to address the current situation where, under the current legislation, Aboriginal parties can register to be included on cultural heritage projects, are not required to verify their Aboriginality. That is a great abysmal nightmare. In fact, it's culturally sacrosanct. We are acknowledging Metro Land Council's boundaries, we deal with currently and in the past, a number of cultural identity boards who are operating businesses fraudulently, presenting as Aboriginal owners, not registered, because they're not Aboriginal. And I'd call out anyone who feels that native title or Aboriginal owners or land councils don't know who the appropriate cultural knowledge owners are or knowledge cultures are, take up to themselves. Because what we're dealing with is outright fraud. We're not testing and verifying one is Aboriginal. Under the current laws of New South Wales, we're allowing open cultural fraud to be committed. We're allowing people who are non-Aboriginals to pass off gang commercial benefits to trade fraudulently in gang commercials. This is abysmal, guys. In Metro Local Land Council's area, that is a fundamental we do not want to have. The second layer is having Aboriginal parties who may be Aboriginal, but extend themselves from a thousand kilometres away to work within the boundaries of Metro Land Council to garner the commercial income, is not culturally appropriate, culturally respectful, or dare we say at the end of the day, the black gold label. But the current system has allowed it. It's allowed Aboriginal parties to register and come predominantly all about the dollar. The system itself, those who approve, they can simply destroy applications and/or take up fines for the destruction or desecration of sites, primarily sits with non-Aboriginal people. This is not okay. Metro Land Council has had the indignity of having New South Wales Government utilities hard through registered Aboriginal sites, defined by the state government twelve and a half thousand dollars, when the maximum fine is a quarter of a million at that time in two thousand and twelve. We had the theft of cultural sites underly, whereby wholly registered sites had been desecrated, in fact, the estates have been carved off and stolen. And most recently in Hunter's Hill, we had an Ocarat site desecrated by a neighbour, a private landlord decided to set up a pimp. That person was not subsequently prosecuted nor even fined in two thousand and sixteen. For us, these are the examples that we give, and we have hundreds more, whereby our culture is in great danger. In fact, at this very point, we're fearful that there's a great array of destruction and desecration occurring because we don't have the appropriate systems in place. We generally are allowing anyone and everyone to register an interest without even test them that they're Aboriginal. It's progress sacrosanct. You know, to think that there's non-Aboriginal people out there who, I'm not sure if they're mentally ill, but I question why they pass off as Aboriginal with no Aboriginal ancestry, that are trading companies and garnering incomes with Aboriginal, is the issue why I feel we need an Aboriginal cultural heritage bill in New South Wales. I'd also point out that we're the last state and what an abysmal register of reality check for the New South Wales government and society as a whole, that we being the first part of Australia colonised, are the last state to have a cultural heritage bill appropriately identified as Aboriginal standalone. I think that if New South Wales claims to be the first state, it's got a lot of catching up to do and this is one of the opportunities that sits in front of us now. I'd also like to pay my respects and love from all of those who have been calling for cultural heritage Aboriginal standalone bills since nineteen seventy-seven, or at least that's my understanding as a child of Wilma Moore, Wilma Holton, or her married neighbour, Wilma Hurley. My mum, Uncle Dallas, Uncle Badger, Annie Evelyn Crawford, those who still remain with us as the original team, my great aunt and Big Morris, those who remain as the first cultural heritage Aboriginal employees of the state government of New South Wales, identified the need for cultural heritage preservation and protection for a cultural heritage bill. I just hope we can achieve it because I'm very fearful that that people will no longer be with us in the next forthcoming decades or lifetime ahead. It's time for New South Wales to catch up, it's time for New South Wales to act on the advice of our people from over forty years ago recommending this to New Zealand. I acknowledge there will be concerns from those who feel that somehow setting up an Aboriginal committee could be fat food problematic, but what I'd suggest is that's Aboriginal self-determination. Aboriginal people should be in charge of their cultural heritage and right there. We should not allow non-Aboriginal people to speak for us and for us, or at the end of the day, determine our cultural heritage for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further opening statements? Okay, so now, members of the committee will ask some questions and we'll do our best to direct them to the most relevant person, but feel free to pass those questions to whoever you would like most to answer. Does anybody want to take the lead here? Okay, all right. So, I just want to go to the point about the fact that this bill includes state significant development and state significant infrastructure and basically giving, you know, the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council and the local services really the right, it's often referred to as the right to veto. Is that, is that something, do you have a view on that and the way the bill is currently drafted in relation to that? And perhaps, sorry, just to bear in mind that there's been, it's been raised to the committee that this New South Wales bill pioneers that way, that doesn't exist in the Western Australian, the Queensland or Victorian legislation.
Absolutely, I'm supportive of it. It's, it was interesting hearing NTS Corp's evidence and I'm not sure if, and they certainly picked up on this, but the bill is so much more than just major infrastructure. It is so much more. But having the inclusion of state significant state infrastructure has to be critical because we're looking through, quite often when the assessment's made about what's important, is being made through a non-Indigenous lens. With Duke and Gorge, we saw the destruction of caves and art that was forty-six thousand years old for mining. We face the same challenges and Nathan actually articulated, and I think I put in our submission as well, you know, for power lines and major infrastructure that society needs, that a decision's made that it's okay to just desecrate something that's thousands upon thousands of years old. And with a lot of our rock engravings, it's almost impossible to actually date. They could be five, they could be ten, they could be thirty, they could be forty thousand years old. At what point do we actually start to realise Australia's national identity is actually founded in the ancient Aboriginal cultural heritage that's actually here? When you go to New Zealand, there is a broad societal push to not just actually preserve, but to embrace mati culture. It's something that New Zealand itself has an identity, actually does really well. We don't do it here for us as Aboriginal people, as First Nations people here in New South Wales, let alone across Australia. It's easy to shift a road, it's easy to shift a bridge. It's near impossible to actually preserve or protect something once it's been desecrated or damaged, particularly when it goes back thousands of generations, not thousands of years, thousands of generations.
See, just further to that, there's, I worked in the mines for seven years or whatever and some places were good, they acknowledged the Aboriginal custodians of that particular area. But, you know, they got out and made plan that sort of work in the first place by working with the local mob to find out what sites of significance and that was there. You plan your future mine around that. Now, local governments used to do that years ago, where they tried doing, tried doing their local government area heritage studies, that got knocked on the head, that was back in the eighties or something. And, you know, if you know what's there beforehand, you know, whether it's a European heritage site or an Aboriginal heritage site, you plan accordingly, you know, but we get, oh, we've already started this work on this mine, so we're going to have to take this particular site out anyway. So, and then we get, oh, the old, oh, there's fifty thousand jobs in this thing and that there and, you know, and then we're sort of pushed up into a corner there to do nothing about it. And that's, that's historical stuff and that there, I don't know, I don't know whether people understand about Aboriginal heritage culture and I'll only talk from my North Coast area, right? Five P B Cs up there, three of them, three of them were in the room today, two of them weren't. There's going to be another two by probably the end of next year, there's another determination coming up for the Wijibwe Wire Bullet, probably the end of this, by the end of this year. Great, they're all the same mob and that. But, you know, for NTS Corp to say that they haven't been included in either this act is wrong. You can see that it's, what New South Wales is trying to get to is that self-determination at a local level, you know, sort of, it's not, land councils that could be the only organisation in one, one community and that. It, it's basically set up a state body and then that state body goes out and talks with that local mob in the Grafton area where I come from and you work out the appropriate people. I have aunties and uncles that are not members of the land council, that have, that could have been native title claimants within one of the ones from around the area, but they're not involved in heritage and culture and that there. You know, sort of.
Can I add that too, and just particularly bringing it back to what your, your question actually was in terms of the veto rights for major infrastructure? Sorry, councillor Hampton.
We'll come straight to you after, Mr Moyle, thanks.
The veto right is essential to preserve and protect. As I said, it has to be Aboriginal people with legitimate cultural authority that actually makes the determination as to what needs to be protected and preserved and how it needs to be protected and preserved. The challenge we've actually gotten, it goes to what Dallas is talking about, councillor Donnelly's talking about and what my brother Nathan is talking about and what I mentioned. Right now, we have people coming out of the woodwork through the registered Aboriginal owners, registered Aboriginal parties process, sorry, as RAPS, under the National Park Act. They're not from country. I used to live around Canberra. Now, I know Nunaw or Nambri country. We have a registered Aboriginal party on the central coast that's Nunaw. Now, that is like putting a Belgian person in the middle of Portugal and saying, can you tell us about culture? Not going to happen. And that's why I use those examples. We also have people who claim illegitimately, claim Aboriginal identity without ever actually proving it against legal tests. Now, what's happening under the current system is to actually, and this is where for me it works in partnership with the veto rights, is that right now we have no veto rights. And it becomes like, I'm going to use the old John Law's term, cash for comment. People who are responsible for developing infrastructure can shop around to actually see what's going to be the cheapest and best answer that aligns to what their needs are. That doesn't mean that those people have cultural authority. And this is where, where Darkinjung comes from and Darkinjung and Metro working particularly with the Reverend's office to make sure that three bodies are actually recognised in that. For us, native title is the gold standard. Now, I'll never be able to prove native title. My great grandmother was born on the Barwon Mission and then forcibly relocated down to Galarganbone and then was married into the Bakas and Barkas and then ended up all through North, sorry, New South Wales, South East Queensland. Well, forcibly relocated, I can't prove native title. Many of our mob in that same kind of boat. But where people can prove native title, we, under a cultural law as an L O R E perspective, need to respect that. Short of that, Aboriginal registered owners who have gone through a legislative process to actually prove who they actually are, and then for us as land councils to be able to work where none of those exist or work in partnership where they do exist, that's the intention from Darkinjung and that's our interpretation of the bill. But that lens has to be applied with the veto rights because it's not just someone saying, you know, I don't want this to go ahead. It has to be the people with the legitimate cultural authority who actually exercise that veto right. So I just wanted to close that, if that's all right.
No, thank you, that's great. Miss Hampton?
Okay, I just wanted to make, it's probably more, I don't feel answering your question completely, but I'm a bit polar and compromised. And I don't think that any Aboriginal person would, would actually step forward at the National Park Day that they don't want Australia or any sort of statewide significant project to be undertaken if it was, you know, great importance. But we do need to respect that Aboriginal people are the ones that have the knowledge for the area, that that's not, you know, that the work should be maintained based on. I just believe that there is I just believe that there is always a way to work through solutions where you can come to something that's going to appease both parties. There may not be, it may be, you know, a long hard hope to get to that compromise, but it's just, it's letting, it's allowing Aboriginal people to sit at the table and make those decisions and have those conversations rather than having, you know, Europe to make those decisions for us. And I just wanted to, just to digress a little bit, but I recently was overseas and I had the opportunity to see the Colosseum in Rome, and it just, like, it was amazing, it was just incredible. And I just, I find it appalling, actually, and just astounding that we as Australians do not hold our own historical Aboriginal culture to the same esteem that people overseas hold their own culture and their own history. I just find that amazing, like, they talk about these, you know, the Colosseum being a couple of thousand years old, yet we have culture here that is over 65,000 years old. Why are we not thinking that that is just as important as any other, you know, historical infrastructure that's only 250 years old? I just wanted to make that point there.
Thank you, a point very well made and taken, thank you. Miss Jackson.
Thank you, I don't know if I've got all my, I've only got one.
Incredible.
Yeah, so many microphones.
We have them for the hand side.
Okay, apologies. Thanks so much, everyone, for making time to be a part of this really important conversation. I wanted to ask, you know, just some reflections from any of you about, you know, the importance of and the protection of intangible cultural heritage, because I think a lot of traditional Australian cultural heritage, it's, you know, sandstone buildings, you know, and that's sort of the way that our traditional sort of European framework views heritage. But I've heard a little bit of evidence already and from others about how important that intangible, those cultural heritage and those cultural assets are. So I wondered if you could just talk a little bit about that, and then also how we might protect them, how that is going to be properly included in the bill, because again, the sort of traditional understanding is you find a sandstone building, you know, you slap an order on it, you slap a plaque on it, done, box ticked. Obviously, that can't work in the same way for those intangible assets. So I just wanted to draw out any more reflections on how we might better reflect that traditional Aboriginal understanding in, you know, what is, to be honest, a kind of Western legislative framework.
If you don't mind, I might jump in quickly. We were quite specific in actually, for Darkinjung, and I'm not going to speak on behalf of Metro, but Nathan and I had a lot of conversations, and some of the draft amendments that we actually put forward during the original drafting was to make sure that intangible was there. I might highlight our creation story. So our creation story is Bi'ami. The army came down from the Mirabooka, came down from the stars, from the, from the sky. He actually came down to what we now know as Earth, at the back of the Central Coast. It's a place we now call and know as Mount Yango. He created the mountains, he created the waterways, he brought the spirits down that became our totems, our animals. When native titles spoke about it, one of the, one of the people was talking about the fact we preserve the flora and fauna. The flora and fauna are intrinsically part of our intangible cultural narrative and story. It's, when Bi'ami actually created life, he then lived amongst people, he gave us law as an LORE, culture, kinship. When he actually left, he left his spirits down here that stayed as our totems. He actually left from Mount Yango back to the Mirabooka. The importance of these stories are weaved within the songlines today. The sights that you see are only a physical representation, quite often, of the intangible. While it's important though, and I want to give a shout out to what Nathan was talking about, it's something that Darkinjung and Metro have been working quite closely on about, fraudulent cultural identity, and it is fraud under the Crimes Act. If you receive a benefit by deceit, that's actually fraud. And what we've got is some of these people actually trying to recreate the intangible culture. I've read reports that Derriban, the Hawkesbury, was created by the Rainbow Serpent. Now, oral history, right throughout, actually, the majority of New South Wales, I'm a Gomeroi man, I always, always taught that Bi'ami was also the light giver. Because when we look east, the sun rises in the east, that's where Mount Yango is. The first colonist records, through the Hunter and through the, through what is now the Central Coast, Darkinjung country, recognises Bi'ami creation story. But what we have is people who are trying to commoditise, illegitimately commoditise, and they're desecrating those creation stories that are actually thousands and thousands of years old. So the importance under this bill of having the intangible, but having the actual authority to maintain and protect, preserve, and as councillor Hampton said, it's up to us to determine, it's up to Aboriginal people to determine how that is. There's going to be some concessions. We were the first miners, we were the first town planners, people talk about us being nomadic. Sorry, but people have holiday homes now down the beach, don't they? That's pretty much what our mob did for 65,000 years. You know, trade has shown that there has been sandstone, some axe heads carved in the Central Coast, found in the Pilbara, because of thousands of years of trade routes. We were the first planners, we were the first farmers. What we're asking for is that we, and I say we as Aboriginal people, but where people have cultural authority, have the right to determine how that is preserved and protected, both the tangible and the intangible. I hope that gives a bit of a response.
Yeah, and I think the legislation is seeking to find a way to protect through LAW, as inadequate as it is, that intangible, so perhaps the disputes and the fraudulent claims dissipate because the protect, the authority is protected. I think that's the aim.
And that's, and you're absolutely spot on, that was the approach. I'll be quite certain with you not to be critical of the reverend or his staff. When Nathan and I first became involved, we were highly concerned, highly concerned about what was drafted in. And that's not to have a crack, because I have to congratulate the reverend and his office and everyone else that's getting behind it. And also the good faith that they actually worked with us in. But when we saw it, it actually delegitimised many entities that had cultural authority. The first thing that the reverend and his staff actually did was work to us to make sure that we tackle the authority. If we tackle the authority, everything else falls in. Because under the legislation, with the entity, you've got policy development, you've got all of those things to start to operationalise it. But without the authority, then we have nothing. And right now, the only authority we've got under current regimes is we can advise, and quite often we're actually ignored. And that's what this bill starts to rebase. It's not perfect. Any piece of legislation changes over time. I often say the Land Rights Act now looks different today to what it did in 1983. Very, very rarely does legislation not change. But without something that's tangible and meaningful, that gives authority to people or gives authority to people with, people with cultural, legitimate cultural authority at the local level, overseen by Aboriginal people, we have nothing and we're not being protected, our cultural heritage isn't being protected. I might see if councillor Donnelly had anything to add.
Sure. Yeah, look, I've got a bit off track there, sorry, Brendan. I'll give you a little example of something that I perceive as, as intangible. Back up my country there, Bundjalung, back in, back in the old days there, you had certain people that had done certain things in the community, okay? You know, you'd have your main dance man, your main storyteller, your main artist, and your, and your main raw man, and main medicine man. Now, when you sort of, if you want to open your mind up, this is exactly what we've got here, there, now, where each peoples have a, basically a portfolio of how you operate in society. Now, back up in my way there, and I'll say this openly, without divulging too much stuff, I've been initiated to the third stage, Murrin, and that was done outside my tribal group because there was no old fellows left there to be able to do it on, in my country that wanted to do it. Now, back up my way there, five stages of initiations, okay? And it starts off at a local level there, when a, when a boy reaches puberty, bang, they do certain ceremonies at their local area, and all the clans would send their boys to the first ball ring, big one there, where you had to go through certain things there to prove yourself. And if you say there, if there was a hundred there, and eighty got through, sent through to the smaller ring, and then after doing their ceremonies, back to their own clan country. And then a period of time later, bang, second one, third one, fourth one, you know, backwards and forwards. And that, that's basically the way the education system here in Australia goes, from infancy, primary, high school, university, post-doctoral, professorship and all that. So Australia is benefiting. But when, 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 after invasion, colonisation, I'm not going to enter into that there at this stage, but, and started putting fences up, okay? That's when Aboriginal people got cut off from accessing certain cultural important, significant sites, okay? And that broke down the initiation system, which involves discipline, teaching that young fellow, and I don't know about the women side of things, but teaching that young fellow how to be disciplined and productive in society. Now, where we sit some 200 and whatever years later, that's why we've got the consequences of high incarceration rates of Aboriginal juveniles and whatever. We have juveniles of all colours and nationalities, just don't respect any, any sort of authority. See, and this is, this is what I think, now, we wouldn't probably be able to return to the old initiation days, because some of the things that was, you had to undergo there was a, was a, was a form of what would be called now child abuse. And, you know, and get one person be, yeah, anyways. And probably one of the other interesting things there is that at a certain point through those times of backwards and forwards getting initiated, as I said there, you come back, instead of that eighty, then after the second ring there, instead of eighty, there might be only 60 people. And then the fifth ring, you know, that might be over a period of 10 years or whatever, it could be only two or three people. So that actually passed that final test in that there. And even in my area, again, I'll only, I can only speak for that, but it's, and I won't say what part there, but you have to take basically a leap of faith in your initiation process. Now, I won't say what that is, but it's, it's basically, you see the, I don't know what religion, what religion, and my apologies, but where the, where people undergo baptism and they duck their head under water in that day. That comes out of Aboriginal culture, you know, ball ring, you know, sort of, yeah.
Thank you. I was just, had a question about how you see the inclusivity of the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council, and I know we've sort of had a conversation about this a little bit, but just whether you think that in the current form, the way the bill is drafted, whether you, and obviously you heard some of the discussion in, from the witnesses early, earlier, whether you think that part of the bill would be improved with some reform, or whether you think the constitution of the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council and the way it becomes constituted, whether you think that that's in good form or perhaps needs a bit of review? I'd love to hear from any of you on that point.
I might defer to Nathan first.
Okay.
So, yep.
Oh, you're, Mr Murrin, you're on mute. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I would confess to say that the proposed model is a bringing together of those appropriate, relevant cultural knowledge holders. In the event of establishing such a committee, yes, it will take time to be adapted, implemented, but I would suggest that that is, in my sense and experience, the best bringing together of all those appropriate bodies, native title holders, Aboriginal owners and land councils. Yeah, it will occur, orphans, when being established, take time, but I believe that that is the most appropriate way to do it. And then someone will develop the procedures necessary to address matters raised by the head of powers. Yeah, I just believe that there's, you know, there's great examples in every other state and territory on how this works, one, that one, two people.
I'd probably add to that as well. Look, I do think it could potentially be strengthened a little bit in retrospect, and making clear that both land rights and native title have explicit representation actually drafted within that. The reality in hearing some of the concerns, the reality is, it's that body that then makes the determination or the agreement out of the three options, who is going to be the local cultural authority organisation. So I do think that it does, for me, probably it'd be a minor tweak, but I would look at having explicitly written in, in terms of representation, both from land rights through the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council and through, for native title through to NTS Corp. But I do think as well, you actually need to have some other parties as well, part of that as well for balance, because not everyone's going to be a member of a land council, not everyone's going to necessarily be a native title holder or an applicant. But we have to pay our respects to both legislative regimes.
Can I, can I ask that? That's a really interesting point. Can I please ask, how do you think the bill could capture that other voice or those other voices?
For me, it's, it's through that overarching board. A local Aboriginal heritage provider has to have authority. And you've got two legislative mechanisms, you've got the Native Title Act 1993, you've got the Aboriginal Land Rights Act 1983. The Aboriginal Land Rights Act, as Nathan actually explained, has both registered Aboriginal owners, which is an inclusive process, independently managed of us, it's managed by the registrar of Aboriginal land rights, and then you've got land councils. What I would suggest is that hypothetically, if you had, say, eight members of the board, of an overarching board, you might allocate two or three places each to Newswalk and two or three places each to NTS Corp, which would allow you to capture it, and then you actually enable or provide an opportunity for the remaining places, for people who meet specific criteria, being able to demonstrate cultural law as an LORE, connection in New South Wales. The point that was actually made by NTS Corp, we actually agree wholeheartedly with, we do not want people from other states or other jurisdictions coming exercising their rights. And cultural authority is given. I spent 20 years on the board of Nambri Land Council, 12 and a half years as chair, and people used to say to me, I wasn't a traditional owner, I'm a Gomeroi, Camilloi man, how did I maintain that? And I said, because the way that I was brought up from an LORE perspective was to recognise the cultural authority of the people and the ancestral connections of where I was standing. And so there would be times when, as Nathan does now as the CEO of Metro and I do as the CEO of Darkinjung, we exercise our power and authority under the Land Rights Act. But we do it always applying the cultural law in terms of how we do it. It's not just what we do, it's how we do it. And I think that's the critical thing. If you get that overarching body, the overarching committee right in terms of the balance, that recognises the legitimacy of both legislative instruments and both legislative movements, and then you provide another mechanism through that where people can actually self-nominate, I think that's the best balance. Sorry, councillor Hampton.
Apologies, sorry councillor Hampton.
I was just going to agree, we've worked towards there, and I'll hold on to just reiterate that from a Newswalk perspective, we have always continually advocated for inclusivity. We have not one, that it should just be all Newswalk or it should just be all NTS Corp. We continue to say that, that both legislations need to be recognised, and we absolutely 100% recognise those that have cultural authority, and we recognise that native title holders, you know, are the ones that need to be making decisions on the ground for their path or of way that they hold that authority for. I think it also Um, I think it also needs to be recognised and, um, I, I have read the submission from ATAC and I'm very disappointed with some of the words that have been, um, written in there. I've sat on ATAC as a member, as an independent member, uh, for four years, um, prior to being elected as a councillor. Um, and, and I'm not going to play tit for tat, but I would like to reiterate that Newswalk, we, we have thirty thousand members on the ground. We are the la-, we are the state's largest, um, membership body for Aboriginal people and we represent those thirty thousand people to the best of our ability. Um, and I think having that stand on inclusivity is how we include all Aboriginal people in New South Wales. I think getting the balance right and having, um, the right conversations overarching level is paramount. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just on that, on that point, um, is, is, are the current voices within ATAC, would they be captured by the system that is currently in the legislation, do you think?
They could apply. If you've got opportunities for people to actually, uh, some, to apply for it, then it's the same kind of process. It's just shifting that process to a, a, a body now with actually strengthened authority, where Aboriginal people lead the development of responses to protect and preserve Aboriginal culture.
Other than the bureaucracy, the current, um, National Parks Wildlife Systems.
Exactly. Which, just what they do is they provide advice. I mean, um, like councillor Hampton said, I mean, I know, I've got family members on the current ATAC as well, uh, distant cousins. And to be honest with you, it, it breaks my heart that they actually give their all to try and actually protect and preserve, and then that advice can be ignored quite quickly.
And see, you know, look, we, we, we don't get ninety percent turnout there at, at our elections and that's one of the criticisms there of ATAC, but, um, you know, sort of, um, it's, the elections for state councils are voluntary. Um, we don't find people and, you know, don't get people fine like, um, normal elections. But, um, but yeah, I was also a Newswalk representative on ATAC until we withdrew from that organisation. Um, I, um, I still say that ATAC is appointed by Yoralees, non-Aboriginal people, government people there that, um, think. Us Newse-, Newswalk is appointed by gurries. So, you know, it's a step there from self-determination at a local level, voting us in as councillors, up to the, to the table. And then we, we basically, um, in the models that's, um, in Reverend Fred Noyles' bill there, that Newswalk has, has only got part participation on that, on that first panel, statewide panel now. There's no reason after, say, in a, a five-year review or something there, that that panel might come up with something completely different. Saying, oh, we're not, we're not getting that total inclusi-, inclusivity, um, of, um, all Aboriginal people. But, um, but that's, that's their, their self-determining right, you know, sort of, um, you know. Newswalk never wanted to be the big daddy of all this. Um, we've got enough stuff on our plate and that there, but, um, but it's, it's, like I said there, you know, if a local mob, uh, sit down and work out who, who speaks for their country at a local level, you could have your most senior Aboriginal person that comes from Grafton, living in Tweedheads. But he can come back, he or she can come back and be part of that Grafton group and, you know. And it's, um, it's that opportunity in that there that the local mob decide, you know. And if you've got Brendan Moyle coming from, um, the Ambry land and that, they're saying, oh, I want to speak to you. You know, he might get a job in Grafton, I, I want to talk to, uh, have the right to talk on culture in this area, Bundjalang, um, Gumbanga. Um, sorry Brendan, but, um, you'd just be ning there, you're not saying anything about it. And, um, but that, you know, it's, it's the local mob that are determining for themselves. Nothing that.
All right, we're coming to an end. Mr. Mallard has one final question. Thank you.
Microphone shuffle as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, probably with all of that, I was wanting to confess to say with regard to ATAC, that it began as a separate body, but it's not an Aboriginal body. I feel that ATAC has much more strength than it has represented Aboriginal people. It was a one hundred percent author of Aboriginal bodies whereby it was empowered in the principles of Aboriginal self-determination. For those ATAC members, I just say, I don't want to rock up to the sides with non-Aboriginal people, buyback and Aboriginal cultural heritage sites and meeting ATAC committee. That's the reality. ATAC works for government, it doesn't work for the Aboriginal community. Those members who work in collaboration, aside from the Aboriginal buyback as a private individual for the registered cultural site. But I asked the Office for Environment Area to consider buying that, but it said that they didn't have the resources. But when I locked up for the announcement of the purchase by a private fee room, who should introduce themselves? ATAC, trying to speak for the cultural heritage, something that they should never do. They're a government body. They should work with the local people, work through those local prisons. And what I would say is, you know, we can do this, that's significant protection. Metro Land Council worked on the city highway upgrade for the end line. We agreed to build a end line or a protected cultural heritage site just around Cowley. Much love and respects to all of this near transport. Some people know how to do this properly in this area. We hope to do the same at Lake Durs Park later in the year. To ensure that there's an appropriate space between the registered cultural site, any infrastructure. If we work together, we can do anything, guys, as long as we're included at design stage and not send along the cup of uprhythm at the end.
Thank you.
That's a very encouraging submission there. Uh, just in conclusion, uh, government members on, uh, this side, um, yours, Mr. Moyle, and opened everybody to comment, comment, your fairly strong engagement in support of this private members' bill. I wonder how that reflects upon your view of the process, which has been extensive and, and still, there's been at least two ministers, maybe three involved in this, Don Haran and the current minister Ben Franklin, and probably Sarah Mitchell before that, on working on a bill like this. And it's so complex and there's so many stakeholders. Your support of Reverend Noyles' bill, uh, as well-intentioned as it is, um, does that reflect upon, uh, the relationship you had in the consultation with the government over that period of time? Is this a reflection of frustration or you don't think it's going fast enough? Or what does that say about that?
So for me, and I can answer personally if that's all right, uh, it's, um, look, I have to commend the government for actually trying to do it. This is a complex space. But it was noted that, um, that various draft legislations were tried to be negotiated for the last twelve years. It's actually been forty years that, um, we've been having conversations about this. Part of my primary concern, I'm going to speak individually, I am a child of land rights. Anyone that knows me and knows Nathan knows that we are land rights through and through. Uh, it's, um, I live it, I breathe it, I have done for decades. Uh, and generations as well. I have family who are native title. To be honest with you, I worry that previous processes, not because of fault of government, become a pissing competition between the two major authorities. And Nathan, without speaking on your behalf, I know that if I can relay our conversations, that this wasn't a slight on ministers, this wasn't a slight on governments. We have to have a circuit breaker because we as Aboriginal people are leading this. And unfortunately, to be honest with you, quite often the advice that Aboriginal people are getting around these piece of legislation are coming from non-Indigenous people. It's really easy to read a piece of legislation or to read a draft piece of legislation. For everyone that comes here and presents, some I am concerned about that they haven't necessarily understood the bill or they haven't necessarily taken the time to be able to have a conversation about what we're trying to accomplish. But it comes from the heart and soul of who we are as actual Aboriginal people. In the absence of anything, and like I said earlier, no piece of legislation is perfect. None. Times change, societal norms change, culture changes. But in the absence of anything, we have nothing. And we're seeing thousands of sites desecrated and destroyed. We have no power. We're seeing legitimate people with legitimate cultural authority, whether they be there as custodians, as Nathan and I are. We see ourselves as custodians. I see myself as custodian. I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a law holder on Darkinjung country. I am a custodian of trying to protect and preserve ancient, uh, some cultural heritage. But it's the journey that we follow to do that rather than the destination. And when people don't understand that heart and soul, people look at it through a legislative instrument. And I think that's where some of the failings have actually been. Because some of the entities that have been involved in that process, uh, it's, um, you know, are very strong and they're very passionate. I don't want to denigrate them. But it becomes a competition about who has more power and authority. Whereas as Di said earlier, Yagul people need to have cultural authority on Yagul land. Now, in the absence of Yagul people, where does the authority sit? And this is what we're trying to do here. I, I hope that...
Well, I think the concept of circuit breaker was quite a...
Yeah, very, very powerful. I'm afraid we are out of time. Um, councillor Hampton, are you able to just sum in a, in a quick moment?
Yes, thank you. I was just going to interrupt that. We have a very good opportunity now to seek better laws, um, and to seek better protection for Aboriginal people. And as Newswalk, and I'm sure, um, I'm glad I'm going to speak on behalf of my brothers here, but I'm sure that we would be willing to work with any parliamentarian to get this across the line. Um, the longer we leave it, the more time to spend.
The better.
So I just want to reiterate that this is very, very important to us in Newswalk and very important as, um, for our thirty thousand members across the state as well. So...
Thank you.
We have to work with anyone who is willing to work with us to get this across the line. But thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for all those wonderful emojis on the screen. So if there, if there is further submission you would like to make, the committee naturally is welcoming and open to that. I thank you very much. If you have, I don't think there were any questions taken on notice. Um, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. I now welcome our next witnesses. Um, could each witness please state their name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation? I note that participants are hereby webexed. So if we could please start with you, Mr. Carr?
Yes, can you unmute, Kay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, uh, good morning. My name's Paul Carr, I'm chair of the Shreve River Regional Assembly. And I'll, I'll do the affirmation. I personally sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Marr. Mr. Marr, if you would just unmute your speaker there, thank you. Uh, Mr. Marr, it's still, that's still on mute. Take your time. Uh, yep, I think that's it. Perfect, thank you.
My name's Jeff Marr, originally from the North Coast, uh, but I've been living in Illawarra for fifty-eight years. Um, getting care of, uh, Illawarra when you go beyond. And I'll, I'll do the same for all of the people that's in my town. Um, I'll tell the truth and, and everything I say will be absolute to the truth. And I'll answer every question with, with the truth.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, and do we have Mr. Fernando?
No.
No, not yet. Okay, we're, um, we're, one of our witnesses is just having some technical difficulties. We're just trying to loop him in. Um, so Mr. Carr or Mr. Marr, would you, do you have an opening statement you would like to make?
Yeah, I, I'd like to introduce myself, if that's, if that's okay with you guys.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Firstly, I'd like to, um, acknowledge country, um, no, no matter where we're living in from or where you guys at the day, you know, we're calling in from or sitting upon Aboriginal land, always was and always will be. I'm originally in Wurundjeri country in double in New South Wales, um, home of the Aitling groups. Uh, Wurundjeri word, which was the code for opossum, which was the title of the Aitling groups back in the day. Uh, my family are direct custodian descendants of the Standallmore clan. I represent today myself as an Aboriginal man and my family and then as a, as a chair, independent chair of the Shreve River Regional Assembly. Uh, we, um, represent twelve communities out here in Western New South Wales. So we, um, my footprint starts just up here at this side of, um, when I say this side, I mean, uh, western side of Blister, um, up to Ninga, across to Gilgandra and across the parks. That's our footprint and all the little communities in between. Uh, we're known as the Shreve River Regional Assembly. And that means, of course, um, we outline the Radri nation by the rivers, which are the Lachlan, Macquarie and the Maribig rivers, which were like boundaries or spaces of the Radri country. Um, the Shreve River regionally, we, uh, cover three different nations out here, the Wharren, the Wurundjeri and the Radri country. And now there, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marr, did you want to say any words in the opening?
Yeah, um, I'm originally from a originally from the Nambuga, uh, Tarwe area, beautiful area in the Bandy country. But I'm also part of the UAN. Uh, we moved down here when I was ten years old. Before I moved to Wunlong, I've never lived in a house with running water or toilet. So to me, um, white traffic is actually, uh, come a lot far. But there's a long way to go as well. Anyway, that's me. And, um, I fight, I don't only fight for my life, I fight for every African person in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've just got some questions for you from the members of the committee to help us, um, inform the, the inquiry into the bill. Um, I might just start with, um, asking, so this bill is proposing a new regime to have, um, a Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council that is constituted to then oversee the operation of the cultural heritage laws. Um, are you, do you, do you see that this is a strong and good way forward for cultural heritage laws in New South Wales?
Well, if, if you don't mind, I'll ask you an answer first, Jim.
No, you're right, Mike, you go ahead.
Yeah, and I don't think, um, uh, putting the lens on the cultural heritage, um, is, is a good start. I think that's been a long time coming. Um, you know, you can look at all this, all that's been happening with the bushfires and that type of stuff in our communities now, that, uh, there's a real need to really look back at cultural heritage. And, you know, we've been here for more than two hundred years, like, we've been here for tens of thousands of years and we've, no, no one knows the country better than just in our local. But in saying that, um, I represent a local decision-making governance body. And that's where you really got to concentrate. If you're going to have an Aboriginal council, it can't be made up of the police bodies that are in, in government now that don't represent the people out here. Um, you know, we need, we need people that live inside the levee banks out here. Um, in our smaller communities to have a voice to speak continually for freedom. So when you're considering to form the council, and we don't need Aboriginal people that are protecting their circles and have to be having their conversations around this, we really need to engage with the real Aboriginal people, the people that I represent here today. You want cultural knowledge, you have to learn cultural knowledge, I mean, in one room, talking to adults and people looking over their glasses. You've got to be out here, you know, among the countries, as they say, along the riverbanks and really, really engage with the unique, you, you guys that comes.
Um, Mr. Carr, can I just ask you, when you are referring to, um, are you referring to members of the community that you work with and represent that are not part of a land council or a native title claim or a native title body? Are you referring to other people?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm referring to those people exactly. We, we, we have made up a land council... We have made up of land councils, working parties and traditional owners out here, you know, where a lot of the voices are just probably one or two people that continually stand to sit at these tables and have the discussion of cultural heritage. They couldn't even know what the cultural spots are in my region. So we need to stop thinking that there's people that are in positions that know culture, the real cultural people are out here. I've walked this country with my elders, I've done the cultural accreditation, I suppose, with faith, but the real stuff out here is walking with your elders and really, really feeling the country and having the knowledge. You have to get the knowledge from your elders and a textbook.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Are there any others? Reverend? Thank you. So, would you, what is your current experience with the, in relation to the current cultural heritage laws and applications and projects that are, those sort of state significant projects that are looking to harm or destroy cultural heritage? Is that something that you and your organisation and people are having to deal with?
One of the biggest challenges with our heritage out here, a lot of decisions are made well before the Aboriginal communities or us out here get the opportunity to put up, you know, put up a case to why not to, not to go where they're going. There's a lot of decisions already made. There's an example, I don't want to get too much into too much detail, but I think the government are pretty aware of, there's a new bridge that's being built out here, and where it's done, there's really significant cultural connection to the spot where they want to put the new bridge. And I can't really talk them, of course, it's, it's a deal with our women and us women's business. And that's why, you know, again, that's the type of stuff that links people into this conversation. When you come into, you can just do consultations, because, and we had men and women's business back in the day, you know, here in Dabo, there's a place, twenty or thirty kids out here where the boys were taken and turned into men. And there's places in town where women had given birth and that type of stuff, and they're real significant places. And then that's the type of stuff, if we brought the table early, we can bring, you know, bring to the, bring to the conversation. And then coming with a plan, and, you know, and those are ready to go, and you want to consult community. It just doesn't, this doesn't work. And you've got to understand that the cultural business of Aboriginal people can't be decided by one or two people.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to ask Reverend as well. Reverend Niall, Reverend, do you have some questions for the general?
Yes, just thank you very much for taking part in our hearing. I'm just going to ask you for your opinion on the bill that we're considering at these hearings. As a person who had a major role in drafting it, our aim was to restore the authority back to the Aboriginal people, away from government committees, government bodies and so on. Do you feel, in your opinion, that the draft bill does do that? It's on the right track? Or do you have some criticisms? It should be answered.
Thanks, Reverend Niall. I'd like to thank you for putting the focus on this matter and for the Aboriginal people. I really feel that the bill, like I said earlier, the bill's probably a long time coming, but how are we doing? It's all right for the Aboriginal people to take a lead role, and this is no one's opinion other than mine, so I wanted to make sure that's expressed. This is my opinion, not opinion of anyone else. But I think when you're looking at a blank shred of bill and, you know, the services and benefits and management plans, you know, that all needs to be considered, how we get into that stuff, it'll be take a bit of, bit of doing. But honestly, you've got to have the Aboriginal people sitting at the table, leading this, Reverend, with non-Arabian people, continually thinking that they can make decisions on Aboriginal people and communities on our behalf, and not us having an input to what's being done. You, sir, you know the hardships that our communities are faced with, the stolen generation, Aboriginal deaths in custody, all that type of stuff, you know, that, that will have impacts on our family, we're just, we're just not there to have our say when these decisions are being made, you know? We really tend to be there, sitting at the table with the decision makers, not the people that are just going to come in and, and engage with community. We definitely got to be there with the decision makers.
Thank you. Well, that's, as I said, that was the purpose of the bill. Do you have any suggestions on anything that should be done to the bill or added to the bill that would make you even more supportive?
Reverend, I, like I said, I've only glanced at it this morning, but I will give it the time that it needs, that we've got to look at it, but then just to protect the areas, you know, that's, that's going to be a challenge on its own, you know, how are we going to, how are we going to, what's the word I'm looking for? Protect the areas. To us, the whole country is protected, the whole area. And, you know, and I agree, there's a need for bridges and that type of stuff to go ahead, but let's be part of the planning and do it right. I think there needs to be a bit of a focus on the harm that's gone to us. I think there's serious harm, I think the other word they use was material harm, again, are you categorising that stuff? I'm not sure, because again, it's all, it depends who you're talking to. We're talking to our elders being women or elders being men, you know, there's a lot of Aboriginal influence that needs to go into this bill.
That's right. Good, thank you.
Yes, thanks, Mr Carr.
Good morning, citizens, afternoon now, good afternoon, and thanks for your contribution today. One of the sticking points in this bill, and I understand one of the sticking points on the work being done on the government's bill, and I'm a government member, although not involved in that level of work on the bill, is the definition of cultural items. And Mr Carr, you just touched on it then when you talked about protected areas, as far as Aboriginal people would be concerned, or certainly as you, the whole of the country is a protected area, and I acknowledge that. But we heard before, and we've heard it previously in other inquiries I'm on, on the inquiry into Warragamba Dam wall raising, about songlines, landscapes, story, landscapes, things that Western people have more difficulty grasping as a tangible heritage item. Colleague Rose Jackson talked about sandstone buildings before, we're in that context. So, given that that is a sticking issue for, on this bill and on work going on in the other bill, in terms of breadth of the definition, how would you, how would you work through a compromise? You mentioned compromise, how would you work through a compromise on that? I mean, what you talked about at Dubbo, and my family's from Dubbo, the notion of secret places, that's understood, that can be defined and understood and protected, but the broader thing of the river is a different issue. Do you want to just flesh that out for us and explore how we could find a compromise there?
Yeah, my thanks, Reverend. I think, I think you need to, again, let's go back to the start. Australia has 250 nations, right? So there's 250 people or groups that need to be considered, because we're all different. When you come to Dubbo, there's Dubbo, we have eight clan groups here. And my clan group, and I'll give you an example, we now have the Dun Dunmore clan, and there's one tree in this whole community that's sacred to us, which is a, it's a helle tree. So all my elders have all sat around that tree. But there are other clan groups that don't recognise that tree. And I said, that's a, that's a challenge for government decision-makers then, and where are you going to cut them trees down on? Are you going to listen to one group, or are you going to listen to a whole group? But that's in itself is the type of challenges when you're dealing with communities, we're very different. The Aboriginal people change from strength to strength, they don't have to go from community to community. If anyone knows Aboriginal people, let's be fair, we're different people. You might have seen back in the day, there was a lot of headlines about Dubbo, where one part of Dubbo was always in the news about where Aboriginal people were playing up, and that was a government decision to bring two different clan groups into the one area, that couldn't get a hundred miles apart, they're lying next door to each other, but it was all in the news. This is the, this is the stuff that's got to be considered when you're considering Aboriginal culture and heritage and putting mobs together. The rivers, well, you're seeing our old people crying when the river's dried up. The river is sacred to us, it's like water, so it's very sacred to the Aboriginal, life comes from the river. You're seeing when the old people, when I'm talking about the old people, they're in their 80s and 90s, people have sawed the river when it dried up, they're having their, you would see them on the news, they're simply at the riverbank crying, but that was before they were crying for the river. But that's the cultural connection we have to these places, and it's not just because the river dried up. You know, some of the people, the Aboriginal natives may be official or something that are living in those rivers. That's the connection we have to country and to rivers, and to, it's very hard, if you're not an Aboriginal person, to understand the connection to country. A white fella asked me, why are we so, what's so special about a yarning circle? I said, but how many times do you sit around, you go with your mates, your Aboriginal mates, sit around a campfire, and hardly talking, just staring into that fire? You never do it often. I said, maybe you're in a yarning circle, mate, and that's the wellbeing that you'll get from just looking into a fire. Or when you're talking about our health and our wellbeing, sitting on the riverbanks, you can just fix it on the riverbank for a day and not for just the wellbeing that we get, it's something that's been handed down for centuries, thousands of years. I can't explain it on behalf of everyone, I can only explain what it means to me. You know, I'm a young Aboriginal fellow, I'm only 60.
Thank you, Mr Barrett.
I just, there's also a clear issue. First of all, there's no doubt we need to do something in this space. I'm also enjoying the, like, I guess the highlight on the non-tangible heritage as well. So yes, we need to do something on this, this bill is a step four, there's other work going on. We've seen this conflict, obviously we don't want white fella making decisions for Aboriginal people, but also picking up a bit of, in the last session, I don't know if you listened to it, but, you know, having people from different areas make decisions on behalf of that bloodline. I guess, Mr Marr, you're probably a good example of this, where someone, you have really good, strong connections up the North Coast and where you are now on the South Coast. I just wonder how we navigate through that very tricky, that very tricky space, I don't want to say ownership, but I guess belonging space.
Well, I'm like Paul, we should go back, that's why our elders were set up by the government, and now they want to go away, and I'm sick of the big city making decisions for, we moved down here, my family moved down here, my mother and father moved us down here, because there's not much work up there. Well, great, great thing we did, but I can still see the difference. But because people in the cities make the decisions for people in the country, you're both right. They don't know what's going on at Dubbo, they don't know what's going on at Kaori or Nambukar, they don't even know what's going on down the coast. They just assume they do, and I'm afraid you have to go to them communities to find out. I know, I'm probably, I'm a poor, I tell you, I'm pretty outspoken about my culture and everything. I don't want, I absolutely don't want what I've been doing. If they can't, they may have a few percent of it, if you're on black, you don't understand, and I've got, my great-granddaughter is as white as any white person in this country. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying this from a racist point of view, I'm saying that you can't understand, it's just like, I can't, I don't know, I can't understand your life, and I've probably got a lot of white friends, but I can't, I can't tell you how your life is. And people say, well, we don't have nothing, you're white, you're friends in the community. Well, people would die, they would have nothing either. So to me, I want to stick up my gosh, I lost my culture, and I commend people like Paul, because I grew up in a mission with a manager, not only in my lifetime, and the girl in the manager in the double, with Mr Thomas. I would not, I don't want to go back to that time, and we've got to find a way to work together and change in this bill. I said when I was a kid, I wasn't aware of that Temple Wiley Act, my grandkids go there, but by going there, I could see there's changes in my grandkids, because they're more connected, like they got engaged with the culture, they got connected with their schools and that. And I can see it, I was approaching the federal government, saying, when you step up near Illawarra, but culture means everything, everything, you know? I'm a poor, we can't make them from the cities, can't make it from another town, each town is different. I like, I like to go to the oilies, I didn't know enough from them, I find it interesting, different ways. I went up to the Northern Territory to set up the respect order, they had love of the city, mate. I can see it different up there, different up there. The way they're treated up there is completely different to the way we're treated. And like I said, mate, I'm right on board with Paul, but we have to go to them areas, and people from the city can't tell people from the country about their cultural heritage. It just can't happen. And that's what governments are doing now, is closing the gap, closing the gap. They don't know what's going on in the country. If they take the policies, the country starts to work from sitting up to the country, and no one in the country gives any work. The decisions have to be made at their local level, and that's why I become a lot of the city mates. I even told Jake, I learned, he chose out of my best back then, he said, how do you see this going? I said, mate, I see this as a generational, it won't happen overnight, it's a stepping in the right direction. But let me tell you, I've got great doubts whether the government wants us to succeed, because when they find the dust, they give us $48,000 for these years. You know, mate, if you can run anything for $48,000, you're a better man than all the evidence I've walloped, because you can't do much with that, and even what they give you now, 200,000. They can pull a different, with all their talk, give you data, go around and make, make their communities right for 200,000. We are for 1% of the Aboriginal budget when I first started, and they said no. But unfortunately for them, I know what Aboriginal people get in a state and this country, and I can tell you now, if the crimes don't, and look, the less that is, our cultural heritage is right, because I can tell you now, it's the biggest... Because I can tell you now, it's the biggest injustices with the amount of money that the government spend and what we do. And like I said, that's talking from someone who loves his culture. But I'm trying to learn it back now, and I'm sixty-eight years old. So that's why I'm involved with it.
Thanks, Ms Ma. Can I just ask either of you, Mr Carr or Mr Ma, who, whether you think a, um, so a constituted council, Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council, if it is made up of nominees who are appointed from the Aboriginal land councils or their native title holders or their Aboriginal owners, do you think that that body would be appropriately constituted to have the overarching responsibility for making Aboriginal cultural heritage determinations across New South Wales?
No.
Um, can you elaborate, Mr Carr?
Well, the first one you named was the, the New South Wales Land Council. You know, they, they spoke about having thousands of members, you know? Oh, and Canadian, given the example of the last land council meeting that I, the last, it's a send out of nine thousand Aboriginal people in our local land council area, right, nine thousand. Uh, the last meeting night, I think that there was twenty-two people. And they were, they needed, and they, they needed twenty-two for four. I think there were seventeen people, so we didn't have the, um, the community, don't even take any notice in the, in the state land council or the local councils. There's one or two that might operate well, but the biggest thing that ganks the land council at the moment is their inactive members. You ask the land council member how many inactive members that they have, you know? And so again, I'll use ours as an example, there's probably four hundred members here. But there'd be, there'd be half or more inactive. And that, that was four hundred members, a good percentage of nine thousand. So they're, they're not a reflection of the community. Where, where, where people like, um, people like the, the alliances are on the ground in different communities. If we need to reach out to those, they're already part of our alliance movement. They're sitting at our table. So, you know, you've got to stop thinking that state land council and the likes are the, are the go-to people for Aboriginal business proceedings. They're not, they're not.
So can I ask just a follow-up? Oh, sorry. Oh, I was just going to ask a follow-up. So, I mean, you know, if, if the structure that, you know, is kind of contemplated under the bill and Ms Higgins mentioned isn't, isn't one that you think would be well constituted for the reasons that you've outlined, what would be your alternative decision-making framework? How would you articulate who should make decisions?
Those are decision-makers, they should be made by local people. But if you, if you want to come out into our region, into our communities, like I said, if you come to Dara, there's nine Aboriginal groups here, sorry, eighteen groups. Then we have Aboriginal working party, we have the Deacon, which is Aboriginal organisations. Then we have the, uh, the local land council. And there's, there's every group there that you've got to consider. How can one body, like New South Wales, speak for all those people?
Oh, I mean, absolutely, but what we're trying to do is think about what you just, how, how to articulate what you just described into, into, into our law. And I mean, I appreciate that we're trying to translate something, you know, into sort of written legislation. Um, you know, something like local decision-making, unfortunately, I don't think would be clear enough in terms of making decisions. So I guess I'm trying to think about how we might capture that sentiment, you know, into something that has, is clear. Um, so I don't know if there's another, um, body or framework that might, that might work.
You're going to probably need to revisit the whole, well, you can see the, the voice is trying to form up some kind of, um, voice to power on it now. And it's not going to work. Um, the first question I ask you, whose voice? Again, I, I reflect the, the number of people that want that voice. How can you, how can someone in Tasmania speak for New South Wales? But that's not going to work. Um, it needs to be regional and local. How, how you formulate a regional, local, um, body, the framework's already there. And like I said, there's, there's the opportunity for, um, to have representation of our people really from the ground up. And that's what's always forgotten, they try and build things from the top down and it just doesn't work.
Can I, can I just say something? Uh, what you're saying, uh, Paul? You say what framework we need, you're a good framework then. Local decision-making is the framework. And I'm not a saint, each member of the local decision-maker, uh, you draw on him to make a decision. The absolute way is elders in that community. Not many, uh, even, um, a sixty-eight, it's people older than me in this community. And those who make decisions, that's the Aboriginal white. Not, not these desktop, I'm not calling them desktop leaders. Because they haven't got Aboriginal whites, uh, interested in their, their thing. And I like you this, can you actually make the name? How long have they closed the gap, can start again? When for thirty years, they couldn't close an armpit? And our people are skilled on it, yeah. Our people are still on it for it, our people are still on it, it's taken it. So it is, I can't see a way forward if government thinks, uh, uh, closing the gap, a new, it's like maybe a bad rubber, I've rubbed the brakes several times, and you can't give me the chance to rub it again. It's always, you can, you never get out of the community. I expect in the community, with what they think about closing the gap, they wouldn't even know what it is. You know?
But I just, I, I'm trying to find a way to explain how LDM works really good in the community. And the only way I can think of of probably trying to, um, get your head around is, when in the pandemic, get our community out here. The pandemic, so government shut all, everyone down. So everyone that was delivering services and yet everyone had to close their doors, right? The only person that was available to help, um, help and those guys having their communities was our local Aboriginal volunteers. I'm part of the Aboriginal emergency management committee. So we've reached from, um, all the way from, let's go all the way out to, um, New Kenya, approach the hill. Now, all those communities in the country, we had African society and the regional emergency management committee. And we put them in touch with, um, the Aboriginal volunteers on the ground and a lot of them had the LDM. We talked about the year, lots of them, they were delivering food packages. That were donated by coal. Now, with the people are actually, you've just got to find a way to bring them together. And, um, I think the Reverend, they were all, all, would like to, you know, we don't, we're not going to solve all the social issues that facing our people. But, um, culture and heritage is one thing. You know, if you're going to do this right, you really have to consult. It's all to do with those people and those people who want those people out here, so just that.
Um, so, Mr Carr, can I just ask, when you are referring to those, uh, local response, um, teams, and particularly, I know they were happening through COVID. I was aware of the, the Dara elders group, and they were part of their local area response. Do, are they, are you talking generally about people who would, um, are, are these, are we talking about groups at that local decision-making level that do also speak for, to cultural heritage? Are they the cultural authority?
Yeah, cultural authority is another, another, um, area that, you know, I wouldn't, I'm not going to start the conversation with that because I don't have cultural authority. Cultural authority comes from elders, and elders of all different groups. So I can't, I, I wouldn't dare to try and even answer that question. But, um, getting back to the people that stood up in our community, everyone fought together here, um, when COVID hit. We had the, I think it was Major Gannell, that coordinated the response for the country coming out of Dara to see how we were doing better in our Aboriginal community. So we can try and duplicate that, you know, in the rest of Australia. That's how well we pulled together earlier. And it was just, uh, it was, it was led and driven by the Three Rivers Regional Assembly and the staff and community, um, seeing the need to all pull together, and our community were able to pull together.
Thank you. And so when you, if I can just go back also to, um, the example you gave earlier about, um, you know, perhaps the river being, um, you know, culturally, culturally significant to all, uh, yet perhaps a tree, a sacred tree, uh, the cultural knowledge of that sacred tree being held by a one clan and not necessarily by the other clan. Um, is that, so from where you sit, does your organisation, the Three Rivers, would you know who speaks for which bit of cultural, significant cultural heritage amongst the clan groups?
Yes, cultural protocols range throughout our community is something that, you know, in our region, um, I'm aware of. So I can, if there was a speak for anyone to come to our communities, I could put it with the right people. And that's very, I mean, you need to be coming to the communities and talking to the right people. Giving all those groups, those different, um, opinions, they have their say. We, you know, that's, that's what you've got to do.
So when you refer to cultural protocols there, um, can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, well, as shown, shown someone, like, say if you were coming to my community and you wanted to, um, what does someone to do? Say, listen, can you, I'll give you someone who could do a lot for the country, right? And there's people out there that are coming to communities and do a lot for the country, but aren't even associated with, to that community. So I'd appoint you in, in the direction of, of the elders that are not only recognised in our community, but endorsed by our community to do that type of, um, that type of work for you. So I'd make sure that the type of protocols of our community was followed. And you wouldn't have some, you wouldn't be getting into trouble, um, by having them, they might be acknowledging the wrong country. You don't know how that involves, you know? But that was the move that I'd put you in touch with, that are not only recognised but endorsed by our community.
Yes. Yes, Mr Barrett.
Possibly what might be an offensive question, and I'm sorry if it is, but.
Get a this one.
First of all, would anyone challenge your authority to know that?
No, of course not.
No, don't go to Paul Carr, he doesn't know how this all is like.
Yeah, and that, and that, like I said, for everyone, I don't speak or represent everyone. I wouldn't dare to try and say that I do. Yeah, I, I just, uh, agree with Paul. War is everything, whether inland or on the coast. My family used to get worms and get hippies. Now I've got a life to go, you know? We, we made a living from doing it. And they go, oh, you've got to get a life. Wouldn't you get a life? I learned to catch worms when I was six years old, because me mum and dad and grandfathers all that. And now you can't, we can't do that. When I went back to the war, running out from Victoria, I used to walk from, I don't know where you know, walk from, but I walked from Dara to the beach. Catch worms, stand up and, and walk back out to Dara, pushing a brand. Uh, it was a way of me feeding my family. That, that's taking away, that's culture. We pull up, that's my family's on the coast of fishermen, you know? Because you put all these big, big on it, you've got to get a life for this. And we had got money to get big lives in us and paid every year. Most of our people on the coast feed themselves on, on what they get out of the ocean, you know? I don't agree with people just going and then taking it and not, that's not out of the way anyway, taking everything and it's all can't go back. But when fisheries, like I always call when you say, the fisheries, they're major ships now, Aboriginal. Now they have to get a record now, yeah, you can get it, but you can't sell it. Imagine as a restraint of trade. And, but we've been doing it for centuries. At ten thousand years, forty thousand years, we've been doing this sort of culture stuff. And when, when we come down here, because me mum and dad and the rest of the family come down, we used to cut corporate. They might go, even, can't do all this stuff now. They've got obstacles anyway, why you can't do it. So they're taking away our culture. You know, they're taking away the culture. Paul said, oh, how many lives can I have in the boat, uh, when I go fishing? What about the fact that you have more rent, right? Because there's no restriction on how many lives. You haven't got, the only thing with fisheries, whatever, we can't sell anything. But what did Aboriginal people do when they, when they, you know, that? That's what we did, we tried to keep our families alive, so. I see all these obstacles put in our lives, even with cultural heritage, that way. And I believe, because I was like, they're welcome to come in here. I was thinking, I don't do that. I said, there's all the people in this part of the community, that's Aegyo, isn't that Aboriginal money? Elders, we listen to our elders. And I said, no, no, but you give money, I'm saying, care about the money, it's a value, our way, you know? Anyway, but I, I just need to learn that our stuff is taken away. Because people think we're going to go out and rope the oceans and rope the, the rivers, take all the resources. And that's what, uh, my people did. I was in a conference in Kosovo, and he said, but you're only twenty percent of the population. I said, yeah, we're thirty percent, but you're ninety-seven percent that's roped and buried this country since you've been here. I said, we don't get that. And when you look at the billions and billions of dollars government give out from people, it's end up with a gravy truck. Gravy train just taking their money. Like when I was in the Northern Territory, they, they just couldn't understand. And just, like I'll bet you, uh, we can actually train people up in our areas to do all the, the building and, and that's give them work in our community. The companies, they go, why do, why do governments give, uh, Todd Palmer, Kudzie Forest? The lady one, what do they get their money? They get fishers and fishers and all the other, that they, they call them their corporate partners. You know, you know, from right, they're right, they're taking every product out of the earth. And they're going to write, then they look after it. What, I don't have to pay them for it, they didn't capture me in the dollar. So it's sad to me. I mean, where, where does their corporate responsibility? That's, that's, that's mine.
Thank you, thank you, Ms Ma. We're running out of time. Mr Carr, have you got a final, um, thing you'd like to say? Thank you.
I have, I just, because we're talking about culture right now. You know, I think it was sixty-seven, the referendum, um, you know, talks about speech, like, they think that was when the black people was giving the vote. You know, it was when we were recognised as human beings. I was forty years old before I was even counted as a human being, you know, I was cornered and flawed. But now this bill, this cultural bill, needs to reflect that Aboriginal culture. Um, I can see we've got a lot of work in front of us and, and a lot of, a lot more, I hope, will go into this. Because our culture, our culture was beat out of us, raped out of us, you know, bred out of us. Whatever you could do to get the culture out of us, that's what they tried. But you know what? We're still you trying to get it back in and, and if people like yourself have got the opportunity to make a wrong rope, um, just, I just hope that, you know, we, we really do look at all, all the possibilities that we start count for the same old, same old. Because I represent my community, I don't represent, I'm not protecting my superannuation or my job. I need to do community. And that's, that's, that's what I want to stay, thank you.
Thank you so much, your evidence has been really important. Thank you for your time, and we'll conclude this session there. Thank you, both of you. Okay. Um, welcome back, everybody. Um, Mr Knight, welcome to you for our next session. Now, if you would mind, I welcome you as our next witness, Mr Knight. Could I please ask you to state your name, position and title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
All right, thank you. Thanks for the invitation and, uh, allowing me to propose this important, uh, item. As the former vice president of either represent ACHAC, the Aboriginal Heritage and Indigenous Committee, I'm a double U and descendant and representative of country in that area. And the affirmation would be that, wholeheartedly and sincerely and truly declaring our time that the evidence now that has been given, what they shall be deferred, the whole truth and nothing is deferred.
Thank you very much. And Mr Knight, would you like to start by, do you have an opening statement you'd like to make?
Yeah, I do, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I start by acknowledging country and all those who have gone before me today and in the past and the decades past? Country is the very root that we have here today, is what provides us with identity to place, is what holds up, our values, our knowledges and our character. In our household view, these things are often referred to flexibly and in my very, in my view, simply as culture. This is what defines us as Aboriginal people and it is what defines all people within a place. As custodians of country from millennia is our role to ensure that the embodiment of country is well recognised, respected and celebrated. Everyone within country takes on the obligation to embrace the structures of land, community and relationship that country gives. We need to recognise and strongly reflect on the traditions that allow Aboriginal people to live in harmony with our place without leaving any noticeable control. We need to reflect on the instances that have upset and remove the focus on country and its policies, what is it doing and being to our individuals, the self-serving actions today. I acknowledge country and all those that have already and will in the future carry the values and practices of country. So on behalf of the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Committee, ACHAC, I'd like to thank the committee for your contribution today. ACHAC has provided the committee with a submission in response to the ACH reform bill, which I'm going through the details of that, I will touch on its main points. ACHAC recommends to the committee that the prior objective of ACH reform, that ahead of any other objective, must always be better protection of Aboriginal cultural heritage. We also advise that whatever ACH reforms are legislated, if they are unable to attract the critical mass of Aboriginal community confidence, they will fail. Central to Aboriginal community confidence is that the administration of ACH must be overseen by a representative Aboriginal organisation. That is, an Aboriginal board constituted by independent members, that have cultural organisation within its afterlife. His first, his first duty and accountability is to use afterlife as Aboriginal custodians. The requirement for representative cultural authority is sent to the full nation of the ACH administrative bodies at the local and regional level, as we have put it today, is very important. Whether these bodies are called ACH local council, as in the draft ACH bill in two thousand and eighteen, or ACH services, as they are called in two thousand and twenty-two ACH bill that we are looking at today. There's been no consultation of Aboriginal communities or of culturally authorised Aboriginal custodians on ACH reform since two thousand and eighteen. It's unthinkable that any ACH reform would proceed through our parliament before exhaustive consultation of those primary Aboriginal ACH stakeholders is complete. The summary recommendation of ACHAC is that the ACH reform, Cultural Identity Bill, essentially fails on all these tests and should not be supported by the internal power of parliament. ACHAC, ACHAC's independence of representative cultural authority has been brought up today. And on that note, we'd like to respond to the following. I'll take this opportunity to draw the attention of the inquiry to an additional to, sorry. As you know, ACHAC is an independent statutory advisory body of government on the management of ACH communities afterlife, if it is there through the National Parks and Wildlife Regulation. NTS Corp, NTS afterlife Heritage Council, can all nominate one member of ACHAC. There's no requirement that any of these nominated members demonstrate a representative association with Aboriginal custodians of ACH. So we do bring in those other parties into, and they are allowed to be members of ACHAC. However, the act, the remaining ten act members, which is the vast majority of the community, must be nominated by Aboriginal group, native title owners or claimants, registered Aboriginal owners, that means they must all be able to show an authentic credential as an ACH custodian or as a nominated representative by ACH custodian. A fundamental concern of ACHAC is that there is no such representative requirement for ACH council from ACH reform, ACH reform, Cultural Identity Bill. That approach, it's all standing policy on the concept of a representative Aboriginal group's activity and will not be acceptable to Aboriginal custodians. The second point that I ask the inquiry to note is that ACHAC is the only statewide Aboriginal body that has nothing to do with itself through ACH reform. ACHAC has always understood that whatever ACH reform is placed, good or bad, at that point, ACHAC will say it's good as a matter of fact. From ACHAC's point of view, that is not about this. In fact, for the last twelve years in our ACH reform, that will better protect our cultural heritage is what we have worked for. As the inquiry consists of this submission, I ask you to recognise ACHAC's unique standing as an independent statewide Aboriginal body with consciousness of ACH reform and which approaches that path with all its rights, of an older foundational ambition or comprehensive interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Knight. Now it's, we have a few, members of the committee have some questions and I might start if that's okay. Can I, is it, is it a fair summary or, or is it a proposition perhaps that ACHAC is, would support part, or would support these reforms and this bill if the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council was a differently constituted council? Is that, is that what you see as part of one of the primary problems of the bill?
Yeah, thanks for that question. Sorry, getting a feedback. Before, before starting to get any further responses, I will push out a question for the notice, the collective response from ACHAC. It is a matter that has not proved sufficient, it's not quite a community. If I first of all, if I fully indicate that people, that it's started to suck, then I'll secondly, response from ACHAC will make sense to me. In terms of, sorry, I'm getting a, really bad, I've actually cured myself from about a minute of the threat I was feeling there from ACHAC.
Okay, hang on a sec, Mr Knight. Is there something we can do about that? Another, in another tab. Oh, I see. Mr Knight, is it possible that you may have the webcast on in a different tab on your system?
That's all having a role.
Thank you. No, that's absolutely fine, please. Thank you, thank you.
Sorry, back to your, back to your question. Would we support it? For that, I would need to go back and reflect that, but from my personal perspective, but we'll take that question on notice and we'll provide a response from the committee. I, I believe there is an opportunity to support this bill, providing that recognition and that diversity of members of membership of the ACH council was possible, possible energy and that it wasn't locked into one group or another. There is, from my personal reading of the bill, I believe that is very, that can happen. But it's not so bad and it's not clearly that one, and I think very likely the problem.
So just on that point, so would you suggest at the moment, ACHAC is, do you think the system that we're operating under now with ACHAC is a good representative system in terms of, you know, I know, I recognise that ACHAC is an advisory body. If ACHAC perhaps was the decision-making body, do you think that that would, based on the experience of ACHAC, that that would be a good system as the overarching body under legislation?
I think ACHAC provides a, a structure around membership and that clearly for a statewide body, it, that provides diversity of views and perspectives, including from the legislative agency, which does, you know, as, as said by legislature, that is new, new one, in the Black Island Council, it's a legislative instrument. And so we can hear, talk through the federal system. So we all have our parts and roles to play within that and those memberships are reflected within ACHAC. But we also have the independent community members that are strong communities with those cultural knowledges. Now, one of the things that, as I've watched today, hearing, that has come up time and again, is really focused on the local determination and that local context. ACHAC doesn't really provide that and, you know, I will, I will, but what we do is provide a good cross section of state interest in Aboriginal cultural heritage reform. And I think there needs to be those two things. This bill does provide an opportunity for that, certainly the two thousand and eighteen bill, which was supported by ACHAC.
Thank you, Mr Knight. Thank you, Mr Knight. Hold on a minute, just get my microphones. Apologies, Mr Knight, we've got various microphones we need to speak into in here. Just firstly, just to follow up on the, you know, the response that you just gave to my colleague, Ms Higginson. You know, as you have touched on, there has been quite a bit of evidence that the idea of any kind of statewide representative body is never, no matter how it's constituted, you know, who, whoever is providing the membership of, of that statewide representative body, it's never going to be able to capture the breadth and depth of local knowledge, that local capacity. And so I suppose, you know, again, based on your experiences on the currently existing statewide advisory body, you know, how might we reflect in law if we were to pass new laws, appropriate levels of, whether it's decision-making, consultation, engagement with those local bodies? How could we describe in our laws, you know, the effort that we would want to happen to ensure those local voices were properly captured? Because as you say, it's almost impossible to do that in any kind of statewide body.
Absolutely. I, I think the position that we should be looked at there and against the two thousand and eighteen bill and the one that we're looking at today, actively in a local representative council or committee, you know, to advise on those situations. It's imperative that that happens because the knowledge that's required to understand and interpret as a culture is at that local level. I think to, to really achieve that, there's going to be also different perspectives on, and different views on what's culturally appropriate. I think there needs to be flexibility in those local committees, they couldn't be completely prescriptive. So, you know, a term that could be made up or a, a committee that could be formed from time to time to look at specific issues may, may work, but I think that really needs to be determined at that local level. And it's really creating a breadth of possibility within the legislation or that, for the definition and the, the constituency of that, the municipality that's done it locally.
And I suppose, I mean, you know, some of the evidence that we've heard today, for example, has been that in areas, in the, in the sixteen areas where there has been a sort of legally recognised native title claim, that those native title owners, traditional owners, they would be, in a way, the sort of local decision-makers in areas where there was a sort of claimant action on foot, you know, that hadn't been finalised but that was on foot, they might be local decision-makers in, in areas where neither of those things were the case. I think, you know, that obviously land councils could play a role. I mean, that's some of the evidence that, that we've sort of received. We're trying to put this together, you know, in a sort of Western legal framework of writing laws. Does that, does that sort of capture in a way what you're saying or you think it should be more flexible than that?
I, I think there needs to be a, a, a degree of flexibility in how it's constituted and they will need to change at different occasions because there may be representative of supply from different knowledge holders in different areas. And across base titles, there is, because of all the land councils there are sitting, in my personal experience, like everybody will have the knowledge of those areas. So you're going to have to look at who's the knowledge holders in those even smaller areas within the local.
Yeah, I mean, that is just, sorry, I might just ask one more question than others. You know, you, you, you mentioned this sort of concept of, you know, of, of, of ACH knowledge, like a, you know, cultural heritage, cultural custodianship knowledge as this sort of recognised thing. And I just wondered if you could elaborate on how, on, on that, on how that works? How an individual, or you know, a group of individuals are sort of recognised as having that particular cultural knowledge?
Yeah, that's, that's a very good question. Probably one of the things that's counted for any place of place in the community is actually going to be identifying the knowledge holder. And the really, as we say, who speaks for country? That, that in itself is a difficulty and that's really what we need to be focusing on. It's the life that, again, from my personal perspective, when I was at ACH reform, you know, we can look at the overarching legislative frameworks, but until we can get down to who really speaks for country and inherent capacity within communities, that we've worked with that and developed those skills, we're really going to be, and those knowledges of which all communities have, it's really going to be changed all the time from people on the set. But it needs, so we need to kind of step back in some aspects of legislation. And one of the biggest things that's required here is investing in Aboriginal communities to build that capacity. None of the legislation that, or none of the discussion that we really talk about is really focused on what's the investment required to actually deliver a considerable outcome. And one of the biggest concerns that I personally have in this space is that a lack of investment will lead to failure. A lack of investment is why land councils really struggle to get funding in communities and get a lot of quick facts because they don't have the resources to deliver on the legislative frameworks that have been handed to them and said, you need to do these things. So until we can really go, okay, we're going to do this properly, here's what it's going to take in terms of investment, we could actually be just getting, having things up once again and more. So it's going to have to really step back some point and go, well, hang on, what do we want to achieve?
Okay, I've got Ms McDonald and then I'll go to you, Mr Barrett.
Thanks, Paul. My question is, I guess, to do, to do with Aboriginal cultural heritage, with the meaning that is in the bill in its current form and the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Advisory Council, do they align with what, what you're thinking Aboriginal cultural heritage should be? Like the intangibles, the tangibles? And if not, what would you see changed?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, the intangible heritage needs to be included within the bill or any legislative framework around Aboriginal heritage. It is, from my personal perspective, the most important part in that, it's the, if you're like, if you build a brick wall, you can seal the bricks, but if you don't cover the wall up, the whole thing falls down. And it's that wall that is the intangible. It's the thing that really makes the wall stay. And so we can actually appreciate, highlight and celebrate the intangible heritage, we're going to really struggle to get it by those Aboriginal communities. I hope that is your question?
Yeah, thank you.
I was just, just as a follow-up, how do you define or, or can you not, is it not definable, the intent?
Yeah, so I like the prophetic hand of words that has the, the, what is the story, the principles, the values, behaviour? What are the things that really create identity? Everything that, there is value constructed- There are things that, there are values constructed that say, this is the way we need to act. This is the things we need to do. These are the practices we need to enable. Because that's the intangible aspect of what makes us who we are. Regardless whether you're looking at it in given culture or in culture, it's those that determine what you do and how you do it.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Knight, we were talking before about trying to find out who speaks for country. How have you dealt with that in your deliberations on the advisory council? And what has worked and not worked in your experience?
Yes, so I, I guess, because that has really, that statewide body. A lot of the local decisions making is a very dominant factor, I guess. But when it comes to, and we heard earlier about ACH and that Aboriginal heritage impact tournament and consent for destroyal, it's there called consent in your work now, but it's probably changed the terminology around that. Those things are done under delegation through heritage, they do not come from ACHA. We have no, we don't make decisions around those. It makes through local heritage, uh, representatives, representing Aboriginal heritage. So, yeah, but I guess the reality is, we don't have to deal with those. We deal with some of the larger things. I don't know whether there might be an Aboriginal case declaration. That is ACHA. One of the things that will take down around that is what is the local support for this? What are the local perspectives? What are the submissions that we're getting from those groups around the support for Aboriginal case declaration? And what's their cultural connection to that project? And we will just, we will take that instance at our, we do not have legislative authority, if you like, to really change the course of Aboriginal heritage. We're only an advisory, we're not a, we're not a regulator. And I think that's one of the things the, our bill purposes is, for example, it actually puts the regulation of Aboriginal heritage in the hands of Aboriginal people. That is not, that is not the case there.
So on that, Mr. Knight, do you think that the way, that what the Act is proposing right now in terms of the operation? So you've got this overarching sort of state body and let's say it has, you know, voices that are appropriately positioned to then know or at least find out who at the local level can actually speak with cultural authority in relation to cultural heritage, whether it be to protect it or whether it be to possibly consider it being impacted? Do you see that structure as a sound, workable structure across the state? So again, this overarching body, but that it would then find that localised service that can then be, be the ultimate decision?
I think from reading the bill and reading the 2018 bill, the way the, the interpretation, the way that would progress is that the decisions would actually be made at the local level. And really the only one that elevated us to the state body is the law, is it's coming to the issue, is there a challenge to that decision-making process? It would be my view that if there was a challenge around that, it was really around process. Were the rights considered by those local communities? Were the processes included? It's, it's not, it's an administrative function more so than a, we're going to make the decisions for you. Because we don't agree. And I, I think that needs to be really understood. If, if that's the case, I think Aboriginal people would generally support this process. Because it's the same, well, the issue is still kept local, it's still kept by those custodians of knowledge. And the other problem, it gets elevated to the state body when, when there may have been some misrepresentation or something wasn't done right. And in my view, it would go to the state body, the state body would go, oh, we need to look at that again. And we'd send it back and maybe assist or support the local body to get, you know, go through the right framework to get the results at the end of the day.
And so if you thought, if you saw that system as being properly resourced, are you saying that you think that would be, that's the effective system or an effective model?
I don't, I, I think it is. But again, that's a personal perspective on that. My opinion would be the resorting around that. Given from my understanding, and I could be wrong on this, there was a bit of a view that the 2018 bill, which had that structure in it, was too expensive. Hence the extent why it wasn't progressed. Whether that's the case or not, I'm not taking a judgment on that. I think the resulting around this is really vital. Otherwise, it will lead to failure.
I think one of the concerns that has been raised in evidence, I think, you know, from representatives of, for example, the, some of the land councils, was that they, you know, they sort of suggested that at, sometimes at that localised level, and this goes back to your question of, you know, who speaks for country, that there was genuine instances of fraud where, particularly if there's resources involved, to be honest, particularly if people are able to make money from, you know, being responsible for local cultural significant sort of, you know, reports or determinations. You know, they suggested in evidence to us that they believe that there were examples of people who were not the right people to make those decisions or give that advice, who were doing that, you know, fraudulently. I suppose, first of all, is that something that, you know, is that a concern that you would share? You know, you've been working in this space, is that something that you've seen? And secondly, you know, again, you know, if, if we were to significantly resource this and say, yes, you know, we know that to make this work, we need to put substantial money behind it, how do we avoid that in future? You know, how do we ensure that the system is robust enough to get around that problem? Because, you know, obviously it's going to really undermine the legitimacy of it in, you know, any future model.
Yeah, absolutely. And really that comes back to that, I think, that speaks for country. Would, would I support the view of Aboriginal land councils that this possible fraud is? Absolutely. And I don't know that there would be a single person that, that would otherwise within the, within the state that's the law. The issue is the way the current legislation is being acted around, as we heard just then before, rats or records of Aboriginal parties, where basically anybody can put up their hand and raise for an Aboriginal party. There is no validation requirement around that. There's no way of ensuring that the person has the facts, the knowledge or the background. I think, as I said earlier, I'm a dual UNer. I would not speak for most of UN countries, or never lived on UN countries. But I, you know, my, my mother's family's from that, that area. But there are, I guess, Aboriginal, Aboriginal people or even not Aboriginal people that would do that. They would actually say, I have a lot to speak on that country. And people that have grown up with an intrinsic link to that country are quite often pushed aside because maybe that's a quiet hill that maybe they're, I just think you have to deal with. Or they're, they're not that same note to the project for progress. And the consultants that are working in that space, most of their role is to actually get their proponent across the line so they can progress their project. So the easier you can make that progress for yourself, the more likely you will have to pay that provision and, and support those people that are going to lose the project. But we really need to get that balance right. There needs to be a structure of validation in whatever occurs in the space. There's also, in my opinion, the investment back into developing the capacity within communities to pass on those knowledges and support those communities in delivering that, those cultural frameworks for the betterment of cultural heritage overall. And we've got to remember that Aboriginal heritage doesn't just belong to Aboriginal people, it belongs to all of us. Because it is something that if we lose, we lose forever.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, I know you had another question.
Well, I did, but I'll just step across another one in what you've just said there. Please, please, I'd like to answer this one. Did I infer from what you just said that you, you wouldn't feel comfortable speaking about your mother's country despite bloodlines? Yet you think others that have lived there for a while would be able to speak to it, even if they didn't have those bloodline connections?
Not at all. Well, I think that's a really interesting question that you posed. I think if they've grown up, and this is what I was hoping about before, I guess, around how, mechanism for validation, I guess, which really needs to be held by communities. You know, I, I do have that bloodline, but do I have the knowledge about those sites? Do I have the knowledge about the, the stories of those areas? I would say no, personally, I would say no. You know, there are others that may have different views. But the reality is, from an ethical and moral perspective of my value to Aboriginal culture, I personally wouldn't do it. And what we need to do is make sure that communities have the power and have a mechanism where they can go, well, hang on, Paul, you're not going to come down here and go, you might have that bloodline connection here, but you haven't got the cultural value knowledge that's included in that. And therefore, and therefore, until you get that and you come and spend time with us, that we can validate that you do have embrace that knowledge, you have spoken to the country on prior.
So the question I was going to ask is about consultation and referring to the submission.
Okay, yeah.
And I think that, I think this isn't the consultation, this is the government consultation, I think, which you do sort of refer to in this. But also you said in there that the proponents, and I don't know if you're in the room, but proponents made no attempt to consult in a culturally appropriate way. Excuse me, the government also, I wasn't involved in this, but I suggest that the proponents would strongly disagree with that, as did the land council that we had in here earlier this morning. I just wondered if you'd elaborate a little bit more on that.
Yeah, look, I, I have my brothers and I, both, and Nathan and Richard, I know very well. And I believe, and I actually support their cultural identity in this place and their ability to be able to advocate for Aboriginal people. The condition of ACTA has been that the 2018 bill has been widely circulated for a lot of consultation around that. The community knew what, what was being proposed. This, this bill is wasn't circulated in the same way. It's basically just lengthy parlance, as people weren't aware of. A lot of people weren't even aware that it was being developed with a very small and exclusive group that was part of that consultation process to develop the bill. I do know that it was better drawn up quite in the 2018 bill. But there's always nuances in these things that aren't necessarily other schools. And I think from that perspective, this bill needs to be more widely circulated. And that, that's the challenge. And that's the position that ACTA taken, is that we need better consultation around this with a broader cross section of communities.
Just had another question, perhaps if I might, cheers. I mean, I think you've sort of referenced this a little bit to the extent that perhaps this is a role that a, some kind of, you know, statewide body could play. But, you know, I think there have definitely been instances where at the, at that local level, there's been dispute about, you know, what should happen. And I'm thinking specifically of the, you know, issue recently in relation to the Mungo Remains. And, you know, that, like, as legislators, we don't want to, you know, write laws that are going to make that more difficult or, you know, set, you know, set systems up to fail. So thinking about examples like that where there is dispute, even at the local level, about what action to take or not to take, you know, what certain, you know, sites have significance and what others. You know, is it, is it your view that if we're trying to write laws to resolve that, that those types of things would be referenced to the statewide body? I mean, is that, is that, to be honest, there's no perfect system here. But if we're trying to capture what might be a path forward, that is your view about how to resolve those types of things?
I, I think, again, a personal perspective on that. I think really that the statewide body's role in that situation is actually to go out there and work with those local community groups to say, hang on, what's the right for what is? And, and it may have been just flow of process, but that's the thing out here dealing with Aboriginal heritage. Nothing happens instantaneously. On, on that same note, a little, a similar note, and there's something that you've actually just reminded me from the earlier discussion. I gave evidence to this, um, chicken boarding department around Aboriginal culture heritage and ways of better managing that. And this has already came up today, is we need, and it speaks to the, that notion of better investment in the space. What we really need to do is, like, that Aboriginal cultural heritage reform rights, in my view, one of the big things that needs to be invested in is setting up the knowledge base of buildings so that when projects or issues come to light, we already know what we're dealing with. I've been in numerous situations with developers where, you know, they've always spent all their money on purchasing property and that they just want to keep progressing their project. And they've spent that money based on what they've just been yielding from that project to date. And then when Aboriginal heritage pops up and they go, well, hang on, I can't do all that now, they get very upset and potentially rightly so. That's the problem. I don't necessarily agree with that from their perspective, rightly so. If there was investors that were there, right, to start with the Aboriginal community and go out and start mapping areas and here's the areas that are completely non-negotiable. We will not allow it to be developed in these areas. Here we'll talk about it, over here, yes, we don't think that's going to be a problem. Things may still pop up, but it's less likely. And everybody knows what the playing field is. And this is where we always fail with Aboriginal heritage. Because everyone starts the other half and they're, oh, we've got to consult others. And, and then you start backtracking. And the Aboriginal communities may actually be the baddies. They might actually, oh, you just don't want to develop. Well, that's something that sort of takes, we just want our culture to be respected. We want now against you not to be challenged. We've had enough challenges around now against you. We don't need to keep doing that. We don't want you to keep reaching the top, even when you are at the table, because you want to put your right choice, because you want to feel your own identity. We need to get that off. In my view, the easiest way to do that is stop investing in the Aboriginal community mapping cultural heritage of those.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. We're just nearly out of time, but can I just ask one point of clarification from you? When you spoke of, when we were talking about cultural authority and you spoke about mechanisms of validation or mechanisms for validation, is it, is it fair to say that that would be similar if somebody was referring to cultural protocols? Do you think we're sort of talking about a similar thing there? We heard some evidence earlier where somebody was saying, well, they would know what the cultural protocol is, i.e. who to go to in the local community to ask about a particular piece, part of cultural heritage. Are you referring to a similar thing or something different?
Yeah, look, it's very similar. Because it's about understanding that process of what the local, the local value construct is for Aboriginal heritage. So, yeah, it is very similar. It's probably similar to the protocol. I talked about the terms of values, I know.
Yeah.
Just what are the values? What's the main, the notion of culture, again, a personal perspective. The notion of culture is a bit of a nebulous idea in some of the things. It's really a set of values constructs that determine the way you're going to do it and practice them, and people will sit behind that. And you express that through language, dance, song, art, you know. They're, but they're all, all part of culture. And that's where culture comes in, it's how you bring all that together. Um, and I think we forget that, and we put so much emphasis on the aspects over and over, rather than the whole. And this is where cultural heritage comes into play as well. So, given that we're running a trial, if I can just give you a bit of, I'm sorry, if that might. Um, but there's no doubt Aboriginal cultural heritage is important. We all know that, and I think everybody agrees. The issue that I have many times, what does that define? Is cultural heritage just a thing of the past? And there were these things, some of those brought up today as well. The stone of the bones, Western science, its view and analysis of cultural heritage is definitely where we're at the moment. That's always been, it, you know, the question is, what does this add to our knowledge of Aboriginal people and the ways they live? Actually, if it gets to the limit, it is the oldest living holdout, and it's still moving forward, and it's still there. But how, but because we can't address Western politics, we can only destroy and get the Christ side. Because it's in the interest of science, not in the interest of the values of Aboriginal people. So, so we need to consider that. We need to consider, is, is Aboriginal cultural heritage about the here and now as well? Is it about giving Aboriginal people recognition of their connection through this space? The space called Mekatwa. Is it about celebrating and connecting and informing, at least for a time, that these connected people, with the identity that they need, or they want from this world? Is it about re-establishing paths of practice, values, structures in a modern context that is even relevant in this time and space? These are all questions that I doubt if the current bill really addresses, and I doubt if we look at when we consider Aboriginal heritage. Is it about the past? Is it about now? Or is it about the future? You know? How do we make sure that those values and patterns and practices just have a place in another thousand years' time? What's the artifact we've got today that's going to ensure everybody can relate better against it? I personally don't know. It's performed, so I've seen opposed or discussed, really encapsulated that space. If we can look back and protect the site and objects, are we worth it? Um, if we don't do that, then we are, because we've lost something. If we can't celebrate promoting where the regular values, practices and voice structures that created those things in the first place and provide that identity back in Aboriginal people, which is all part of our cultural heritage, are we worth it? Absolutely. We can't determine to the day and how we bring these structures into the here and now. What's the best answer? We have to subscribe, not to Aboriginal people in my view, we all need to come together, look at these new structures, the relationships that enable them, and enable us to thrive in this place, tens of thousands of years. We can look back and go, well, hang on, you know, if we've got this at home, there's actually a lot of good values and information and practices in there that allowed Aboriginals to survive in this country without really leaving any, anything of substance that looks like desecration. You know, a few grand groups here, some are worse there, but it was that connection, that connection to country and the values that are inherent within that space that makes us who we are. And we all, which I think is third in terms of, and those things are super important, and we really need to focus on that. The space, I think, isn't the enemy of the good, you know, what's the good isn't good enough. And, you know, or maybe in this case, the good is walking out. Um, I also have you on that, but I, I think we need to really think about what is the right one, which is, how are we recognizing and celebrating and developing the identity and inclusivity of Aboriginal people in the future we all need? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Feel very valuable evidence, Mr. Knight. Um, if there was any questions taken on notice, the secretary will be in contact with you, um, to receive those within seven days. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
I now welcome our next witnesses. Um, could each of you please state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation? And we'll start with you, Ms. Chick.
My name is Rachel Chick, Senior Solicitor at the Environmental Defenders Office. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Uh, my name is Scott McCain Franks. I'm the CEO of Tokamol Proprietary Limited and also the appointed native title applicant for the Plains Cleanser, the Wanneroo People in the Hunter Valley. Uh, yes, I solemnly, solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now, now that I'm about to give, uh, by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Brown, we've got Ms. Brown joining by webex. Ms. Brown.
I'm Kazane Brown. I'm a Gandaan Aboriginal community member from Warrigama. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Now, would any of you like to make a short opening statement?
Yes, um, so firstly, I acknowledge that, uh, we are currently on the lands of the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, and I pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. The Environmental Defenders Office welcomes the opportunity to appear before the committee in relation to the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Cultures Identity Bill. EDO is a non-indigenous community legal centre. We work alongside First Nations around Australia and the Torres Strait Islands in their efforts to protect countries and cultural heritage from damage and destruction. The cultural heritage of First Nations have not been adequately recognised, respected or protected by Western laws since Europeans arrived. And Western laws today are still failing to provide the necessary respect to First Nations and protection of their cultural heritage. This failure is in breach of our international law obligations, including under the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, which Australia has adopted. EDO strongly supports standalone New South Wales legislation that deals with the protection of Aboriginal cultural heritage, designed by First Nations for First Nations. Standalone legislation is long overdue, and it's unacceptable that New South Wales laws continue to facilitate damage and destruction of heritage at all, let alone under flora and fauna legislation. For standalone legislation to be effective, it must reflect Australia's international legal obligations and be co-designed by First Nations from across New South Wales. First Nations must lead the development of a consultation process to ensure that it is conducted in a culturally appropriate manner, and the views of all New South Wales First Nations communities are heard, not only those who have the means to attend to hearings in Sydney CWD. EDO has a diverse range of First Nations clients across New South Wales who have a diverse range of views on these critically important and personal issues. There needs to be space made in this law reform process for a plurality of First Nations voices to be heard. To this end, two of EDO's clients, Kazane Brown, a Gundangarau woman from Warrigama, and Scott Franks, a Wanneroo man from the Hunter Valley, have generously agreed to speak to the committee today about their experiences with current legislative frameworks and their thoughts on the bill. As EDO considers that this time is best spent by the committee hearing from our clients, I'm happy to take any legal or technical questions from the committee on notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Franks or Ms. Brown, is there anything you'd like to say before we start asking questions?
If Ms. Brown wants to speak first, I'm fine with that.
Right.
My name is Kazane Brown. I'm a Gandaan Aboriginal woman, currently living in Warrigama, a family from a country in the Warrigama Valley. Trying to be prepared for the crisis of Warrigama. Even the last Aboriginal family to be trying to handle the latest reviews of current legislation, filter from a council, and now is continuing to desecrate our sacred sites like they have since invasion. Sacred sites are marked independently by smog and hard tactics, but it's the light of story that traverses country, uniformed strategy. Our sites form part of a country, for us, it's an entity, country is their mother. Warrigama Dam project is the perfect example of legislation fail. When contractors doing the list they had to do to make character, knowledge, all the trouble is being excluded from surveys, contractors having their work in mind is helping to get it to take the components. Legislation has failed to protect a large part of our remaining heritage. Furthermore, we are routinely denied access to the area. My children and grandchildren, they might have a chance for the heritage of the country before it will be destroyed. I welcome the recognition in the bill of the United Nations Declaration of Rights of Indigenous Peoples or Indigenous in the application of that right. Great prior and informed consent with vital features of people, it's the outcome of decision-making that affects them. It's not merely the right to be consulted without project, but others will ultimately make decisions about it. However, the bill will create bodies that is the H Council and local acting H services to keep the power of decision-making to people who are most likely not directly descended from the lands in pressure, exposed against beauty. The bill seems to be struggling with responsibility of decision-making from one government partner to another bureaucracy, which is not, nothing to fix the problems it gives. The bill does not give me a voice, let's see, it assumes that the ACH bodies will protect their own communities. Doesn't go far enough in protecting individual property, to be clean council, another Aboriginal corporation is too much help. The decision around cultural heritage should be made by a community that's just by the community that therefore has lived in the area and has cultural knowledge of that lineage. Clean councils and other indigenous organisations do not speak for everyone. In general, Aboriginal land councils, our organisations, they're quite open, they put them in direct conflict with traditional decisions. My white, my white land council is made up of a few truly local families, and there are many others who would get different rights instead of here. And while so many of them may have grown up here, they have no local cultural knowledge or connections in the area. These people should know to make decisions about my cultural heritage. Indigenous people should not have to be a member of a council, or an organisation to have a voice. Many other indigenous people have had no desire to become a member of a land council, and they felt like being forced to become incorporated, to be taken seriously, having a voice in aid insurance just to access my country. We shouldn't have to do this. I think that ACH bodies, composed by the bill, will try to open the doors of corruption and pride and further disruption of culture and protection, protecting it. This bill does not empower community and will fail to protect the individual heritage. Current laws of legislation is limited, it's a dangerous, it's a bad answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franks.
I'm glad I waited. Look, obviously, my name's Scott Franks, and being a native title applicant, it's an important community-appointed role, and I just want to clarify that we always hear this word, "community". When I hear it though, I don't hear "community", I hear "Wanneroo". Everyone else uses the word "community", which has no bearing in our Wanneroo country, because we are the community. We've sweated, we've bled and we've died on those lands. And it's hard to sort of sit here and I welcome the opportunity to speak in front of, uh, the committee about this bill. You know, being involved in Aboriginal archaeological work for over fifteen years and being an ex-chairperson and being on this committee and that committee and watch several bills float by like a rollercoaster, I've never ever seen anyone really land on the true understanding of what it means to be an Aboriginal person in this country, except for an Aboriginal person who's confronted with, you know, a dire position of trying to protect their law and culture. And what I've seen, even today, and I had to have a bit of reflection this morning when I, I overheard a conversation with my middle daughter Molly and her mum, Sarah, where she said, "Mum, little kids at school are asking me, telling me I'm not Aboriginal because I'm not black enough today." And my wife said to my daughter, "How do you feel about that?", and she goes, "Well, I know I'm Aboriginal." And I thought, you know, instead of me jumping on my bike and ripping down to the school, it's time to let the kids move on. But as an appointed representative and a native title applicant and once a native title, um, you know, registered native title claimant, one thing I've seen in our country, and I'm only going to speak for Wanneroo country, because I'm not authorised, and I think this is what this bill doesn't get. I am not authorised to speak on any other mob's country. I'm just not. Culturally, I am not. I, even in my day-to-day work, if I take a contract on as an archaeological firm or an ecological firm, I always seek permission from the traditional owners before we start the project. If I can't get it, I won't do the work. And where the bill is deficient is using this, this shy word of loosely committed to community. It has no bearing in our people. It doesn't. It's a white person's word. It really cuts to the core of our law and custom. Now, I'm sitting here today to talk about a bill that's asking a, an organisation to give authority to make decision that could ultimately change the way my people are treated into the future by our creator, Bayami. You know, Bayami gave me and my people law that I must respect. You know, my skin tag is a koala, yarra, we can't touch them. You know, yet other mobs hunt them. So I'm going to be confronted with someone in a lands council, probably from over the ranges, there's a few over there that, that without a doubt would give a poor old yarra a tap on the nut. Um, that doesn't sit right with me, and it can never, ever sit right with us here as First Nations people. Because I think the biggest thing that everyone's forgotten about is Australia is much in the sense a mini Europe. We have all these different countries, borders, languages, laws and customs. You know, you drive across Europe, your speed limits change, you get booked by different police, you get chased all over the place. That's how you've got to look at Australia. In the Hunter, I've seen the absolute desecration, decimation and annihilation of my people's country for profit. I've seen it every day, including today. I just got an email from a mining company who sat down with a group of people, not Wanneroo, who've basically gave a position that they support, an open cut coal mine. So if you can imagine that, I don't know if anyone's been to the Hunter Valley past Pockalburn, but it's not pretty vineyards or vineyards, after that it's big holes in the ground like the, the side of the, or the dark side of the moon. So if you can imagine someone coming here and putting a wall up in Sydney Harbour and draining all the water out of it, I see that times thirty-seven in my people's country every day. When I go to the local lands council and ask them to defend me and my people as the claimant, the appointed claimant, mind you, this is from, I've been put in this position along with Robert Lester, I advertised meetings over five years to appoint, and, you know, the right people to speak. We then went through an anthropological process to prove we are, because we had one of the first missions in my country, the Sinclair mission, and it decimated our people in the sense of, it introduced, um, smallpox, chickenpox, polio, you name it, everything was tested up in my mob's backyard. My ancestry comes from the First Fleet. My European side was here on the Sirius, he came over here, he then moved to the Hunter Valley. My white side was brought here as range riders to take the lives of First Nation people. So I sit here today with a heavy heart in front of the people elected by this state to speak on their behalf in hope that you hear me being elected from my people in my state, Wanneroo country, where this bill fails exponentially. And, you know, it's hard, it's really hard, it's really emotional for me because I've had a big couple of weeks. Um, and I noticed the earlier discussions and some that I've just heard here, and I just want to reflect on what we do. So archaeologists, that's what the, the, the 2010 Community Consultation Guideline relies on. But I need to say this, archaeologists are not suited and/or qualified to deal with Aboriginal heritage. Their discipline is designed to find clues to prove human society was in an area in question at the point, in a point of time. The 2010 Community Consultation Guideline even states in section three, "To be able to understand both the intangible and non-tangible, you have to use academia discipline of anthropology." So we've got two things going on here. We've got Indiana Jones. So we've got two things going on here. We've got Indiana Jones, because that's what archaeologists are, you know, cowboy hat, whip, running around the paddock, being chased by big spiders. Trying to determine that, you know, First Nations people lived here. I've got a room full of them in my office, I can send them in any time. Yet what they're showing us is something you don't need to be taught. We all know the First Fleet turned up here. We all know Terras Nolas. We all know this land was inhabited. We all know that our First Nations people are here today in front of our Second Nations people. I'm here, live, living and breathing. But the problem with archaeology from a commercial setting is that it's designed to find remnant artefacts, stone tools, markings on trees and so on, to show that society was here. We know we don't need that. The true element to understand culture and law is not those stones and bones that we heard spoke about a minute ago. It's about what I'm trying to tell you that's coming out of my head right now. That was passed down to me from my father, his father, and his mother and his mother. An archaeologist can't do that. They never do that. And if you look at some of the EISs, you know, environmental impact assessments that's coming out of my mob's country, you'll see, I've got an archaeological discipline-trained person who's actually an Egyptian archaeologist, running around Wanera country, talking to a hundred and ten registered Aboriginal parties, being paid six hundred and sixty dollars a day by a mining company to tell them what they want to do, and the only group that can provide any ethnographical evidence or anthropology to what actually happened there is sidelined. That same group is the only group that's tended and provided depositions and dispatches from the Crown that settled this country in eighteen, well, the eighteen hundreds. So I sit here today, you know, absolutely confused with a private members' bill that's had such limited consultation, that's had such limited working within the community, as in the traditional owner community, that's been presented and hurriedly, hastily thrown through the same way that a longboat came off the Endeavour. Post haste to the shore to convince the traditional owners that we were here to look after you when they had no intention of doing that. They were here to steal our culture. Not just our land, our law, our customs, our culture. You cannot place a Wanera man in a position to accept a white man's culture in the guise of a bill that's never, ever been put out there for any other mob to discuss. The timeframe is unacceptable. We've been, and I've got a lot of notes, and I'm not going to focus on them because I'll probably get a bit teary. You know, we've been working on a change to the Aboriginal Heritage Management Plan's legislation or consultation for a long time. I walked into a meeting one day in Redfern, and I was shocked when I walked in there because I knew ninety-nine percent of the firms in there weren't Aboriginal, because mine was the only one that was in there that was Aboriginal. And I asked a very important question. I said, "How many of you fellows are blackfellas?" And did, honestly, if corporal punishment was still in play, it would have been delivered that day on me. I then demanded that if you weren't an Aboriginal person, you should leave the room. The government at the time then decided, "Yep, let's split the room." There was me and about five people sitting left in the room, everyone else went down to another room. And, um, what we were confronted with was archaeologists trying to negotiate a new bill to protect their own job. That's all this is all about. The Archaeological Association of Australia is a committee that'll fight hard to protect the interests of its own discipline, that has no relevance or wealth in dealing with people that still exist. We are still here. I do not need an anthropologist to tell me that. What I do need, though, is a government that hears me when I say we need an anthropologist, not an archaeologist, sorry. We need an anthropologist to join the dots so that this house and every house in moving forward not only truly understands the Bara Charter, but the United Nations Declaration for First Nations People, people, in hearing our voice and accepting it. This bill does not give us that. The bill gives us a finite industry, archaeology, which is just like mining coal in the Hunter Valley, it's going to run out. You can only take so many artefacts out of the ground until we get to a monolith, which is a very small fracture of a piece of silcrete, which is going to have more value than the harbour bridge. Is that what we're going to as a society? This is the only place on earth that doesn't have a treaty with its people. How can it be? Yet we have a lands council attempting to put together and support a voice without traditional owner voice. And to me, that flies in the face of the New South Wales Lands Rights Act. The lands rights, when I was chairperson of lands council, we were restrained from signing off on and/or supporting the destruction of Aboriginal culture. We were encouraged to negotiate agreements with traditional owners. And, and that's, that's what happened when I was there, but it seems to have taken another path where it's turned into a developer. And we've seen that now play out in the last few weeks in the media. You know, we've got, you know, parks that have been obtained and under the Lands Rights Act that are now being, people have been locked out of, not just First Nations, but Second Nations people have been locked out of it. You've got to get permission. Doesn't make sense to me. But, and I'll try and close on this because I know I do waffle a little bit because I know we haven't got much time. But it's important to understand that when you're speaking community, you're speaking to that community. And if you looked at Australia right now, or New South Wales, and we're focusing on New South Wales, you would find that around sixty to seventy percent of the state of New South Wales is currently covered in registered native title claims and several withdrawn native title claims, not dismissed but withdrawn. For those organisations to get to a level of registration, the bar is so high to prove who you are under white man's legislation, it is near impossible to get a claim registered. Um, and it shocks me that, and it's happened to me as a registered native title claimant at the time, I was told by archaeological firms and the Office of Heritage Environment and a couple of other government departments, that even though we've got a native title claim registered, we have no more authority than a person responding to a registration of interest in a paper who's had, who's provided no evidence that they're even Aboriginal, let alone, you know, a First Nations person or a Second Nations person. I mean, we could effectively, under the current 2010 Community Consultation Guideline, we could take a person out of Willowood, have them run an, sending an email to a consultant saying, "I want to register my interest in Aboriginal person", and rest assured under the current policy, they would be registered, and they would be consulted. If not, they could wall shelf over the Land and Environmental Court for Farring consult. It's a problem. How much more do we have to say to get our voice back? Because as I sit here today and as I reflect on this bill, what I'm seeing is the same legislation that was introduced, I think, in nineteen oh one. It was called the Land Mission Legislation. Someone's speaking for me. Everyone deserves their own voice. Every community deserves their own voice, and every child, every unborn child has their voice. In traditional law and customs, even our babies on their way have their voice, they are protected. Where I come from, you know, we have a, you know, a mythological side of a being like a bunyip. And I think this is the only way to end with this, is to tell you some stories. Where our women would go to birth, and I've been asked to, I can share this story, it's a women's story, but it goes to the beginning of time. So if I fumble a little bit, it's because I'm trying to translate something that an auntie has told me. Where this pond had this being like a bunyip that would come, you know, out of the water at night and walk the lands where the newborns were, because they all came to this pocket. If the other mob across the ranges, the Gamilaroy or the Wurajuri or the Duckinjan or anyone stepped foot in that area and rose threat to the babies, this thing would drag them back into the, into the pond, and there they would stay forever. You know, an archaeologist can't tell you that. What that archaeologist can tell you, though, is, "Oh, there's a lot of spearheads laying here, what happened?" You know, and if he looks a bit harder, he might find some fifty-millimetre musket shot from a Betty Brown from where the British turned up this month in eighteen thirty and slaughtered twenty-six of my people at Ravensworth. That's what archaeologists can prove today, is how my people were shot, hung and impaled. It can't tell me, or anyone here, what it means to me to look up at Bayami today and hear his story echo in my mind. From my father and his father, and what it means to me to be a descendant brought here by a Bayami. And I think I'm going to finish on that.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Um, so now the session goes to questions from members of the committee, if you're happy to take some questions on. Um, and just feel free to whoever you think will answer the questions best, if that's okay. Um, so we heard some evidence a little bit earlier about, which was very similar, I think, to what you were saying, Mr. Franks, about in terms of cultural authority or authority to speak to culture, um, that, that the native title system is presenting a gold standard. Um, am I right? Is, in terms of your view towards that as well?
Yes, um, yes, it is, and to qualify that, we, we, and I'm only going to speak on Wanera because I think that's all I'm authorised to speak on. The Plains Clans and the Wanarua people, we got together, um, and, uh, you know, formulated a process to test native title, even though it's a white man's law, was the only way we had to figure out who was who, because we had enough. Now, what had happened, when we'd lodged the original claim covering six and a half thousand square kilometres, it went through a registration process, we were required to call public meetings, advertise, have every man and their dog turn up. And everyone, we all then established, yes, we believe we're Wanarua. Um, we were then, we needed to then engage an anthropologist, we asked the federal court to appoint, give us a list of anthropologists, which we did. Um, we first initially appointed Frank McKeown, he was number one on the list, he ended up becoming ill and couldn't do it, we then engaged Dr Neil Draper. Uh, he was number two or number three. Now, why we had to do that was we had to convince a tribunal of experts, both archaeologists, anthropologists, ethnographical individuals, like, these are specialists. Um, not about stones and bones, but are we dealing with the right people? And we, that resulted in a positive outcome for the whole of country claim. Now, that, that level of getting registered is far beyond anything else that anyone else is expected to do. I mean, to get on heritage job now, you've just got to respond to an ad in a paper. To become a member of a lands council, you just need to, and I actually put it in my notes here, you just need to turn up at a general meeting and have a member know you or admit to knowing your family. And if they get the vote, they're in. And we've even seen right now, I think in the media, you've seen a lot of high-profile Aboriginal people being named as not being Aboriginal, because research is now coming out through anthropology and, and, um, so that's why I'm saying the National Native Title Tribunal, in my mind, uh, is a gold standard. Two reasons. The native title legislation here in Australia, you have a federal native title and you also have a New South Wales native title, everyone seems to forget about, and they mirror each other. Um, so today, right now, and look, don't underestimate this, we, how important that legislation is. We, we actually withdrew our claim because after, you know, several months of anthropological, you know, and everyone being involved, we opened the doors then through mediation, and we'd actually discovered that we had an issue with our authorisation with one of our lines. So the court, we had a meeting and the end result was we, by consent, withdrew the claim and then prepared to resubmit, but we obviously COVID kicked in. But, and just to qualify what happened, me and Robert, as the applicants, tried to sneak one past the goalkeeper to get it done again, and they picked up on that we didn't have a duly authorised authorisation. We didn't have a physical meeting, so it was rejected. That's how important it is. At that meeting, you were then appointed. It's not me, I wasn't saying I want to be appointed. I'm pretty shocked that I was because of how old I am, to be honest. But they put me and Rob together, Rob's in his eighties, you know, I'm in my late fifties, good mix, we even each other out. Um, and it's up to the people there, and it's those people who are asserting to be the traditional owners from that specific area that make that decision.
And so on that, um, and thank you, um, are you aware, and what do you say about, uh, uh, traditional custodians who may not, who may have been locked out of a native title process? And I, I realise, and I, sorry, I acknowledge and respect that you're saying you speak for your country, but I also know you've had a lot of contact across the whole state, so what about people, are there people that you're aware of that may have been locked out of that process or it hasn't worked as well?
Yes, I am. So what had happened with our claim, because there was some changes under the native title legislation, we were then fortunate enough to be allowed to set up a PBC, a prescribed body corporate, for the Wanera people. So that's, that's a standalone, uh, organisation that's registered under native title to protect the interest of Wanera people. But there's a trigger in there that if anyone else over time comes up to be Wanera or is proven, they automatically have a seat opened on the board. So that voice is automatically brought into it. We have no control over that, that's the constitution, we can't change it. Um, and, you know, I, it's a far better way, and look, we, just leading away from that chair, we then looked at the, um, under the Lands Rights Act, the traditional owners list, it's a nightmare. Um, you know, not only is there an attempt to buckle together traditional owners in one melting pot, there's no clear definition of which family comes from this creek line or that creek line or that range, so you're always going to get arguments. But we've even seen firsthand here, and I think I've read the submissions, you know, where a traditional owner, registered on the traditional owner list for the Ringai people, has effectively had their rights under the Lands Rights Act system revoked. They're, they're standing as a traditional owner under the Lands Rights Act as the management of that's been negotiated and given to a local lands council where this traditional owner who's identified can't even gather wood on his own land by the local lands council. So I just don't understand the, you know, the sense of this bill.
So can I just ask, so if, so the, the bill is proposing a sort of overarching, or let's not say overarching, a state body, a body that would then, if it, if say that body was appropriately constituted and was a body that had the right representatives of it to be able to then find or work with and empower or the already empowered local cultural authority to then make decisions about whether it's cultural heritage nomination, protection, intangible, tangible, and of course, uh, what we, what happens, that is, impact harm. If that overarching body was a body properly constituted to make contact and be the conduit to empower the local decision-maker with cultural authority, do you see that that is a system that could work in terms of cultural heritage?
Yeah. Chair, could I just ask, if, I'm going to answer that, but also if Kaz could, because, you know, she's got her mob to speak for, and I'm just, I don't, so I'm just going to briefly say that, um, the lands right system can never work with a traditional owner. Uh, geared up to be a developer of the Lands Rights Act. Simple and short, um. You can't, what you're going to be stuck with is, is what we're seeing today, is a minority vote system playing out in community where people have, where I come from, as I said, a hundred and ten registered Aboriginal parties, they're there because we have thirty-six mining operations and they know that they can gang up on us. I mean, look at what's happening now, play out in the Hunter Valley with Glencore and everything, you know, we've got substantive evidence to show a massacre site unquestionably identified, yet we've got a mining company saying, "Well, no, they're only one of, one of, you know, a hundred people." That, you know, and that's what's going to happen, I think, so I think the right way is the, lands council does have a place for a voice, but not here. Sorry, and I'm going to finish, let Kaz have a speak, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Ms Brown, did you want to make comment on any, any of the questions I've been putting to Mr. Franks about the Act and how we can manage, you know, the structure?
I don't know, but it's very complex. Look, I'm, I am a local indigenous person. My family, in the valley, for, for twenty-five years. Um, I'm not a native title player at all. There's a gillo up here over the land. Um, the problem is that is, it's, it's not open to community, so I can't go to a meeting. I have to be invited. There's no, um, there's no communication with, with community, so we don't know what they're doing. So if these bodies take about, they would, they would sit there and they would be speaking to me. But I, you know, at the end of the day, I don't know what they're doing.
When you say "they", um, who are you referring to specifically on?
The local board, the local council, some of the council that they call themselves.
Right.
Yeah, so they're there, they are there to attract these people. They have no, no communication with me.
But is, are you, is that an ilure set up through a native title process or is that separate?
No, it's set up through native title.
Okay, so this is perhaps, so are we suggesting here that, excuse my ignorance, but are we perhaps now hearing of a system where the native title system hasn't performed as a gold standard in this particular instance?
No, I have it here.
Yeah, I see.
Are you finished, Arnie?
Yeah.
Okay. So look, just in reference, I'm actually very familiar with that ilioa, it's out of Fezett's Nest.
Yep.
But, so native title, you don't need a native title application or a claim to negotiate an ilioa. We've seen that very clearly with the pistol club four years ago, just outside of Sydney, where a group of people had got together with the pistol club, negotiated an ilioa. We've seen then rise of the National Native Title Tribunal, I think, and the registrar of Aboriginal lands rights lodged objections to the tribunal, saying this ilioa should not be registered, it hasn't met the native title standard. And they were basically silenced, because under an ilioa, an Indigenous land use agreement, you just need both sides agreeing to it. They don't care who's who. Now, we've, we have an ancillary agreement in D31, that's now expired because of claims withdrawal over a mining company in Hunter Valley. But I think there's been changes now to the New South Wales lands legislation, where if a native title claim is now registered, New South Wales lands have to negotiate Indigenous land use agreements with those registered native title applicants. Now, if that happens, this debate we're having today here goes away, because, and that's what I think this bill doesn't understand, is that if native title is determined, which is highly unlikely in New South Wales because of the disruption from First Fleet admissions and that, everything, what we're doing today is, all it's done is separate people. You know, like I could, and, you know, I just, I'm just lost with it, because I'm born and bred in Singleton, and I turned up a week before the AGM at Wanneroo Lands Council. And I'm just going to give you an insight of what happens in a community. And I sat down at the post office that night, and as everyone walked by, say, how are you going, my name's Scott, Frank, would you like a cigarette? Started talking to them. You know, I had the majority vote ever cast at a lands council for me to be appointed as the chairperson, to test the system. And then I've never seen those people again. And even, and I've seen on, I think, submission eight, I read that, and, you know, I've looked at the stats, I then cross-referenced them, and it's pretty obvious, the lands councils have a problem with justifying their quorums. What is going on? You know, why are so many people, members, look, I'm a member of, non-voting member of Wanneroo Lands Council, I moved to Sydney, became a member of Tharawa Local Aboriginal Lands Council, I then moved to Miranda, I made an application to Laperoo's Local Aboriginal Lands Council, my membership is still held in abeyance, seven years, because I took on the lands council over a first contact site that should never have been destroyed. That's, that's the problem with the lands council. Auntie, I don't know if I mentioned her name, but one of the aunties at Lapa, the oldest great-great-grandfather is the guy who gave Cook the boomerang, has had her membership cancelled because she speaks her mind. She is an elder, a physical elder, her country, and here she is told she cannot speak in a building that's run by the lands council. What a joke. Sorry.
No, don't be sorry. So I just want to ask you, particularly because you've raised, your country has been so impacted by such state significant development, one thing this bill seeks to do, sorry, two things this bill seeks to do that has caused some controversy and some submissions, is that it includes that state significant development and state significant infrastructure would be subject to this bill and includes what is often referred to as a right of veto. Is that something that you see as being a positive aspect of cultural heritage, potential cultural heritage laws stepping forward?
Look, with the utmost respect to the Honourable Fred Niall, he's not a blackfella. My culture doesn't have a price on it, and I've seen firsthand now the systematic destruction of 97% of my people's country. I've got one birthing site left in our country, we have eight grinding group pads, the Boga Bora ceremonial sites been impacted, the only Bora sites we have left, you can only find by satellite imagery, because the land's been so scarred. We have one of the most well-recorded massacre sites in New South Wales, recorded by the hands of the British themselves, gloating on how they slaughtered our women and children. And at that same meeting, when I'm trying to voice that as a native, at that time-registered native title claimant for the Plains Clans and the Wanneroo people, I've got a non-Aboriginal CEO at the Wanneroo Lands Council, standing up, telling everyone, I do not know what I'm talking about, he knows more culture than me. This bill is poorly conceived, it's not from the mind of an Aboriginal person, let alone a First Nations person, it's reminiscent of the inland mission legislation, where, with the utmost respect to the senator, you know, his cultural beliefs in his creator, Jesus, God, or whatever he wants to call it, he needs to keep it in his wheelhouse. If he wants to learn about my culture, I'm happy to take the Honourable Fred Niall up to the Hunter Valley, he can have a look at my army, keep his holy water to himself, but he can have a look at my army, and then I'll take him up and show him the god that, I don't even know what to call them, the god that's been supported in my country, called the dollar, you know, and it's the dollar from the mines. You know, they're all got the same logo, it doesn't matter if it's Glencore, Rio, Tinto, Yang Cole, whoever, it's all got one thing in common, the mighty dollar, that's their god. The Honourable Fred, and I was a Christian a long time ago, when I was younger, no, before I went to the army, and one thing that I learnt being a Christian was, was forgive those if they seek your forgiveness. To date, nobody's asked for my people if they can be forgiven or if we want forgiveness, we're denied that, we're not even heard. The mission had a system where our voice, our language, our dance, our culture, and I heard that talk here today was taken, we weren't allowed to do it on the mission. I'm in a very unique position, because my ancestors were brought over here not to pacify the First Nation people, but to take them, the European side, and it was only thankfully that my, and this is how close it is, my grandfather, Charles Henry Frank's wife was Sarah Smith, she was an Aboriginal woman from Scrumloe Bowman's Creek, he was up there with his father, and he wasn't up there to take her a cup of tea, he was up there to leave lead behind, that's what was going on. They somehow miraculously fell in love, they got married, and that's our family today. The properties where our people were massacred were owned by Dr James Bowman, the surgeon from the First Fleet, and the property next to him was Lieutenant Lethbridge, an officer from the First Fleet. My ancestors were there, because they were on the ships with them when they come here in the First Fleet. My grandmother, great-grandmother, Matilda, was given to her British husband by Lieutenant Lethbridge, because he made her pregnant, and the local mob booted her. Now, I went down a pathway with my family where we had, forgive the expression, but we were going to say, and I'm going to say it, half-caste, where my European side from Muscle Brook, where we had land grants, shunned my mixed-blood heritage, and we moved to Mount Olive. We were bought and given property grants across the road from the Sinclair Mission. Oh, sorry. So I don't, I don't understand how, I think, you know, the bill has only heard one voice here, and it's a developer's voice, that's what I think. And I think, I mean, the question really is back to him, what would happen if the same committee was given a position to make authoritative decision over the development or redevelopment of the Opera House? How would he like that? Sorry, and I'm going to drop to, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, Ms Brown, do you see that, so the bill in its current form does propose what is often referred to as the right of veto for those with cultural authority in relation to state significant development, state significant infrastructure, and other forms of development? Is that something that you would see as a progressive step for cultural heritage laws into the future?
I, I'm a rat from Oregon here in the project. Now, we expect to lose over 12,000 sites, basically. If this bill's in place, Oregon would already go, would already have been half, would have lost everything, because this doesn't give community a voice, and that's the problem. You need to be talking to community, not any councils, not organisations, not people who are trying to speak for the whole community, because they don't. And that's, I just think the whole thing is worth the time. I mean, you've got patriations going back to these, these counties, these bodies, I mean, why aren't they going back to family? You know, I've got family in, unfortunately, in the museum in Canberra. If this bill was in place, they could come back and be buried under the council, sort of, you know, the paper side, it's not true, they should come back to family, should be coming back to community. And this plan is agreed with anything for the bill, other than the, other than, other than the Indian. There's no declaration of rights for this people, but there are people.
And what about the notion that it's seeking to acknowledge, protect intangible as well as tangible heritage? Is that something positive, or?
Well, it's obvious, but I don't know how. My first bill, and I don't know what it says, something about not being able to, intangible, I can't remember what it was, but basically, I could have read a book and got that information out of the book, and then went and started with, you know, some of the law, but it doesn't protect our, it doesn't protect our intellectual property and our intangible property.
I mean, I might just ask a question, you know, Ms Chick in her, I'm opening her mouth, and I think there has been a sense that the concepts of, forget any of the detail of this bill, the concept of standalone legislation to protect Aboriginal heritage is a good concept.
Without a doubt.
And so, obviously, you know, you've been really clear about just the sort of top-to-bottom problems with this proposition, and look, you know, we're all white people in the legislative council, you know, we're stuck in that situation where, you know, we want to, in a way, do the right thing, you know, make law in our framework that protects that, but we're always going to be limited by those things. So if we just started again, you know, with all of the sort of bills that have been put forward, the reference groups and the, you know, meetings that have happened, how can we fix this? How can we, as white people in the legislative council, try and come up with a system that suits our Western legal framework, that delivers on the aspirations that you've described, you know, for your people? And I guess I might ask in a way about a consultation process, but I don't like that word, and I'm sure you're sick of it too, because, you know, it's just talk, talk, talk. I mean, so I don't, like, I know that, like, consultation in a way is the answer, but I want to go deeper than that, I want to look more, what does that actually look like? What are you looking for in that?
You know, when I sit in front of my mob, there's a few things I always hear, and it is food on the table, education and acceptance. And in a perfect world, now unfortunately, when this land was taken, in my mind, there was never this foresight to understand different mobs, different laws and different customs. So in a perfect world, you know, I would, I agree, because then, you know, these organisations that are propped up under the Aboriginal Associations Act 1976, I have one, it's all my family, it's three or four in my mob's country that don't represent the Wanneroo people, are actually not Wanneroo, you know? But they've, you know, I've seen organisations with millions of dollars, it's all on the public record, you know, $4.2 million in one organisation in the Hunter Valley, yet one of her aunties passed and gone now, was always been pulled up her stairs backwards on a wheelchair because she couldn't afford to get a ramp, and she was a founding member of the organisation, we had to go to the mines with hat in hand to get her buried. Community-run organisations are not the answer with this, nor is Laux or anything like that. We've had this discussion for 10 years, draw a line in the sand, come with us on country and understand culture and what it means to those people, not the flash ones like me turning up here in a suit and talking about what's best for my people, because I'm here speaking on behalf of my people, but I'm always going to be compromised about what I want. I just, it's a hard one, it really is for you guys, but you know what, you guys have responsibility to deliver this, you're elected, not me, not by your government or your laws, I was elected by my cultural laws, and this wouldn't be happening here. Back in the day, you come into our country, I don't think you'd be going home, you know, back in the day, and there's a lot of archival history that proves that through anthropology, but not through archaeology, so, sorry, but Kaz?
I just want to say that you think that you wanted a system that fit in with your white law system. Well, that's never going to happen, you're going to have to change your laws to suit us, it's time that you started noticing to us and change things to suit the way we live in our culture and our community.
And I guess, you know, how could, what's the first step in doing that? And how?
Support the community, let's communicate with the community, and sit down and talk to the people who live here, not the organisations and the local councils, maybe talk to the people who live here on the ground and apply to me every day to send these comments.
I can make a recommendation, there's over $7 billion currently sitting in this state's coffers out of my mob's country for rehab. Right, so how about you go and open those purse strings up, pull a million out of that, two million, pull a billion out of it? Set up an organisation that clearly can look at the anthropology and ethnographical research and do it properly. My country has bled for this state, Wanneroo country, the majority of the royalties that we're all seeing here today wrapped around us come from Wanneroo country. Why can't I, as a representative of Wanneroo, insist that this government use those monies now for the benefit of all First Nations people in New South Wales and put this argument to bed once and for all, but in the interim, stop the destruction? Stop the destruction, because we, as First Nations people, I said something very profound the other day that I still haven't got over, and I'm going to tell you what it is, it was, as I cry, because I had a sulk out in front of you at a protest, so you were there?
I was.
Sorry, Chair, I had to stop and pull myself together, because what was ringing in my ear was, as I started to bubble a little bit, was that every tear that falls from me paves the way of reconciliation. And it's a profound statement, but it's a true statement, because our people have been crying since that tall ship turned up here. If you want to stop us crying, you know, give us a hand up, not a handout, take some of the royalties from Wanneroo country, and mate, I will call a meeting with our mob and have that supported to the hilt. Billions of dollars sitting there right now in rehabilitation, take a billion, get this done right for the sake of our people, not only in New South Wales, but nationally. A billion dollars can't do it, we always, a lot of us need to go home, because that's what it comes down to. And I'll tell you why, just recently, the registrar developed a, is doing it all over the place, these traditional owner lists, the one that's been developed for the New England Hunter River, it's a, I don't even know what it's about. I had a very esteemed anthropologist peer review it, and he said, Scott, what's this junk you send to me? Done by an historian. We've got people, different mobs together, we've got no law and custom, it's spread all over the place, you know, I've got, it's a bit of a funny thing in my country, when we have community meetings with different mobs, I always stir up the Gamilaroid people by saying, you're back here again because our women are better looking and you want to steal them, you know? And this is what this, the traditional owners list for the registrar is now showing in the Hunter Valley, it's this hog off of melting pot of rubbish. So take the billion, please, open the coffers, please, if you can, it's sitting there doing nothing, the mines aren't revalutating the land up there, one of them's making out there, but they're nice pitches framed properly, so take the money, let's do it properly for once and work together. And I'm sure if you can't get the right people with the right skills to give you that answer, we're all doomed, so is our culture.
Thank you. So I think we're, that takes us exactly to our time, so unless there is anything further now, we will close this session, and I don't think there was any questions taken on notice, so I think that, yeah, that concludes this, and I thank you so much for your very, very valuable evidence, both Ms Brown, Mr Franks and Ms Chick, thank you.
Thank you.
I now welcome our next witness, we have Mr Roy RC, who is joining us via Webex. Mr RC, if you could please state your name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
Mr R C, if you could please state your name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
Yes, sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the opportunity to be a witness and give evidence today. I think this would really be very important, um, discussion or, you know, parliamentary inquiry. So I was just going to find the, um, find the, I hope if someone could leave it to that. It's in my emails, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Just recite it. Good afternoon.
When I can find it. Sorry, I apologize. I'm getting it.
So it's the O.
Have you got it there, Mr R C? Sorry, because if you have, you're much quicker than, more efficient than I am.
Yeah, I, I've got it here, so.
Thank you.
Just before I do that, I'm off my country. I don't think that when someone else is trying to tell me I've acknowledged the physical capability of a country that I'm born in from, I am always expected to all elders, both parts of present, and everything as important, which we mustn't forget, our values and traditions will be forced because without their inspiration, aspiration and determination, I certainly wouldn't have the opportunity that I've been afforded today. So Madam Chair, I'll take the O. I swear that the evidence now about, evidence now about to be given by many shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help God.
Thank you. And Mr R C, would you like to start with an open, a brief opening statement?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Again, I just wanted to thank the committee for this important piece of work. The evidence that I'll be providing today or my witnesses will be based on lived experience rather than a framework of academic, uh, uh, further academic lens. And I think that's really, really important. Uh, I just want to quickly share with the committee a, a quick story. It was this young Aboriginal boy who grew up on a reservation, uh, in, in the, uh, in the early 60s. Um, his mom was a single parent. She had eight children. Uh, they lived in absolute poverty, dependency and poverty, absolute poverty. And they lived under, you know, a policies that were, were basically segregating, uh, her family from the, the general public. And he had five sisters and two brothers. He went to a little school on the reservation. Uh, and he, uh, when he was, he, he didn't know who his father was. Never met his father until he was well in his twenties. He went from that school to a high school where, um, there was all Aboriginal kids at the school. And then he went into high school in, in year seven and now all of a sudden there was 400 non-Arrogant people. So this kid was very daunting for this kid. And, uh, this young Aboriginal boy had dreams, aspirations and goals. Despite coming from, uh, 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 his background of absolute poverty, poverty, dependency. He, uh, thank God he had a, he had a guide in his life, which would be his uncle. And, uh, his uncle played a role in his life. Uh, so he, he went into high school and he started to learn about, um, history in 1788. And he, he started to learn about. And, uh, this young Aboriginal boy was confused. Because he was getting on listening to his uncle talking about, uh, uh, cultural heritage and a history that was 60,000 years old. And so it created a lot of conflict for this young Aboriginal boy. I think in year, year nine or third form, he bucked against the system because he spoke out. And he, he told him the truth about the real history of what happened in his country. He learned from his, uh, that it's handed down, you know, through generations after generations. And so he left school and he got himself into a lot of trouble. He, uh, he mixed with the wrong crowd. He ended up within, um, you know, in, in, in custody, in many cases, got in trouble with the law, um, experimented with drugs, alcohol, gambling. And, um, two months after he turned out and he woke up in prison. And he was looking at all custodians and his, his uncle interviewed him and he said, you know, whilst, uh, it's, you are, it's all right to be angry, but you've got to turn that anger into hatred. And so this young Aboriginal boy had various aspirations and goals, listened to his uncle. And then when he got himself educated, um, through the University of Western Sydney as a mature grade student. Uh, uh, he then, uh, went on to represent his people on the, um, New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council. Uh, he got elected to the council. He served as the deputy chair of the council, eventually the chairperson of the council. And spoke in international forums in Geneva and New York on five separate occasions on behalf of all Aboriginal people in this country. And Madam Chair, that young Aboriginal boy has given evidence. And that's my story.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's a very powerful story. Um, so Mr R C, are you happy to take some questions from members of the committee about the bill and the possibility of what, uh, future cultural heritage laws look like?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So at the moment, I'll just start, um, with a couple of questions. At the moment, the bill is recommending, uh, the bill provides a, um, a, a structure of a Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council, which is constituted by various, uh, members from organisations, uh, some of the peak organisations, so the, the Aboriginal Land Councils, uh, and, um, native title holders. And then that organi, that body, uh, works and, um, appoints Aboriginal Land Council services that assist in terms of, um, the protection, but also where cultural heritage is proposed to be impacted, possibly negative, negatively. Do you, what's your view in terms of a system that is structured in that way?
Ah, look, I commend the bill. But actually, in its infancy, I, I was approached to, to be, uh, you know, the champion of the bill. And I said, I'll do that on, on one case, uh, uh, on, on one condition, also actually two conditions. That, uh, you know, the Fred Mile, you know, who's the, you know, father of land rights, you know, which is very strong supporter of the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Rights Legislation. Which, mind you, at the time, we had prominent people protesting against the legislation. That them people were the ones who marched on the streets. And then they turned around and become fierce advocates of what is now known as the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Rights Legislation, which is, mind you, is the most powerful legislation internationally. Um, and the, the most powerful legislation in this country. Because what it basically does, it gives back, uh, it returns free, uh, sorry, uh, broken ground land back to land councils and comes from the Aboriginal free old title. So the structure is, I, I reckon the structure is fit for purpose. It engages at all levels. It gives people an opportunity to be represented on the, uh, either at the council level, at the top, or at the regional level where that information in terms of cultural heritage will be fed up. And, and that, the, the structure is already there. And the fact that the bill has, uh, incorporated or encompassed all the different, um, uh, structures and, and groups, I think can, can only improve the protection of cultural heritage. Madam Chair, it's an indictment that we, the biggest population Aboriginal people in this country, in the state of New South Wales, and we don't have the protection of cultural heritage, you know, through legislation. That, we're in 2020, so we're having this conversation at the, the national level from voice. We're not even recognised in our founding documents, prostitution. So it's well overdue. I think, I think it's, it's, uh, it's fit for purpose. And, and more importantly, if it's not, well then, you get to, you get to work that out similar to the New South Wales Aboriginal legislation. You get a review every five years. And you can put this amount of amendments in. So, uh, and I'll, I'll just close by saying, Madam Chair, that, you know, this, this division of native title and land rights, you know, you've got people in this country or in this state that want to use native title because they've got an axe to grind against the land rights legislation. And land rights legislation has 25,000 members. It's the largest member based organisation in the country. And by the way, if you're an Aboriginal person in this state, very traditional land, end of story. Doesn't matter where that place is, it's part of the head. If you're an Aboriginal person in the state of New South Wales, you own a traditional land. And that's what I love about this bill.
Thank you. And so, um, one of, some of the evidence we've had today, uh, perhaps goes to a more specis, a more specific uh, point to the operation of this proposed bill. And that is, uh, and it goes to the point of cultural authority or authority to speak for cultural heritage. Um, and, and that has been presented as it, it can still be quite a complex, there's quite a complex protocol that can be involved in, uh, really, uh, going to the appropriate source for cultural authority. Do you see a way that this bill can grapple with that and can this?
Absolutely. Great question. And our, our, our people know this people country, Madam Chair. You know, uh, we've, we've got elders that, that are passing away that haven't seen, uh, legislation to protect, you know, cultural heritage. And our elders know this people country. You know, I, I, I grew up on a reservation, a reserve, you know, it was, uh, we couldn't, we, we, we'd walk up the street and then people would walk across the other side of the road because they say, oh, he comes, he comes these blackfowls, you know? And now we've got some people that are coming out saying that the, it, it seems like it's, um, it's in fashion now to be Aboriginal. It wasn't back then, you know? We could do, we could do Aboriginal people work. So, um, I, I think, uh, there, there is a process. I think we've got, we've got prescribed body corporates in New South Wales. And I think there should be about eight or nine, they've been through the native title process. You know, they've proved their registration, they're connected ongoing, you know, to the country. That's your first point. Um, local Aboriginal land councils, uh, I believe is, uh, persistent and a structure that really adds cultural authority. Because they're the ones that have the, have the protection. Because we've got to remember, the land rights legislation come in 1983 and Marvo's legislation around 85 didn't come into a running on the fall. So for that period, for that period of time, we've worked out a system where, uh, if you're an Aboriginal person and you wanted to have a say over what happens in your, in your community. Or, you know, if you don't join the land council, obviously there was, there was a structure and system that, that incorporates membership. And, uh, once you become a member, then you get a say over what happens in your country. Now that's a fair process. Uh, so I, I think, I think, again, the bill, I think, uh, it's pretty much posed to being people purpose. Well, actually, it is people purpose and you're not a person that, you know, Blackfowls will disagree. And I'm going to explain to them that it's a fair, like, it's a brave one. And, uh, and it's okay. You know, we don't like that, don't agree with each other. Years ago, you don't agree with Lincoln Pride sometimes and Lincoln don't agree with either.
Not ever, I don't think.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think, Mr Barrett, have you, yeah?
You know, I just, I, I should have written down exactly what you said. I mean, you said something like the, the land council is the voice for Aboriginal people or something like similar to that?
Cultural authority.
Ultra-musical.
Yeah, cultural authority, yeah. You know, we've had other evidence today that not only slightly disagrees with that, but entirely contradicts that. You know, people saying the exact opposite to that. How do we find a middle ground on that?
Well, you let, you introduce the bill, you pass it. And then we let us, let us, let us have the debate and discussion like we have been having. You know, with, with, 1983, we had, we had the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Rights Legislation. Now, you look, how fair is it when if you want to be a member of the land council, you have to be an ALE, get accepted as an Aboriginal person in the community and become a member? And that is, that is the most open, free spirit, uh, piece of legislation that I've seen so far. Others are closed shop. And I, I would go as far as saying that these other people that have got an axe to grind to protect them, they're little interns. And the money that they get when it comes to native title.
You know, I'm thinking, I guess we've heard, again, we've heard two different people say the exact opposite. And it's about that, um, if you're, rent the bloodlines as where you live sort of thing. Now, if you have bloodlines of a certain country, you, you sort of dismissed that a bit before and you said, everyone's got to have a say on, on whatever country they're on.
Yeah, look, I, I don't know where you're going with this, but it's.
No, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm not, I've got no agenda with this. I'm just going to find some ground somewhere.
Yeah, well, let us all get it, so. You just vote on it, either vote for it or vote against it. Then let us have a say.
Yeah, that's, um, so thanks, um, Mr R C. What about the fact that the bill at the moment, um, how did, at the moment, the bill is presenting what is often referred to? Um, and I think I realise it's more often referred to from the development industry as a right to veto. Uh, so basically a right to, I, I, I think we should probably stop using that term because really what we're talking about is the right to protect cultural heritage becomes higher in a particular instance than the right to destroy cultural heritage. Um, is that something, how, what do you think about that and the way the bill proposes that at the moment?
Well, look, our, our community is almost stopped. And we need to, when I was the Chair of the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council, with our, we had occasions where acquiring authorities, either wanted to build a road or wanted to do some type of, uh, state significant, uh, infrastructure project or development. And, uh, I don't know where this misnomer's coming from, that blackfowls want to hold, um, uh, development. We don't. We want to empower our people to make decisions and work with industry so that we protect the cultural heritage. And we get, we want to create jobs and, and employment opportunities for, for future generations. And we cannot, we can't do that by ourselves, we have to work with industry. It's a now, it's, it's an opportunity now to, uh, to work together, uh, and, and start to heal this state. Because if you heal country, heal people together with heal the state. And that's what, that's what I reckon the bill can do. The bill can start a, a healing process. Now, uh, us against them mentality, I think it has to stop, but we need to have protection for cultural heritage.
Yeah, of course. Yes.
Hi, Mr R C. Hi, it's Shane Mallard here. Thank you for your evidence today. I just want to talk about, um, protecting, uh, cultural heritage, cultural heritage. I've asked this question before. You know, you have a sort of, this is a preamble before we get to the discussion. Sliding scale in my thinking, I might be wrong, of heritage. You have like, say you have stone flints, the country, the whole. And then, you know, different components of heritage you heard today, you know, obviously sacred places where men and women's business occur. I think it's very important to preserve that, trees, historical trees, so on, through to a river landscape or a delta or island or shore or mountain range. What level, I, I don't feel we can apply absolute cultural heritage protection across that entire spectrum.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Not the same, not the same heritage protection against, across the whole spectrum. Needs to be, I'm thinking, needs to be graded. What's your feedback on that?
Yeah, no, no, look, I totally agree. I, I think, and again, we have a system and a structure that's been doing it since 1983. And that's the land. Yeah? And they deal with it on a daily basis. And then you have, obviously you've got prescribed body corporates, you've got native title groups. They also, you know, have a, have a role, I guess, in, in the protection of, um, cultural heritage through that native title process. I'm not disputing that, you know? I, uh, uh, that, we, we have to somehow try to, uh, work together to, to ensure that, that protection is there. And it's conversational. The, the, the bill, I think, I see the bill as, as a, as a, as a means and a way to bring people together to start a little conversation about, well, okay, what, what is, what is it is of maximum significance? The Timber Creek decision, for example. Um, I've done some work with the daily channels at the moment. And that we can't find anywhere, there's research being done right around the world where they can't put a price on spiritual attachment. So, you know, we have to talk about spiritual attachment as well. So I, I think it's, it's a great question. However, uh, if this bill, uh, in the parliament, let's get it debated. And then, you know, we can answer some of these questions along the way. it debated, and then, you know, we can answer some of these questions along the way. I consider, I consider that, Madam Chair, that the bill is going to be killed before it even gets chairs. And we've a consecutive government that have failed, failed, failed our people to protect cultural heritage. We've got 36,000 claims undetermined, not even looked at in the system. It's going to take 95 years to resolve, you know, like, seriously.
Yeah, no, look, your point in terms of the timing of this bill is really, really relevant and important, and we noted at the, earlier on in the proceedings, that, you know, everything that happens here on this bill and all of the evidence will, you know, will be on the table for the long term, whether this bill gets successfully through this term of Parliament in such the short period of time that we've had since the Reverend Fred Niall introduced it, so late in the term, and whether, how this will carry forward into the new Parliament possibly. So, you know, I think it is important that we all acknowledge that none of this is, this is very important, and this evidence is coming forward. Unfortunately, we can't change the term of Parliament, and the time is the time. So we have, we really acknowledge that, and the committee understands that that is, you know, that is seen as problematic in some ways. In terms of the, in terms of the, if I could just ask you, just again, a bit on the detail in terms of the constitution of the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage Council, at the moment, as I said earlier, at the moment, it is proposed to have members of the Aboriginal Land Council, or a holder of native title rights, and Aboriginal owners. Do you think that the council could be open to other representative groups, or bodies, or persons? Or do you think the way it was constituted is, would have to stay like that for any particular reason?
Yeah, no, look, I support its structure now, and if you have to make changes to it later on, then, you know, you could possibly do that, surely, you know, through an amendment process or some sort of regulations, you could, you know, if you have to change the composition to make it more inclusive, or whatever the case may be, then I think you cross that bridge when you come to it. However, again, it's a, it's a good starting point, I think it's a really good starting point, and the guys, you know, Fred's office have done a great job in getting it to the point.
Thank you.
I've got one question. Thank you. Hello, Mr Assey, it's Penny Sharp here. Thank you for coming today. How are you? How are you?
Very well.
That's good. Look, I just wondered, we've had a lot of evidence today, I know the government, and you rightly point out that governments of both types have committed to standalone legislation for a long time and have been, or have failed to deliver it in any meaningful way. My question is that, my understanding is that there was some pretty extensive work done, and I'm sure you were probably involved with it in around 2018. And I'm just trying to work out what, I suppose in terms of learning about from that to now, why did the wheels fall off the 2018 process?
Yeah, look, from memory, Penny, I think we're, we might have a change of ministers, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah.
That could have been a contributing factor, and the amendment was lost, and we were sat, I thought we were...
Yes, that's why I'm asking, because I know lots of, you know, in terms, I mean, today, there's not been a lot of consensus around this bill, but I had understood that in the lead up to 2018, that there actually, there seemed to have been more consensus, but obviously from opposition, I wasn't close to it, I'm not sure, so, you're really just seeking your, your insight, given that I'm sure you were much closer to it.
Yeah, and I was the councillor, we were all step, you know, I was the chair of the time, and the council were very, 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 very happy with the bill in its own form back then. And then, the wheels fell, like you said, you're quoting your terms, and it was really, really disappointing, it was so disappointing, because, again, Aboriginal people had to invest in this process, and then the carpet's pulled from under us again, when, when the balance of power is with the parliamentary MPs, and not with Aboriginal people themselves. And it's just, that imbalance, it's really, it's really frustrating, because, again, we have an election in March, we don't know which, we don't know what we're going to end up with, you know, in terms of government, you know, we're going to change the government, we're going to change the ministers, and then we've got to start up a start all again, it's so frustrating, Penny, you know, and I'm preaching that it converted, but, yeah, look, I've got faith in this system, you've delivered us, you've, every single one around the table delivered us a name, you know, and for that to be delivered to our people, I think is the greatest, it's the greatest thing to, one of the greatest things to happen for our people in the country, you know, in New South Wales that led the way. So I think the, I think the wisdom and the leadership's there, it's trying to gather time and hopefully, you know, we get, we get a good government after March that can, you know, make this, make this a priority in the first hundred days, like Albert Easie was giving all his paper for March, you know, and it shows some leadership, it's not about people, this is about politics, it's about doing the right thing, you know, do the right thing, please.
Thanks, Mr Assey, it's Rose Jackson here. I mean, I think, you know, one of the challenges that we face, obviously, is, you know, there has been other evidence today from other organisations, you know, whose view about the right thing is either don't proceed with this legislation, or, you know, only proceed with substantial amendment, and so, sort of, trying to chart a path forward in that circumstance. I mean, I feel as though from the evidence that you've given so far, your view would be, you know, if there are issues, they can be worked out later, but I suppose, just, you know, to respond more specifically to those people who've given us evidence today, who've sort of said, you know, that they would really insist on seeing either substantial amendments to this bill before it was passed, or, or sort of not, not this bill passing its current form at all?
Yeah, I respect that. Like I said earlier, given my opinion that, you know, we, all blackfowls don't agree there, so, I'm just, I was given the opportunity to give my evidence, as a witness, and I've given my evidence, and that's basically, all I can do is sort of under oath is tell you basically how I feel in relation to where is the heading. You know, I come from experience, lived experience, you know, I can pugilise, I can pugilise, you know, my poor mother, she struggled, and we've got many, many families and communities that are out there, but not, by no means am I a victim. I'm not a victim, I'm a survivor, and I fight, and I continue to fight for what is, what is the right thing. And it depends on who you ask, I guess, whether or not you want the right answer, and if you don't, then just, you get it from somewhere else, so, I take that on board, I take that on board. You, you as politicians or parliamentarians, or people that have to work in this space, you know, have to be, see to be doing the right thing, and whilst it might be the right thing for you, it could be the wrong thing for me. What could be the right thing for you could be the wrong thing for me. So, yeah, look, I've worked in this space for a long, long time, and the wheel turns away, so I guess, I'm just providing my evidence.
And just in terms of, say, you know, the bill was passed, a sense of sort of local views about, for example, you know, what site of cultural significance, if there were differing local views about how significant a site was, or whether it was significant at all, I suppose, you know, what, what's your reflection on the framework within the bill for resolving those disputes at the local level? You know, do you think, do you think that's robust enough, or, yeah, do you think that...
Yeah, no, it's a good question, it really is. Look, again, we have the elders, we have the elders in the community, and the majority of the time, the collective wisdom of our people don't get it wrong. And, you know, when you go to promenade that elderly, that community that speaks and has authority, then, you know, we wouldn't disrespect that, I know I wouldn't. Others may if they've got, if they've got hidden agenda, but I know I wouldn't.
Thank you. I think we've, I think we've asked all our questions, so, Mr Assey, unless you've got anything, is there anything further you'd like to finish on?
Madam Chair, I think you've made a point that this one, the bill one, you could give the Parliament, you have to use that correct?
No, we, it's, I think that we, it's, the timeframe is very, very tight. We will, we will absolutely produce our report, and that will be tabled in Parliament, and then it will really be a matter of the government, of the business of the day, and whether this will actually get tabled, the bill will be tabled again, and whether it will be debated further, but it is very, very tight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to go, I'd like to go on the record, Madam Chair, to thank the honourable Reverend Fred Niall for his leadership and his support for Aboriginal people in the state for many, many years. I just wish, very few listeners, I just wish there were many people, many more people in Parliament like you, but of course, with your leadership, mate, you know, we've come along the way, so, thank you very much, and I hope that others will take it, leave it in your form.
Thank you, Mr Assey, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Yeah, he's fine. Okay. Thank you. I now welcome our next witness, and could you please state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Yes, thank you. My name's Josh Palace, and I am the President of the New South Wales Council for Civil Liberties. I take an affirmation, so I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr Palace, and would you like to commence with a short introductory statement?
Ah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So let me start by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land on which we are gathered today, the Gadigal of the Yarra Nation. I pay my respects to their elders past and present, and extend those respects to any First Nations people present today. The New South Wales Council for Civil Liberties acknowledges that this land always was and always will be Aboriginal land. Thank you, Chair, and to the committee for inviting us to give evidence before the committee today. The New South Wales Council for Civil Liberties supports the principles behind the Aboriginal Cultural Heritage, Culture is Identity bill, namely the need for standalone cultural heritage protections, and the need to ensure that such protections are subject to First Nations control. In our view, the bill goes a long way towards implementing Australia's obligations under the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, UNDRIP, and to making good on government promises to increase self-determination for First Nations people. Beyond expressing our general support for the principles underlying this bill, the Council for Civil Liberties has not and will not offer views on the substance of the bill, including on the composition and operation of the council, the way in which local Aboriginal cultural heritage services will operate, and the way in which Aboriginal cultural heritage is protected. We believe that First Nations people should not only have control over their own cultural heritage, but should be privileged in discussions over the design of these laws, so that they work in their interests and not the interests of others, including well-meaning white folk. As an organisation which supports the human rights and civil liberties of all people who live in Australia, we stand beside and behind First Nations people in their quest for justice. In this regard, we note that the New South Wales Minerals Council has made a submission. We absolutely acknowledge their right to make a submission, but urge members of this committee to privilege the voices of First Nations over the interests of the Minerals Council. Self-determination of First Nations people must be central to the process of developing this much-needed reform. From the perspective of advancing reform which implements UNDRIP and improving First Nations self-determination over Aboriginal cultural heritage, the New South Wales Council for Civil Liberties supports the principles underlying this bill. In doing so, we urge this committee to ensure that First Nations voices are being listened to, as you consider and make recommendations as to the substantive terms of the bill, to ensure that the best possible version is passed, to give them control over their cultural heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask you, just because you raised the Minerals Council's submission?
Yeah.
Can I just ask you, and I ask this question quite consistently throughout the day, do you think the current form of the bill that proposes, for want of a better term, a right of veto, and I've said this before, and I will say it again, that just the notion that when we talk about a right of veto, we're actually really talking about the right to protect cultural heritage above the right to destroy cultural heritage? Do you think that that is a sound feature of this legislation?
So this is where New South Wales CCL will take its lead, from First Nations voices on this. As you say, when we think about protection of cultural heritage, it must be protection of cultural heritage that comes first. And if that's what First Nations communities are asking for, then the Council for Civil Liberties would be supportive of that.
Thank you. And so, in terms of your comments around this legislation goes some, goes some distance in the UNDRIP foundation and the principles, do you see anything specifically that we could be taking on board to go further at this point in time?
In reviewing some of the submissions that came in sort of quickly this morning, I note that there is some disagreement between First Nations communities as to the impact or the influence that lands council should have in relation to the bill. Of course, UNDRIP says that self-determination is the most, one of the most important principles that should be adopted in relation to any governance around First Nations communities. And I suppose something that sort of exercised my mind in reading those submissions was that it needs to be careful, sort of balancing of voices to ensure that it's not just the most privileged within First Nations communities who have, who are determining what self-determination around cultural heritage looks like. But again, we would defer to First Nations communities on that point, but that was something that really stood out this morning.
Well, I mean, I might, I mean, look, it's a challenging area, because I think, you know, as you've acknowledged, you're rightfully hesitant, you know, in speaking on a bill that is so sort of profoundly significant to, you know, Aboriginal people in New South Wales, and, you know, we're similarly a bit sort of stuck, because we're all a bunch of white people sitting on this committee and then making recommendations, but, you know, we're sort of muddling through, and one of the things that, you know, I sort of reflect on is, you know, and I'm asking you in terms of, you know, the Council of Civil Liberties, you know, historically, you know, an organisation that's very obviously concerned with civil rights, with human rights, and the framework that we use, that you use, you know, historically has been very individualist, you know, in terms of individual rights, the expression of, you know, ways to express and protect them, whereas often for Aboriginal communities, and, you know, we see this, it's a much more of a collectivist approach, and so, I guess I'm just trying to ask in general terms, because I don't want to put you in a position of, you know, commenting where you don't feel comfortable, but, you know, do you think that this, that this law tries, you know, gets, gets, makes an attempt, makes a good attempt, to balance principles that we're not necessarily as familiar with, principles of collectivism, you know, self-determination in First Nations communities, with the frame, the sort of more individualist, Western legal framework that we're all familiar with? Is that something that we're sort of getting right here, or any more reflections on how the, you know, the legislation as it's drafted might do that better?
I mean, from our perspective, it seems, it seems to, like, it's clearly a step in the right direction. Standalone cultural heritage laws is long overdue, and something that is much needed. So from our perspective, anything that is a standalone cultural heritage law is inherently better than the status quo. So that's sort of our starting point. So that's sort of our starting point. On, I think, from where I'm sitting, the most tricky sort of aspect of this is how are First Nations people going to be properly represented through the process? That's the thing that we've sort of ruffled with the most and, you know, do we express a view on this, do we not express a view on this? And this is where we've landed, on not expressing a view on this because we don't, like, we're not a direct service provider, for example, like the Environmental Defenders Office is, who is intimately connected with and working with First Nations traditional owners. But that seems to be almost the most, the trickiest part of the legislation. Beyond that, the mechanisms that seem to be put in place, I mean, to be appropriate, as the Chair's first question got to, if the purpose is to protect cultural heritage, then the purpose needs to be protection of cultural heritage, considerations of integration with planning approval and environmental laws and all of those sort of things. If we're genuine about self-determination, First Nations-led responses to the regulation of cultural heritage, then that must necessarily be the case. So that seems to be right. Something else that struck me in reading submissions is that there appears to have been a long consultation process in relation to the government's draft bill. And, you know, it's, in some respects, it's a shame that that bill is not before Parliament.
Correct.
Now, if there was a way to integrate all of the learnings into one, you know, maybe that might be the optimal, the optimal outcome.
Look, we are optimistic about that and the minister, the government minister did, when this bill was referred here, did allude to the fact that the government would be watching very closely. And even as we've sat here today and what's feeding into the bill that's before us today is the 2010, the 2012, the 2018 work, some of that has gone into it. So I think it is important that we, well, all of us, make sure that that does carry on. I think that that's what we, we will be continuing to make sure, that the consultation that has happened will carry on. Yeah. And so do you, just on your, on that, the idea that you were suggesting that it does, it seems to have the operative mechanisms in there, is there anything that, I may have asked this, but I may be asking it a different way, is there anything that you can see that could be further included in terms of that, not a rights-based, because of the difference between that sort of isolated human rights approach, given we are talking about cultural heritage, both tangible and intangible? Is there anything that you can see in terms of your analysis of the actual legislation that, any other mechanisms that you're aware of that have been in other legislation that could be incorporated into this?
A couple of things. So I suppose some of the submissions talk about the importance of sea country and ensuring that sea country is properly protected. That appears to be appropriate and appears to be something that First Nations communities would universally support. Usually, on a bill like this, I would come here and rail against the affordance to create delegated legislation in this context, but you've noticed that that is something I am deliberately not saying in relation to this bill. And I know it was raised in the Legislative Review Digest, but it strikes me as appropriate in this instance that there be extensive powers to construct delegated legislation because if this bill is a genuine response to self-determination of First Nations communities, it's entirely appropriate that the council created by the bill have the ability to create delegated legislation. Now, even as I say that, like, I can feel my sort of, oh, delegated legislation tendencies tingling, but, you know, it appears to be a genuine response to self-determination in this context. In the Legislative Review Digest, there was mention of certain provisions which I don't know off the top of my head, which offences can be levied under two provisions simultaneously. That strikes me as strange. But it's not something that I thought a lot more about and it's something that we would usually oppose. But again, we haven't delved into the weeds of the offence provisions and all of that because this is more about mechanisms, ensuring that, you know, mechanisms are right to begin with to protect cultural heritage and to lead self-determination for First Nations people in this area.
And on that point, I note that, yeah, the Minerals Council's submission was particularly adverse to the idea of having delegated legislation, that it wasn't appropriate. But your point in this regard is, well, this legislation is perhaps trying to do something that has never been done before and therefore, you know, a genuine attempt to do that, this could be a very appropriate thing, even though it feels a bit strange to all of us perhaps. Yeah. Yes, Mr. Mallard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, Mr. Palace. My first Council of Civil Liberty president was John Mars and, well, welcome aboard, big shoes to fill there. I was on the executive for a couple of years there. I want to just, and thank you for submission. It's a good overview. I mean, obviously today, if you've been watching evidence, the issue for us is, to me anyway, is like, who makes the decisions on this? It's come pretty clear, there's quite a division in that. What are the veto powers and actually what is cultural heritage in that scale? But what I wanted to ask you about is, and you can welcome to comment on those things, but in your submission, you talk about the National Parks and Wildlife Act and you call it a racist. In your submission, you say, we believe the situating in that act is racist. It's certainly archaeological, if nothing else, you know, it's a very obsolete approach to this issue, we all would acknowledge it. So can you flesh out why you call it racist? I'm not criticising it, but I think it's important that we understand it has to be moved in our inquiry.
Yeah, definitely. Maybe we'll be in touch with you, Mr. Mallard, next year. It's our 60th anniversary.
We get better speakers.
We have many events coming up. So thank you for the question. So, in thinking about calling the current regime racist, it was something that we sort of exercised our minds for quite a while. And I think we're sort of getting to a point in the reconciliation process and in understanding through the Uluru Statement and what First Nations communities are calling for in terms of self-determination and reconciliation, that anything that really takes the hands out of First Nations communities appears to not properly apprehend the colonial violence that took place within Australia. And any regime that continues to endure which, where the power is held by someone other than First Nations communities over things such as Aboriginal cultural heritage, which is properly materials that belongs to First Nations communities, is racist. It is discriminatory and it must be changed. And I think even just that this situating of the powers within the National Parks and Wildlife Act sort of harks back to the days where Aboriginal persons were dealt with as floor and fauna.
Yeah.
And that's wholly inappropriate, like, it appears to be a hangover from that period. And so even if it is only symbolic, it's important symbolism, if for no other reason, to take it out of the National Parks and Wildlife Act.
Well, is it reflecting a thinking of the time that enlarges physical cultural heritage, first of all, those caves and paintings, that sort of stuff in the past? And where it was preserved was in national parks, where it survived. Colonialisation was in national parks, is that where that comes from?
I mean, I think that's probably the case. I'm not an environment plan...
Yeah, I think it's more deeply entrenched than that, I'm afraid. I don't think it is just about, I think it's quite clear from the 1974 Act, it was actually about trying to relegate...
What I'm getting at is just a strong point that it has to be taken out of there.
Yes.
No way that it longer than that.
There's no, I don't think there's a dispute.
I might want to remind the House that.
Yeah, there's no, it's, yeah, the dispute is not about...
Why am I want to say that?
Yeah, definitely not about...
I'm doing nothing, I'm saying.
If, it's about when, you know, and how, and that's the... Can I just ask you about intellectual property rights? And how, because there's this, this came up in evidence today, which wasn't brought up in submissions, but it was brought up in evidence about intellectual property rights of First Nations that extend from tangible and intangible cultural heritage. What does the council, how does the council approach intellectual property rights generally?
Can I take that question on notice?
You certainly can.
Which one today?
Yeah.
I'm relatively new to the presidency and intellectual property, data, all of that is not...
It's a complicated area. And I, yeah, look, I was just, I didn't know you and you, and I thought you may have come across, you know, that from a rights and liberties perspective and something else. So happy to leave that, thank you.
Yeah, we definitely have quite strong positions on this and I don't want to fall foul of the IP gurus within CCL by speaking out.
There's a committee, they're very strong on it. Yeah, and that's what I was referring to because I just, I'm not sure that that is something that has been contemplated well enough yet, and that's something we, that's front and centre now.
I might just ask one more question. I mean, I think you've touched on this already in relation to the way that certain rights, you know, would be, would be and should be privileged, but I guess I just wanted to draw you out on a little, on it a little bit more so that we have it in the evidence. You know, there's obviously, you know, a potential clash between, you know, rights to self-determination and the centrality of cultural sites and sites of cultural significance in that, and potential property rights, you know. And even, you know, other witnesses have talked about how, you know, okay, someone buys a piece of land or has owned a piece of land for a long time, you know, has no knowledge because they're a white person of the significance of it, learns, you know, subsequently becomes aware of that. And then there is a tension between, you know, their property rights under our Western laws and sites of cultural significance. You know, just drawing you out on questions of how those, you know, those rights clash, like rights clash all the time, you know, and in this context, how, what framework we might use to resolve that tension. And I think, and as I said, you sort of suggested, yeah, well, we do have to privilege some rights over the other, over others. Is that essentially how we should, you know, when we look at that tension, how we should probably approach it?
I think so. And I think where we've landed increasingly over time on issues of First Nations justice is if we're honest and serious about reconciliation and implementing the Uluru Statement from the heart, we have to privilege First Nations interests and voices to deliver real justice for First Nations communities. And I think it's something that the Civil Liberties Council has come to over time, you know, we haven't spoken or intervened in inquiries like this on issues of First Nations justice until very recently, when it's become really apparent to us that really what have we been looking at for a long period of time? Well, we've really just been looking at the rights and liberties of people other than First Nations people, and First Nations people have suffered the gravest injustices in Australia. So really, it's incumbent on us to work towards ensuring that their voices are privileged and self-determination is privileged in lawmaking concerning matters of, for example, Aboriginal cultural heritage. So I suppose that's a roundabout way of saying, in this context, we would side with First Nations voices over private property interests. Now, that's not to say that there's no compensation or something like that, that the government must stump up if, you know, land is being acquired or easements are being given or, you know, all of those sort of things. And that's a remedy known to law in other contexts. Yeah, we just need to think creatively in this context.
And I, is there, is there anything that you see in terms of the operation of the bill around, you know, around, or what would you consider is the most appropriate in terms of engagement around the operation of seeking to protect cultural heritage? I suppose I'm asking, is the general proposition, the earlier the better in terms of engagement? And is that something that you've turned your mind to in the operation of the bill?
Ah, no, it isn't something that we've turned our mind...
Yeah, okay.
Obviously, consultation and transparency and all of that should apply in sort of any decision-making processes.
And again, I suppose it comes back to what is it that First Nations voices want and how they want to approach, yeah, and at what point in the discussion about protection or impact, et cetera?
Absolutely. And I think just as a follow-up to that and what Ms. Jackson's question was before, when I say that First Nations rights are privileged over the rights of private property holders, I think I should make it clear that I'm not necessarily implying that private property holders in this context or business holders have done wrongs. The wrongs probably rest with the government, the delays in amending these laws and in not protecting Aboriginal cultural heritage over long periods of time. So I don't want people to think that I'm saying private property rights are not important, but really, this is just a whole different world and private property rights are put in sort of jeopardy because of colonisation.
Any more questions anyway? No, any more? No? Well, Mr. Palace, is there anything you would like to finish on, Mr. Palace?
No, thank you so much for letting me give evidence and for taking the time to consider this bill in detail.
Thank you. Right, well, we will then conclude. If there were any questions taken on notice, the secretariat will be in touch with you and we are asking for responses to come back within seven days, given the nature of the time, but you'll be contacted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes.